A clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brandow. Councilmember Bretfeld.
Here.
Vice President Soria. And President Olivier.
Here. Thank you. At this time, we'll invite Pastor Tom Sims of 411 Ministries to come forward and give our invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you'd all please stand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome, Pastor.
Let's pray together. Eternal God, Creator of all that is, every notion of civility, of justice, of truth, is of your origin. We can't come in the name of fleshed-out, indelible word of truth to seek you and your righteousness, what is right and just and true for the people of Fresno. We're strangers on sojourn, living in this wilderness for long enough to build a vibrant community of the beloved, a city set on a hill, a place where right prevails and wrong is restrained for a season, where respect and love govern our daily conversation and we work together for the common good. Bless this assemblage of your elected representatives today. Grant them wisdom, compassion, and cordial conviction as they hammer out their civic responsibilities and seek together the common good. Hang over us as a cloud of illuminating reason, of clarity, of mutuality, and at the close of this day, may your kingdom come, may your will be done, in yet one more increment of time and space. We pray this in the name by which you are manifest among us. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Sims for your inspirational prayer. Before we move to approval of the agenda, council members and city staff, I just have a couple of housekeeping announcements to make in regard to the upcoming 2018 budget hearing schedule. And these should be passed on or should, will be passed on. These hearings will be held here in the council chambers on June 6th at 10:00 a.m., on June 7th, beginning at 8:30 a.m., June 13th at 8:30, June 14th at 10:00, on June 20th at 8:30, we will vote on budget motions. And there will be another meeting on June 22nd at 8:30 if needed. That's the one update that I have for our budget hearing schedule coming up here in the next week. The other item I have is in addition to the, this morning ceremonial presentations, Council Vice President Soria will be presenting Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade Month. And with that, we'll move to ceremonial presentations, beginning with the proclamation of the Renaissance Scholars Program at Fresno State, and this is from Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President, and we're actually going to start with May. Since May is National Foster Care Month, I'd like to start with my presentation, if you will, Council President, Lisa. So, in this May morning, we're honoring two very important organizations that are making a positive difference in the lives of those in foster care. Lisa, would you please join me, Kizares, and the Angels of Grace Foster Family Agency. Come on up, angels. They truly are. So many of you are familiar with Lisa because she's got that ever-present smile and that upbeat attitude. She's always, right now, she's always happy and just, you're very concerned about people and very caring about people. So we appreciate that, but what people don't know is that you experienced some doubting life challenges on your own at a very early age. So it was her own personal experience as a young victim of domestic abuse. And it spurred her to overcome these obstacles. So one night many years ago, she gathered her children, left the house in the middle of the night with only the clothes on her back and 50 cents in her purse. From that, she went on to put herself through school. She raised her children. Not only did she earn a bachelor's degree, but a master's degree. True. That's right, huh? And founded, most importantly, founded the Angels of Grace Foster Family Agency. So Lisa, you are a true survivor and a positive role model for our entire community. So, one of the quotes I have here is "Every time she thought she couldn't, she did," and more. So, it's my honor to commend Lisa and the entire team of the Angels of Grace Foster Family Agency for all they do to ensure our foster youth care have the best services, the best care, and the best opportunities possible. So thank you all very, very much. Round it. Would you like to say a few words, Lisa? Oh, really? Absolute, take all you want. We love photos. We're beating the Kardashians with paparazzi, so. So Lisa, it's your opportunity.
I just like, want to thank the community because we know that without the community, it's just a dream and it's just a vision, and I want to thank God for allowing me the opportunity to pay it forward every day. When we get up in the morning, we can either allow our trials to become our treasures, or we can trump and we can continue to be a blessing to the world, or we can decide that we're going to stay in that place of darkness. So it's an opportunity for all of us to come to the light, and I'm just so proud of our team. We know that these are the Angels of Grace and the foster parents, that without them, we know that they're truly the angels. We're on-call 24 hours a day. So we wake people up at all hours of the night, and it's beautiful to come in and be mindful and loving when the children are being rescued out of foster care, not just going through the motions, but truly allowing our hearts to be connected to the hearts of these children so that they can look at this as a little bump in the road. They're going to get to the other side, and hopefully one day they can use this as an opportunity to pay it forward. So we can't do it without the community, and we are truly about the power of "we." So thank you, community, and thank you, City Council, for allowing us to do the work that we do and for recognizing the love that we can share in this community together.
You guys are awesome, amazing, and truly, truly angels for our community, and it started all with you. So the month of May, we're going to celebrate, and this is your proclamation, and our clerk is going to read the words of this proclamation.
Whereas Lisa Kizares, MSW, the founder and CEO of Angels of Grace Family Foster Agency, opened her heart and mind and the doors to Angels of Grace in 2000 with the goal of providing a place of refuge and healing for foster children, a place focused on the children's emotional and physical needs, to love, nurture, and protect the mind, body, and spirit of the children she serves. And whereas, the team at Angels of Grace Foster Family Agency offers a culturally diverse treatment program that provides an array of services to families in order to sustain the needs of foster children and centered upon remaining focused on the children's needs and matching them with a good foster family that will be devoted to working with them on their issues and at their level. And whereas, since its inception, the Angels of Grace Foster Agency and their devoted staff members, interns and volunteers, have helped place over 300 adoptive children in their forever homes. And whereas, Angels of Grace is deeply grateful to the community for their ongoing support of bringing blessings to the children through greatly needed resources and support. And whereas, Ms. Kizares has worked tirelessly to successfully overcome early obstacles in her own life and has devoted her career to using those experiences to provide a catalyst of change for foster children throughout our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby commend Lisa Kizares, MSW, and all those involved with Angels of Grace Family Foster Agency for their commitment to improving the lives of foster children. Be it further resolved, that Mayor Lee Brand and Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 25th, 2017 to be Lisa Kizares, Kizares, MSW Day in the city of Fresno.
Loredes, I was just telling her my daughter's name is Lauren, and it's a great name. Next, we're going to begin this presentation with a short video. Do you all watch the screen up there?
When I came to college my freshman year, I was a foster youth, and I didn't have my guardians because they were both in prison. Moving into the dorms and unpacking all my stuff, you know, alone and seeing other people with their families, it was tough for me because, you know, I would have loved to have my family there. So that day, I vowed that I would help prevent people from having to move into the dorms alone.
The Renaissance Scholars Program is an academic support program for students who've experienced foster care or homelessness. We provide students with a family on campus.
Some of us don't have the luxuries that we, that most, you know, other students have.
People don't look at me and think, "Wow, she's homeless," like, no, it's not always something you can see.
Moving into the dorms is the first home that some of them have had.
To be able to say, "I'm going home," is a big deal.
Thank you guys for coming this morning. Bringing you guys here, we wanted to make sure that you had some support, right? And that you guys know that you aren't alone. So we have some things here to help you guys get started, some blankets, some toiletries, and notebooks to really get you settled in.
This is for you, to show you that we love you.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm not used to getting stuff like this. We were excited over toilet paper, so that shows you how much we need stuff.
I have everything that I need now.
This is so cute.
This situation gives them a sense of belonging to a family, and this was a reminder that we will be here to support them and help them as they go on to graduate.
It still hasn't registered, I don't think, that I'm now okay.
Wow. That's why Fresno State is one of the crown jewels of my district. People here that are part of our community and the university. I'd like to have you guys meet Kizzy Lopez and one of the representatives from the Renaissance Scholars Fresno State Program. Round of applause, please. Kizzy is a program coordinator for the Renaissance Scholars Program. Obviously, it's very successful. It serves exceptional students who are attending Fresno State, who have experienced foster care or unaccompanied youth. That means they have no one, no one. And Kizzy and her team put this program together, and it's obviously doing fantastic. And it's, it's, it's an ironic twist that it was Kizzy's own painful childhood that laid the foundation for her and her fervent passion and guiding of these students at Fresno State and the Renaissance Scholar Program. So the program provides resources, as you saw, support, nurturing, educational, I'm a little, excuse me for a moment here, but anyway, educational opportunity that fosters growth and the ability to obtain a college degree. So this was brought forward in 2008, and they've helped 140 students from entry to graduation. 140 students that would not have had a chance but for this program and your leadership. So please join me in recognizing your unwavering dedication, ensuring that foster youth have exceptional opportunities, necessary opportunities for their path to success. So can't thank you guys enough, Kizzy, so it's fantastic. So, a few words.
Well, thank you, first of all, City of Fresno and the community for recognizing Renaissance Scholars. And I would say really the folks who need the recognition is our students. They do the hard work. I get to be the cheerleader on the side encouraging them, and this is one of our students, DJ. And he actually got recognized recently from the Foster Care Oversight Standards Committee. And I think that's really where the recognition goes, to their labor and hard work and commitment. And then they go on to be amazing contributors to society. We have students who are professors and CEOs of Focus Forward and social workers and counselors and teachers. And, you know, I say it's a great opportunity to invest in amazing young men and women. And they've really become extended family to me personally, and I just, I love them from the inside out. And, and so just thank you so much. And this work actually does not happen just within Renaissance Scholars. We have many opportunities to be engaged, you know. It takes a village. And so I'm glad to be here today with my dear friend Lisa as well. She gets them as babies, and they still need families when they get older. And so I think this is a good example of what community looks like and the investment in our youth when we are working together. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Todd, would you do the honors for us, please?
Whereas, the Renaissance Scholar Program at Fresno State was created in 2008 to serve current and former foster youth pursuing their undergraduate degrees. And whereas, this unique program creates a strong network of support by partnering with various campus departments and community agencies to provide a wide range of services to help meet students' academic, personal, social, emotional, financial, and professional needs. And whereas, the mission of the Renaissance Scholarship Program is to support ambitious college-bound individuals formerly in foster care. The program is committed to providing a system of support and experiences that will empower students to grow into self-sufficient adults and future leaders in the community. And whereas, the Renaissance Scholar, Scholars Program gained national attention with almost 5.3 million views and 29,000 shares over a period of two weeks, this with its video as part of the Kleenex Someone Needs One campaign, which is a set of videos featuring people around the country helping others in need. The video was featured on Inside Edition and the Huffington Post. And whereas, under the leadership of program coordinator Kizzy Lopez, MS, more than 140 students have gone through this innovative and successful program that assists students from college entry to graduation with services that support the students' academic, personal, and financial needs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby commend Kizzy Lopez, MS, and all those involved with the Renaissance Scholars Program at Fresno State, including the administration, students, staff, volunteers, alumni, and supporters for their commitment to providing a system of support and educational services for those who have been in foster care system. Be it further resolved, that Mayor Lee Brand and Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 25th, 2017 to be Renaissance Scholars Day in the city of Fresno.
You know, Lisa, with you and your angels coming up, we'd like to, this is, you have the early age, and we have a little bit the older age for foster care, and this team concept, please come up, presents and produces fantastic community leaders. Yes, come on, come on, angels. By the way, this young man just advised me that President Castro will be in trouble. He's going to go for the president of the university. And, and I'm sure he'll, he'll be a great success. Thank you all very much. As I said, the paparazzi have nothing, Kardashians, forget about it. Thank you all very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio, well done. And now we move to, Wendy, want to go? Okay. Then the next one is, belongs to me and City Manager's Office and Public Works Department. This is a proclamation of National Public Works Week.
Oh, you want me to start first? Well, no, this is, this is Public Works Week. And if you think about it, and I've said this before, Public Works Week isn't just about celebrating the work as far as our staff and when they build things. Once we build things, and Council, you've heard me say this over and over and over again, you also have to make sure that those systems work. So, and when we get up in the morning, we turn on a faucet, the water runs. But there's a, there's a facility that was built to provide that water to our community. Same thing when we get in our cars. There are streets, there's a system, there's signal lights. In some cases, there's traffic preemption. In other cases, there's public transportation, there's parks. There's other services that the Public Works Department and all the other supporting divisions within public works realm, the fleets, the wastewater treatment plant, the folks who cut the grass at the parks or maintain the irrigation system. These are public works of improvement, or I like to think it's the public's investment in their community. These individuals are the ones who are responsible for fulfilling the promise of making sure that those investments are not only built, but maintained, and/or for all of us to, to enjoy and take advantage of the convenience that they provide. So this is a week in which we recognize the professionals who help make, at some times, what is a vision a reality, and then not only making sure that that reality becomes actually completed, but also ensures that that, that investment is, continues to be used at the benefit of the community. So Scott, congratulations to you and your staff, as well as congratulations to everyone else here who's representing a various form of public works. So thank you, Scott.
You know, working in the City Council, it's easily, it's easy to say that the majority of phone calls that we get are regarding public works. And Council, am I right? It's curb, gutter, streets, sidewalks, tree trim. These are the things that people see when you step out of your home or you look out your window, these are the things you see. And, and many, many times, these are the most important things to the people who live in the city, or the things that they see when they look out their window first thing in the morning, and that's public works. So congratulations to you and your staff. So really, it's Public Works Week, every day is Public Works Day, really. And, and that's true. And so thank you, you and your staff do an excellent job, our city staff does a fantastic job. And that's not coming from me, that's coming from the people in the neighborhoods who let me know. You don't get the phone calls of thanks, we do. We get the credit, "Thank you for trimming my tree, thank you for fixing my sidewalk, thank you for doing the pothole." But the reality is, it's you folks here who do all that hard work, so it's, it's well deserved, thank you.
All right, and as I shared, just a couple more things, I wanted to invite employees, if you're here either from Public Works, from Fleet, or Public Utilities, and you're in the audience, come up and just kind of fill in the two sides. Feel free to be a couple deep. Just to add to our Council President, City Manager's comments, you know, I'm very proud to lead a wonderful group of individuals. And as our City Manager shared, it's not just what we call our Public Works Department, but it is Public Utilities with solid waste, solid waste, water, wastewater issues. In Public Works, it's, it's facility building maintenance. It's getting, it's getting projects like fire stations and parks done on time and on budget, and a true benefit to the community. And also, just wanted to add, in addition to just this being the type of service we take for granted each day, also just want to recognize, although none of those folks can be here right now because they're out in the field, of our on-call staff who often take the role of first responder. When it's, when it's high winds, heavy rains in place, and it's the middle of the night, a tree falls across someone's driveway, who takes that call and comes out with the lights going and the chainsaws to get that clear? Who, who takes care of a traffic signal is knocked down? And boy, we got to get that reopened at Herndon and Palm, or wherever it may, Clovis and Jensen, wherever it may be in the city, before that Monday morning peak hour traffic comes in. So this is just a small sampling of that group. All told, we have about 900 employees dedicated to that mission of public works, again, between DPU, Fleet, and our own Public Works Department. So I just want to thank our mayor, Council, City Manager's Office for all the support, making a better Fresno. Thank you.
City Clerk, can you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas, National Public Works Week was instituted as a public education campaign by the American Public Works Association in 1960, calling attention to the importance of the various services provided by Public Works in our community, which are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, Public Works infrastructure, facilities, and services play a pivotal role in the health, safety, and quality of life for the citizens of Fresno. And whereas, Public Works infrastructure, facilities, and services should not be provided without the, could not be provided without the skill and dedication of Public Works professionals, including engineers and administrators, field staff and office staff representing the city of Fresno. And whereas, Public Works professionals design, build, operate, maintain, and protect the transportation system and equipment, water supply infrastructure, sewage and refuse disposal systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities that are vital to the citizens of the city of Fresno. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Lee Brand and council members of the city of Fresno do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017 to be National Public Works Week in the city of Fresno, calling upon citizens and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which the Departments of Public Works, Transportation, and Public Utilities provide every day toward our comfort and quality of life.
And I know some council members want to say a few words, go ahead, hop in.
Yeah, thanks, Council President. I just wanted to give a real living example of some of the ways Public Works has helped my office. Really, within the last couple of weeks, I was going to make it in comments and reports, but now's the perfect time. Out on Herndon Avenue at Van Ness, we're doing a complete overhaul of a median divider that really had no landscaping for about 100 yards on both sides of that intersection. And the work is right in the middle, there's Aaron right there, the work's right in the middle. If somebody goes out there today, they're going to see our crews hard at work getting that median divider overhauled. It's going to be beautiful, as a matter of fact. I think we're raising the bar for median dividers in the city of Fresno. But it's a beautiful project. On the other side of things, our Neighborhood Streets Program, which was passed in last year's budget, District 2 is having its final project being completed next week, and even a major overhaul of Bullard Avenue in August. So a lot of great work is being done by these folks. Thanks a lot.
Council President, if I can add some comments. I think they're about wrapping it up at First and Barstow, near Walters Elementary. And so it was 100 and, what was it, 102, two days ago? So I drove out there, and Brian and, I told Scott this earlier, the team was out there working away. They were just, it was amazing. The residents came out, offering water, support, they trimmed some trees. It made me look like a hero, and I said, "It's not me, it's the city of Fresno and the people that make this system work." And I was so proud of all of the team and their efforts and what they're doing, so. But you know, there was So—but you know, there was that big roller. So, I wanted to get on that. And they said, "You stick—stick with your—stick with your lift truck and get back out there on the streetlights." So, I'll be doing streetlights probably in the next 30 days with your permission. But I really liked that roller. That thing was great. All right. But thank you guys so much. We're so proud of you, and we thank you every day, each and every day, when we get calls, and we can rely on you to answer those questions and keep our community safe and strong and—healthy. So, thank you all so much.
And, Council President over here, too. You know, I don't—I don't—I actually don't remember doing this proclamation in years prior. Maybe—we have, but I'll tell you that it is an appropriate time for us to—to tell you guys thank you. I think, as you've heard to a person, each and every one of us cannot thank you all enough for the work that you do. I know for sure in my district, you know, the—the Public Works, Public Utilities Department, you know, the way that you guys work together, Scott, Tommy, for—you know, I'm going to call you guys out because I know it starts with your leadership, and it's fantastic. And—it—and it shows all the way down the line with all the—all the staff, all the personnel. So, we're very appreciative, you know, the things that you all have been able to do in my district, and in many ways, that's been left behind for many years. You guys have come in and done great work, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate the continued work and effort that you all do. So, while I know we can only give you guys a week here in the city of Fresno, just—just—just know and recognize that the appreciation we have certainly runs through all year. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
I—I make the motion to make public year—public works year. Thank you, guys, for the work that—that you do. Really appreciate it. And—and I think, you know, oftentimes, that—that work is—is is not recognized as much as it—as we should, especially the—the ADA ramps that we've installed in a lot of parts of southeast Fresno. I can't tell you how many calls and—and texts I get from seniors saying thank you for giving them accessibility to a lot of the businesses and to their home and a lot of facilities that—that are used out there. So, thank you.
And I just want—there's not a whole lot to add. I mean, you guys really are the backbone of the whole city, getting everything done. And without you, the city would not be in the great shape that it is today. And so, we are grateful. And this is a—definitely a well-deserved proclamation. So, thank you.
And thank you all. Have a great day at work. One more, all right.
Maybe two. And I just want to also extend my appreciation for all the work. I know that my office has a great relationship with both public works and public utilities. You guys are very responsive and quick when there are issues. We appreciate everything that you guys are doing and that you guys will continue to do. Thank you.
Last comment. Let's give these folks a standing ovation, please.
Okay. The photographer has asked that we all try and crowd in a little bit. They want to get one more group shot. And then, you're free to go, and have a great day at work. Thank you all for what you do.
And—and real quick, while everyone's getting back to the seat, I would be—I would be remiss if we don't also recognize the folks from our IT department. In this day and age, a lot of what we do relies on their ability to actually make all that technology connect and work. So, also, to the folks in our ISD department, thank you very much as well.
Our next proclamation will be from City Councilmember Baines, proclamation of New Wrinkles Viva Las Vegas.
Now, I could be mistaken, but do I have my new wrinkles, folks, here? I don't. So, Council President, we will—we will postpone that one.
Sounds good. Our next proclamation is Vice President Soria. This is Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade Month.
If the Fresno Pride Parade folks want to come on down. I'm delighted to welcome a number of individuals that have been working very hard every year to make sure that our Fresno Pride Parade is successful here in the city of Fresno, and it takes place in the Tower District, which my council colleague and I share. It is the 27th Annual Fresno Pride Parade, which will be happening next weekend. We invite everyone to come out. But I did want to take—it take the time to welcome the individuals that are here with us this morning, who have worked tirelessly to make sure that this Pride Parade continues. We will be issuing—the city of Fresno is issuing a proclamation to recognize those efforts in really increasing awareness here of the LGBTQ community in the city of Fresno. This celebration takes place every year, and it is quite a success. And I'm very proud that it does take place in the Tower District. So, the parade and festival will include over 50 floats, or various folks involved in the parade. They also have informational booths, food vendors. There will be music, guest speakers, live performers, and an award ceremony to honor individuals within the LGBT community who have made a positive impact in our Fresno community. This event is hosted by the Fresno Rainbow Pride, a Community Link Committee that works to promote the social well-being of individuals within LGBT community throughout education, advocacy, and entertainment. I will pass the mic around so that you guys can introduce yourself. And I'll start with Jeff.
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Robinson. I am the Chief Executive Officer for Community Link Incorporated, which is the host for Fresno Rainbow Pride, and I'm the main coordinator.
I'm—I'm Rachel Wilson. I work with the youth group on Community Link, but also I set—do the festival site up—uh, festival set—site—ah, site setup. I can't speak, apparently.
I'm Jay, and I work with Rachel Bowman to do equipment.
Hi, I'm Sawyer Zendala. I—I do the promotion aspect as well as outreach to our politicians.
My name is Attorney Michael Huff. I am fairly new to Fresno, and I'm a committee member at large, and at the beck and call of Jeffrey.
I'm Rachel Joy Bowman, in charge of the equipment with Jay.
And I'm John, and I'm the one who says, "It's time to get on the parade route, and don't hit anybody with your vehicles."
I'm Bill Kanesvich, pastor of Our Savior's Lutheran Church, and I serve on the committee.
Again, welcome to City Hall. Thank you for the hard work in making the Fresno Pride Parade very eventful every year and a success. I will—before we pass it on to the clerk, I will let my colleague say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. Well, and I—and I promise to be brief. And—Council member Soria has kind of given all the background of this year's event. But—but I'll say that I can remember, for the benefit of some of us here like Jeff, when we—we could not get an entire city council and a mayor to sign the proclamation. I can remember when just being able to do that was a challenge. And—and now, if you look at the proclamation, it's acknowledged by every single council member, along with the mayor of the city. And so, just in—as we talk about all the work, all the years that you all have put into this, this is evidence of—the hard work that is paying off. Thank you for educating us on the importance of acknowledging our community, our entire community. Thank you for putting on a—a great event every year and in your continued effort. So, with that, I'm going to wish you all a—a great Pride Parade.
Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the 27th Annual Fresno Pride Parade and Festival will be held in the city of Fresno on June 3, 2017. And whereas the Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade 2017 invites people from all over the country, the county of Fresno, and the Central Valley to take part in the activities intended to educate and celebrate all communities, and commemorate their rich diversity, and free your pride. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans form an important part of our community and continue to contribute to every facet of our society. And whereas the Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade and Festival is a celebration of the culture and humanity of the LGBT-plus community, and is a family-friendly event intended to increase inclusiveness and acceptance. And whereas the city of Fresno recognizes that its entire diverse population should have equal rights and opposes any oppression and discrimination, which diminishes the quality of life for any resident, including those in the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city Fresno mayor—the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim the month of June 2017 as Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade Month in the city of Fresno.
Again, again, thank you so much for your work, and we will see you on June 3. I will have a float, so I will see all of you guys out there.
We move now to approval of the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, there are a few, and you should have received a handout. As Council President mentioned, there would be an add-on proclamation of Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade Month. And also, the budget schedule on the back page of the agenda, June 6 and June 14 have been changed to 10 o'clock. There is a correction for the minutes of May 18, 2017. That was—that staff had mentioned that there was a correction to Exhibit 3 on Page 79 of the salary resolution, and added the position of Senior Collection Systems Maintenance Specialist and Senior Communications Technician was listed twice in error. So, that should be noted in the minutes of May 18. Item 1E, that is File 17-722, was removed from the agenda by staff. That is for the approval of a contract change order for headworks wet well cleaning at the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. And item—consent calendar item 1I, that is File 17-730, that is actually a resolution for approval. That's not noted on—for adoption. That's not noted on the agenda, but 1I is a resolution for adoption. And then, last but not least, City Clerk Spence is out this afternoon. She is attending the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Conference in Montreal, Canada, which means your acting city clerk for today will be none other than Todd Sturmer.
With those amendments, I make a motion to approve.
Wow. I think in my six and a half years here, our—our clerk has never received a round of applause for— That's pretty good, Todd. All right. Everybody loves the clerk, really. No matter who's down there, that person has to take—take care of us, I guess, clean up after the elephants. And we do appreciate everything that—that you folks do over there. So, there's a motion, and in a second, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition? The agenda is approved. We now move to the approval of minutes from May 18. Are there any—does—do any council members have any changes to the minutes from May 18 meeting? Okay. Oh, member—okay.
No, motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right. Member Soria, are you punched up for this item?
We're up for council comments, actually.
All right. We have a—a motion to approve, and in a second, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. And now it's time for council member reports and comments. Member Brando.
Council President, he crowded.
What's that? Yeah. Did I—how'd I do that?
I—I think I cleared out some of you and others punched out, so.
All right. I made one of my comments when we acknowledged the Public Works Department, so I'm going to skip that and go to my second comment. I'm going to ask the city attorney. So, today, in closed session, we're going to have an overview of some of the bargaining units within the city of Fresno. Is that correct?
Schedule for discussion includes all of the bargaining units, as well as unrepresented.
Okay. Would that be an appropriate time to discuss whether somebody in the city of Fresno commits a felony and their pension, and they still receive their lifetime pension?
Well, in all likelihood, that issue would come into play in negotiations with the bargaining unit. So, yes, that could be appropriate.
So—so I can just freely talk about that inside of closed session?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to request that we adjourn today—today's meeting in memory of Diana Harrington. She was a Fresno State professor. And as we saw earlier, Fresno State is such a key element and crown jewel of my district. But our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family, friends, and students. And also, adjourn in memory of Ning Tao, the high school honor student that recently passed away. He was set to graduate next month. He was Mayor Brand's appointee to the Youth Commission. And again, our thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends. I had the privilege of attending the Fresno Center for New Americans Open House with Mayor Brand, and the installation of a new director. And it was a fantastic event, well-attended. And that's another asset to our community that brings about new set—new Americans and citizenship—citizenship to our community. And lastly, we had our Parks Master Plan update Tuesday night, very well-attended with District 4 residents, as well as the youth. And the learning center brought their students, and they were so well-prepared. It was a civics education class, so they not only participated in the parks part of it, but it was part of their civics education as well, and understood how we do meetings. And they were—they're very inspiring for me. And I want to thank Wesley Church for the use of the church facility for this meeting, since District 4 does not have a community center, or a senior center, or a combination thereof. Thank you, Bruce.
Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add in echo. I want to thank my council colleague for asking to adjourn in memory of Ning Tao. If we recall, he was actually just in these chambers last Thursday, where we recognized him as part of the Fresno Youth Commission. And just—I wanted to share a little bit about him. I will be presenting a proclamation—a city proclamation—to his family at his service on Monday. But I did want to just share for the public to know a little bit more about who this young—this young man was. He was the youngest of 10 children. His parents are Shiraya Tao and Chong Bing. He recently had celebrated his 18th birthday with friends and family, and was a senior at Edison High School. He had planned to graduate on June 5 as a valedictorian of his senior class. He was graduating with a 4.3 GPA and high honors. As I had mentioned last Thursday, he had been accepted to Berkeley, which I was very excited for him, because I am a Cal Bear. And he was planning to major in political science, along with pre-med. He had—the—his dream was to become a pharmacist and hopefully, one day, run for office. And unfortunately, his life was cut short. And so, today, I think that it's appropriate that we adjourn in his memory, because he served this community very well. At his young age, he was very involved, not only here with the Fresno Youth Commission, but he was also involved with the—the Fresno Boys of Men of Color Initiative. He was president of the Edison High School MONG Club, where he hosted and organized the—with the MONG New Year Festival at Edison. He was also part of the Friday Night Life chapter, very involved with Edison. And last night, the Youth Leadership Institute had their youth summit, where he was supposed to be a speaker. And so, in replacement of that, they did a beautiful tribute to what he did in his short time here. And he contributed a lot. He was also a youth leader with the Fresno Interdenominational Refugee Ministries, where he was part of a contingent of a Southeast Asian youth leaders. And they participated a number of just advocacy issues, Safe Place, with the Fresno Unified School District. He came here. He advocated for internships and for more resources for the young people. And so, he will be truly missed. And our prayers are with—with his family, his entire have a moment of silence for him. Thank you. I just wanted to share a couple other things. There is a couple meetings happening in our, in my district. We had a Being Good Neighborhoods meeting at Fresno City College earlier this week, where we focused on discussing and getting input from the community, and where they, where the community wants to go with new construction, essentially, in terms of kind of master planning and planning, how they will be expanding. We know that parking is a huge issue for City College and for the neighborhoods that surround, so getting community input is very important, and so, they, they're, they will continue to have a series of community meetings. This was the second one that has taken place, and so, we will keep the public appraised. I believe that it's important that the City of Fresno is involved, and so, there was Jennifer from Darm and other city staff there to also listen, and I think that if we can collaborate and make sure that we're planning our, expansion of that neighborhood, you know, it's great to, to be able to collaborate and make sure that we're working together. The other thing that I wanted to announce, on Monday, which is Memorial Day, there will be an Echo and Weldon Block Party, and so, this is a second annual event hosted by Ampersand. It's one of the newer businesses in that area. If you haven't tried it, you guys need to go, but you're invited to come out. My office will be putting on a, or doing a revealing of the Fresno High Beautification Project. We're installing three bike racks, which I believe have already been installed, two pit waste stations, and two trash cans along the Echo and Weldon corridor. This has been a true collaborative, community effort and collaboration with Fresno High students. They are doing some very neat mosaic art that will be around these trash cans, so we will be revealing those. We do want to just give a shout-out to Public Works, who has been working diligently with us to make sure that we have, we have these things installed by Monday, so thank you guys for that work. We also want to thank sponsors, Mid Valley Disposal, the Cagliari Family, and the Fresno High Neighborhood Association for your generosity in contributing, and a special shout-out to the Fresno High students and their art class for participating in this project. And we invite you guys to come out at 12:30 PM for the reveal. Thank you.
Thank you. We move now to the consent calendar. Are there any council members who wish to remove any of the items that are contained in the consent calendar? Member Soria.
I'd like to pull 1K and 1J.
Member Bretafeld.
I'd like to pull 1F, and Councilman, Councilmember Soria, she pulled 1J?
She pulled, she removed Item 1J and Item 1K.
Okay.
Member Brando.
I would like to add 1N, please.
And as in Nancy? Okay. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address any item contained on our consent calendar? Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll return it to the council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. I will second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Item carries unanimously. Thank you, council. The first item removed was Item 1F, as in Frank, by Member Bretafeld.
Yeah, someone from Public Utilities?
This is the Department of Public Utilities.
Councilmembers, Council President Kevin Norgard, Public Utilities.
Thank you. So, it's the same question, Tommy, about engineering services. We talked about it, it almost seems like week to week, about having an engineer to do design work, and so, we're spending over $90,000 on this contract. Doesn't it make sense, at some point, just to have an engineer who can do this? Because it's an ongoing issue where we need an engineer to do this design work, whether now it's Public Utilities, but it's also Public Works as well.
Yes, makes sense for us to look at making some adjustments, so we can recruit the kinds of individuals that would be able to design these types of facilities. This is the, this is the canal that takes all the wastewater out of the plant, to the back of the, all the different ponding basins. It's an open canal now that, you know, is going over some aging and deteriorating, so we've got to figure out a way to, so we can either replace the panels in the canal, or we can do a hard pipeline. We had a gentleman drive into the canal last year, and so, for safety reasons, we're thinking we need to consider hard encasing it, put it in a pipe, and, and so that people can't drive into it. It's a very significant and large pipeline, so we really don't have the people with the expertise to design a 72-inch type pipeline that, this is looking to, a solution that we would have here. We can, we, we work with Public Works all the time to do 8-inch, 12-inch lines in neighborhoods, but this is a different scale and scope of project.
Okay, so, and what you're saying is, for this project, you would not be thinking that somebody on our staff, or hiring somebody for our staff for this, but for the other design work, you're saying that that might make sense?
Right, yeah, we work a lot with Public Works and Scott's Group to do a lot of the 8-inch, 12-inch stuff that we do around the neighborhoods and cities.
Okay, and this is not typical?
It's, this is not typical.
Okay, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Item carries unanimously. Now, onto Item 1J, this is...
Just, just for clarification, it was 6O with Capriole absent.
Oh, I didn't see that he was gone, thank you. Item 1J, Development and Resource Management Department, and this was removed by Member Soria.
Good morning. Good morning. So I had a couple questions regarding this agreement. So, I guess a couple that came to mind. I know that you guys only got five interested applicants after you guys did the RFQ, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a reason why we didn't get, and one of the questions that I had asked to you guys prior, why we didn't get any local artists?
We publicized it locally, as well as nationally, because it's federal funds, so we had to put it out nationally, statewide, and locally, and I couldn't tell you why somebody didn't. I know our Arts Council, Fresno Arts Council and the museum, people reached out to folks, but we didn't get any...
With enough time and to give people the opportunity?
It could have been the limited amount of time that we put out, but...
Is there a time, like, a time that we have to work with, like a constraint?
The, the project needs to be completed by the end of the summer, so we're trying to hurry up and, and get some artists in place for that.
I'm just, I guess, a little disappointed that I feel like we have such great local talent, that we couldn't get any applicants. I was talking to my staff, who was previously involved with RDA, and they did the project out here, I think, on East Street, and she said that they got like 23 people interested when that, when that happened, and we ended up awarding it to a local artist. That's kind of where I would have been interested in seeing that. I also didn't see that, that the folks that ended up applying for the RFQ didn't submit any examples of the art, or what they're thinking...
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't ask for examples. We asked, we kind of gave them a now shot of what the plaza looks like, and the designs that we've, preliminary designs that we put together to give them the idea. We didn't want to constrain them to creating a piece of art, and so, that will be done with the community, and we'll have local artists involved in that community development of, of the art.
Which is great, but I, I think that in terms of the actual contract, I would have loved to have seen our local artists actually get these monies and really, you know, have that local connection. So that's where I was really disappointed. Is there any way that we can extend time to go out again and to really encourage our local art community to kind of get involved? I think this is going to be a very important piece of our downtown, and I would really just ask that we really go out to try to find some of our local artists, to get them to be, you know, or to be interested.
We are limited with time on the expiration of the grant, unless the NEA would extend the timeline, would be the only possibility, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to at this time.
What's the timeframe? Can we ask them?
Yeah, I have a call-in to them to do that, just in case, but I probably won't know till later today, or by the end of the week.
So could we postpone this to our next council meeting? I would at least suggest that we do that. I'd like to see if there's an opportunity for us to see how we can do a little bit more engagement with our local, our local artists. Otherwise, I will, otherwise, I won't be supportive today.
Concern is, is that if we, if we don't hear back for another week or two, you do have holidays come up, and they say, "No, we're not going to grant you an extension," then the ability to actually get the...
The artwork in place.
The artwork completed in that timeline is going to be made even more difficult, and then by that time, that we, we'll end up losing the grant to the project.
So, why did we wait this long? If we knew we were operating in a timeframe, I think we, we should have kind of known this, so, to give us a little bit of, you know, time. Because I don't want to feel pressured to take a vote today, just because, you know, we decided to push back, and you know, and you guys didn't bring it back early enough to give us that window. So I would make a motion for us to wait and hear, because I would really like to see our local artists at least have an opportunity, and I don't know if we didn't do, you know, the best outreach or the engagement to get them interested. I just don't see how, you know, in a previous similar situation, because I, I know I talked to my staff, they had 23 applicants, and then we ended up giving it to a local artist.
There's a motion to put this, I'll second, for discussion purposes. Our next council member, till when?
Well, as soon as that we can get it back and get an answer.
Member Brando.
So I was going to ask a question here, but I've got to ask a question of you first, Councilmember Soria. So, the art community that you were referring to, I mean, they turned in 21 requests, or 21 responses last time, have you talked to them? Why didn't they respond to this art?
Yeah, no, I, I haven't had the opportunity. I just first saw this when it first came to the agenda, you know, this past Thursday, so I haven't had a chance to.
That was, that project was several years back, probably in about 2010 or so, when they did that.
But you did your normal outreach, they would have heard about it.
Right, we publicized it locally in the newspaper. We did social media, we did it on the website, we had it out there, so...
So, did you get any calls from local sources?
No, we did not. We got calls from people in Southern California and Northern California, but nobody locally.
That is sad.
I think there were, and I have other, some of our community partners are here. I know they've spoke to several artists, but I don't know, you know...
Lilia, I know that you're from the Fresno Arts Council, maybe can you provide some perspective? Would it be helpful? I'd really like to see, I know we have a tremendous amount of local talent, and I'd hate to, you know...
Yeah, no, I, I agree wholeheartedly, Councilmember Soria, that whenever possible, we want to hire local artists. However, the magnitude and the scope of this work is such that many of our local artists don't have the capacity to do this kind of work. We're not, this is a major public art piece, and there's going to be an opportunity to work with the whole design team. It requires a organization that has the professional capacity and the infrastructure, which in this case means the capacity to construct the art piece in-house, so that they don't have to subcontract, because that just extends the time and makes it less possible for us to meet our deadline. So, while I would have liked to see more local applicants, and we did get calls in my office about this from local artists, once they understood the magnitude of the project, they realized that it wasn't for them. And so, I don't believe that an extension is going to allow us to get any more input locally, just because of the scope of work and the magnitude of the project.
But how would we, how could we help this RFQ encourage the collaboration with local artists, so that they take part of this? This is, I think, where maybe there's a missing component, where we should have required in the RFQ that the local artists be subcontracted or whatever, so that there is much more of a local tie. I just, you know, like to see that our local artists benefit and really have the input, because this art is going to sit there for a very long time, and so, I hate for other folks that are not from here, that don't understand, you know, the history and the culture that exists here.
And that's one of the reasons that the artist that was selected was selected, was because they took the time to investigate Fresno, they took the time to consider our demographics, and they proposed ideas for how they might work with the design team to create something that would be significant and specific for Fresno.
But would it be beneficial to have, you know, to have had an RFQ that encourage, you know, contracting with local artists? And I think, because you're saying that maybe the local artists here don't have the type of capacity...
Correct.
But I think, how do we begin to build the capacity if we don't give our local artists the opportunity to get in, especially when there's big projects like this that come before us?
Right, and I call those people that I think have, have those skills, and sometimes, the biggest issue that they have is insurance, and the Arts Council's insurance will cover them on a project. So we even offer that to local artists, so that they can get involved and apply for these larger projects. But this particular project, and the turnaround time that we have to complete it, requires a professional team that has everything in place. You're right, that if, in the future, as we get projects like this, if we include in the RFP, that we're looking for a, an artist that will either be from Fresno, or will be willing to partner with Fresno artists, that that would be a very appropriate thing to include. We didn't consider it this time, because we were hoping to get some local response, but that did not occur.
Lupick, for, question for you. How much of the $200,000 that we're doing, how much is it going to be for the artwork versus artist fee?
So he's, he's proposed that 20% go to the art, to the artist and his staff, and the remainder, the 160,000, the 160,000 will go towards the art, the fees, the, the cost to manufacture it, the design coming out, installation, all of that.
Just a point of order. Member Soria, doesn't Member Brando have the floor at this time?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. If you want to, and we, and I respect your passion on this issue, but...
And you were, and you were really getting close to...
So if you want to, if you have additional questions, punch in again.
Okay.
Yeah, because you were really getting close to some of the questions I had, anyway, but, and your name is Lydia?
Lilia.
Lilia. So, it seems to me like her responses kind of negated your concerns. I mean, you pushed really hard, but, I mean, the art community knows all about this deal, right? They just didn't, it's not in their capacity, so...
Yeah, it's in the capacity, but how do we create an RFQ that really, like, tries to get our local artists involved? You know, they could contract with them, to, to have a local tie, yeah, so we do the...
She, she actually just said that an extension, there's no value in extension at this time, so, I don't know, I...
I'm not, I'm not talking about the extension, I'm just saying that...
In the future.
Yeah.
Member Soria, if I could just jump in, I think, I think I formulated an answer to your question. It's because of the, the federal money. If we were to use general fund money, we could say, "Only Fresno," but because it's federal money, they, they went out to somebody else, and so, that's why we can't...
I'm not, I'm not saying only Fresno in, you know, in the RFQ process. I think that there are ways that we can craft the RFQ to really encourage and incentivize local artists to be part of subcontracting or so forth, and so...
That's, that's okay. That's good. So I want to get back to the art on, and so, this is for Fulton Mall.
For Mariposa Plaza.
Oh, for Mariposa Plaza within, okay. So what is the breadth of, how much art are we talking about? Is that included in this?
Yes, the, so the 200,000 is for all the costs that's going to be incurred under the art, to create it, to design it, the artist fees and the installation.
Including installation?
Yes.
So 200 grand, and then, who has final say on the selection of the art pieces?
It's going to be the community, along with the artist, and we will be, the Arts Council, the Art Museum, and other partners will be involved in that, and other, and the community will be involved in that.
So, in my mind, there is a way for local artists to have say in these, these projects, right? Am I missing something? So...
It's like, I'm just saying, the financial benefit is not there the same as to someone that is out of town, that's all I'm saying. I would like to see our local folks get these dollars, and be able to continue to expand their capacity, that's all I'm saying. Because that's, how do we build that here in our local community?
That's probably a discussion, discussion for another...
It's going to be the community along with the artists, and we will be, the Arts Council, the Art Museum and other partners will be involved in that, and the community will be involved in that.
So, in my mind, there is a way for local artists to have say in these projects, right? Am I missing something? So.
It's like, I'm just saying, the financial benefit is not there the same as to someone that is out of town. That's all I'm saying. I would like to see our local folks get these dollars and be able to continue to expand their capacity. That's all I'm saying. Because that's, how do we build that here in our local community?
That's probably a discussion, discussion for another day.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a valuable discussion because they should know that that's something that we're, well, at least I'm particularly interested in seeing so that when you guys do future projects, that is taken into account.
Just point of order, technically, there is a motion on the floor that is, that relates exactly to what the council member is saying. So, it's germane to the conversation at this point because we have a motion to delay it until what the item can be rewritten or recrafted to.
Yeah, but I don't know if there's support for that. I'm willing to withdraw and I just won't support it. I support the project and I support, you know, having the art, but I think for purposes of, you know, what I am interested in looking at and supporting our local, our local artists is to see how we can craft RFQs that will incentivize outside folks, you know, really partnering, and so that there is a financial benefit for our local artists. I want to see that. And so, I won't be supportive today. You guys can move forward with it. I know that you guys may be working on a timeframe, so I wholeheartedly support the artwork, but I would like to see in the future that you guys look at how we.
Understood.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. On piece, on artwork like this for public display, is there ever an opportunity for people to donate art on the Mariposa Mall? Can people just donate artwork and it could be included? Does that, does that happen?
It hasn't happened, but it's something that we could look into.
Okay, so it hasn't happened here, but does it happen? Or just doesn't happen? I'm pretty ignorant about this. Do people donate works of art?
Yes.
They do?
They do.
Yes, in fact, councilmember, I'm aware of an artist. We're just trying to figure out a place to actually install the piece, but there's a local artist who works with iron who has offered to donate a piece. I just want to make sure the setting and how it's presented to the community is appropriate, but we do have somebody who's willing to donate a piece.
Yeah, that's fantastic. So, all right, thank you. I'm done with my questions.
All right, we have Member Bretafeld, then Member Capriolio.
So, if this, and maybe the city manager can answer this, if we don't do this today, is it possible we could lose this grant?
Yes, my understanding.
My understanding, and I understand the point made by Councilmember Soria, is that we have requested an extension, but if the extension is not granted to us, then we would lose the grant dollars.
Okay, and my understanding is, I think we all would like local artists to benefit from this $200,000, but you put out a request and they said they couldn't do it. So, that's unfortunate, but it is what it is. And so, I'm ready to move forward. I will second the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion by Member Capriolio to approve and a second by Member Bretafeld. The only, the only other, the screen is clear at this point unless anybody else wants to punch up. It's been withdrawn. The question that I kind of wanted to, and again, I'm ignorant on the issue, a lot of the controversy about opening Fulton Street was where's the public art going to go? It seems like there, on the Fulton Mall, we had a plethora of public art. Why can't we use that art at the, at the Mariposa location instead of hiring? I mean, I've been through the guy's website and I don't mean to, I mean, look, art's relative, right? Somebody looks at something, says it's beautiful, and somebody looks at it, doesn't understand it, and the guy that says it's beautiful says to the guy that doesn't like it, "Well, you don't understand art." So, I guess, I saw it and this is what he does. It's a major corporation that constructs big artworks for airports and civic and type of locations. So, that's not exactly what my colleague is talking about, maybe a local artist that was, you know, à la Saroyan, whose art was his writing, but a local artist who, you know, born and bred and bled in the valley, that shopped on Fulton Mall 60 years ago as a child or something like that. I think that's what she was trying to say, and I understand that and I appreciate that too. We're not going to get that. It's an art corporation that makes a lot of money contracting with municipalities, and they make their money off the taxpayer is what it is. So, it's not artsy artsy like what my colleague is saying and what I think of as art. This is a corporation that creates art on the taxpayer, and so that's what we're going to get if this passes today and not a local artist. But my question is, I guess, that I asked 90 seconds ago, was all this art that we had to move, treasures, really, masterpieces have been moved off the mall. Can't we just move them back for people to enjoy?
Well, the grant itself requires, that was the purpose of the grant, is to create a new piece of art, an interactive art piece. So, it's not about just moving something over, it's creating a new piece for that area.
Rodan, is that who was there on the Fulton Mall?
Council president, all the artwork that was located along Fulton?
Yes.
Is going back on Fulton.
But it, this is an empty space that needs art. I mean, that's settled, right? We can't move the art around.
No, that's already settled out.
Yeah, it's already been designated.
So, this is an additional piece that will be add to the Mariposa Mall side.
Thank you. I'm not going to, I'm not going to support this today. So, the screen is clear. Let's go to vote electronically, council. The motion is to approve staff recommendation. If it passes four yes, three no. Thank you, council. Moving to item 1K. This is making findings to comply Development and Resource Management Department staff.
Yes, Council President Olivier, Mike Sanchez, Durham staff, both chief building official, Brian Young, myself here, to answer any questions the council may have on this particular item.
A question I have on the solar permits, how many solar permits do you typically process?
We typically process anywhere from 300 residential solar permits per month, roughly, is what we have.
300 per month? Okay. And is it normally taking three days to process or is it more than that?
Individual applications are done within the three days, but typically what happens is vendors will usually submit stacks of applications, whether it be five or a dozen, and then we just process those in batches. So, there may be an instance where we do exceed that three-day limitation, but in general, the individual ones are done within the three days.
Okay. But you're wanting to increase the charge from 500 to 616?
Currently, the average cost is around 600 for a solar residential permit. That's based on our fee study that was adopted back in 2011, and that's basically to cover the cost of services that we provide.
Okay. And yet, the state law suggests 500 or mandates 500, and you have to have reasons beyond that.
Correct, and essentially, the comprehensive fee study that we performed back when we adopted the fee back in 2000 meets that intent.
Okay. Is somebody from the solar industry here at all? You are.
My name's Sam Harvey. I'm here with Solar City Corporation. We have a facility here in Fresno that employs roughly 100 employees. I'm here today to ask that the city council reject the resolution making findings to comply with section 66015.
We're having a little trouble hearing.
I'm sorry.
Here.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I'm here today to ask that the city council reject the resolution making findings to comply with section 66015 of the California Government Code. We submitted letters to the city council and the city's development department on March 31st. We did not hear a reply from this department or from the city attorney to that March 31st letter. We also submitted a letter on May 18th. We're concerned that the resolution before you fails to meet the requirements of Senate Bill 1222 and will discourage residents from adopting clean energy and undermine the city's leadership on lowering greenhouse gas emissions and engaging in the growth of green jobs. The resolution is not compliant with SB 1222 because the 2011 fee study on which it is based predates the Senate bill it's attempting to comply with. So, there was no way that the city could have foreseen the requirements of the Senate bill when it conducted that fee study. We ask instead that the city adopt a resolution establishing the $500 permit fee limit under SB 1222 until such time as the city is able to conduct a permit fee study in order to create, you know, a fee structure that complies with the Senate bill's requirements. Rather than comply with state law, this resolution would continue the trend whereby the city of Fresno charges some of the highest fees for solar permitting in the region. Jurisdictions like Clovis and Fresno County are able to consistently charge fees ranging from 250 to 450 dollars, whereas the city of Fresno is consistently charging fees ranging from 450 to 900 dollars. In order for the city to charge fees that exceed that $500 limit, Senate Bill 1222 requires that the city make a number of findings. This resolution attempts to make those findings, in particular by providing substantial evidence of the reasonable cost to issue a solar permit. However, the master fee schedule on which that finding is based does not accurately reflect the costs of issuing solar permits. The study into those costs was done in 2011 when there was a much lower volume of solar permits being processed by the city. And over that time, city officials and industry installers have had much more time to familiarize themselves with the city's process and with the products that are out there and streamline, streamline their interactions. So, as a result, those 2011 estimations of the administrative costs for issuing solar permits are inaccurate, and the resolution does not comply with SB 1222.
So, you said the other cities, Clovis, charges.
Yeah, Clovis, we have, we've seen charges from 250 to 350.
For the same.
The same process.
Process. And are you experiencing, or are people in the industry experiencing three-day waits here in Fresno?
We're experiencing significantly more than three days.
Significantly meaning what?
Typically, we're experiencing seven to nine business days. The city council passed a resolution in 2015 providing that small residential rooftop systems are, should receive a three-day processing timeline. We're seeing, we're seeing longer than that.
Okay.
We're also seeing a number of procedures that have been established by state law and also by a city ordinance that are not being met by the development department. In particular, state law requires that electronic submission of applications be available, and the city established that requirement as well in 2015. No such option exists right now. All applications have to be delivered and picked up by hand, even though the city ordinance from 2015 provides for submission by fax, email, or online. We're also seeing, there's a checklist that state law requires be made available for small systems to determine whether they qualify for expedited permitting. That checklist exists, but it's not made readily available, and state law requires that it be online, and we have not seen it available on the city's website.
Okay. And this gentleman, are you Mr. Siemens? Okay. Can you, you had sent me a letter, I don't know if you sent it to the county, but I wanted to address also what you had said in terms of the concerns regarding permitting and timeframes and all of that.
Yeah, my name's Glenn Siemens. I appreciate you lending me your ears. Give you the background, I was born and raised here in Fresno, so I make Fresno my home for a long time. We have been in, I'm the CEO of Rice Solar. We've been in business now 10 years, about the same length as Solar City, and so I have quite a bit of experience pulling permits and that. The one question that I'm not seeing or hearing is what is the city doing to make the building department more efficient? I can tell you in the, I can tell you in the time that I've gone in, I don't know how many of you guys have pulled a permit here in the last year? How many of you guys gone to your own department to pull a permit? It's insane. Okay? Common sense seemed to have gone out the window with that. So, when I go in, I show up at 8 o'clock because that's when it opens. You'll have your team maybe show up, 8:10, 8:15, 8:30, they come rolling in. I go to the counter to sign in, I get scowled out by the person looking at me. Why am I, I should feel welcome. To give you a side benefit of that, I used to go to County Madera, and when I walk in, when I would walk in, they'd come, "Hi, how are you? Hey, here's a, here's a donut. How about some coffee? What can we get you today? Oh, a solar permit? Let me take you over here." They bring an inspector out, sit me down right in front, and I walk out of there with a permit. I go to the Fresno County and I walk out with a permit over the county. I cannot justify in my brain how the city of Fresno can charge as much money as you guys do and ask for more for the same stuff I can get someplace else for the same permit. I don't have the benefit as a business owner that you guys do to raise prices. In fact, every single month, I'm constantly forced to lower my prices because half my competition doesn't know how to run a business and stay in business, so they sell solar for less than they should. Then you're going to turn around and raise my, raise cost to me? Where am I going to do that on my side? In 2007, when I started my business, I was able to make about 12 to 15% net profit. I'm lucky to pull out 5% right now. I don't have the room to take another hit and not be able to pass that on to my clients. So, that's why I'm asking, where are you guys looking at how to make your department more efficient? I would love to be part of a committee to come in and talk about the building department, how can we make it better and simpler? The same process is there 10 years ago. It hasn't changed, it hasn't, the same people are there. I would be out of business if I ran my business like I do that building department. So, that's my, that's my 10 cents with that.
Well, so this is the concern I have, because I got your letter, and it addressed some issues that I think have been longstanding for many, many decades here at Fresno, was certainly there when I was here years ago, that we're not as business friendly as we purport to be or want to be, and there's still a lot of work to be done. I know there are several on the council who feel that way. I'm concerned about these fees, and they're being increased. I'm concerned the fact that Clovis may be doing these solar fees for 250 or 450, and we're not competitive with other cities. We're charging fees with, without real explanation as to why our fees are 600 and something and somebody, another city in adjoining neighborhood, neighbor city is half that price. You shouldn't have the reaction that you do at the, at the counter, and that's a problem for us, it's been a problem a long time, and it certainly isn't with everybody. Our people do great, great work, but we do have that reaction. I think we all hear it from constituents, and so it's an ongoing issue. For me, I make a motion to deny this resolution, and I would ask that the staff bring back a fee schedule comparing the fees that we're charging to other cities, and I think that's the discussion we ought to be having. I think we ought to also be having a comparative analysis of how long does it take to process solar fees, solar permits in other cities versus what it's taking us. Now, we're being told it takes three days. You're telling us it takes nine or 10 days. Where's the reality? I mean, what's really happening? Because we're just told it was three days and this customer is telling us it takes nine to 10 days. We have a problem, and I think we need to address it, and I think we need to shine a light on it. It's been a problem for decades, and here we are, right here with this issue, and it's a problem. So, I think we ought to deny this, this resolution and ask staff to bring back that analysis for us to really do some homework on this.
So, if I can, first of all, the clarification that this resolution is just codifying the fee that was already established in 2011, it's not increasing the fee. Because of state law, because this fee was adopted in 2011, this resolution is intended to meet the requirements under law. We can certainly do the fee analysis. I too would be interested in seeing what other cities charge. We've had a lot of conversations about what other cities charge, similar to Clovis. Clovis has higher fees in a lot of other areas, but we've also not necessarily hooked our wagon to that just because Clovis charged a lot more. The other issue that I think we need to look at is the volume. I'm not sure if we're talking about Madera County or the city of Madera, but I doubt they generate the same level of permits for solar or anything else that we do. We're processing something like 300 permits a month. I'd also like to see the opportunity that if the solar installers want to have an engineer wet stamp their own design, as long as they have somebody who's willing to do that, they wouldn't even just come in, show a wet stamp, we'll issue a permit on the spot. But I don't know if they're open to that. But my point, let me, if I please, if I can.
Gentlemen, you're welcome to be seated until a member of the council calls you back. Thank you.
The item before you today is just codifying the fee that was already established in 2011. We're more than willing to do an analysis. We do have a committee who has been already appointed to look into improving the efficiencies in our planning and permitting department. We do have software that we're, we've, we made a significant investment because a lot, unlike a lot of other cities like Clovis who did invest in software, we haven't. So, you're right, we're using the same paper process that we used before. The fact that anybody would send anything over a fax machine in this day and age already shows how outdated we are because I can't think, I don't even have a fax machine in my office anymore. That's how, you know, everything's coming in through a PDF, which the new software will allow us to do. But again, the purpose of this item today is simply to codify, and I'll let the attorney's way in if they need, feel the need to, to codify the rate that's already been established and it's been established since 2011 by this council.
Just say that I still, I don't want to codify it. I want to look and see if this is the right fee, and I don't think it is the right fee if we're doing a comparative analysis, and I certainly respect what the city manager's saying. Obviously, smaller cities are going to be processing fewer permits, but it still doesn't minimize the problem we have in the city of Fresno.
Thank you, and we have a motion by Member Bretafeld and a second by Member Soria. A number of council members are punched up. Member Soria, followed by Member Brandow, followed by Member Chavez.
Thank you, Council President. I share some of the.
I share some of the same concerns that were just highlighted by my colleague. I've been kind of in conversations with the building department for a long time because Solar City actually brought this to my attention a number of months ago. I am not supportive of approving, what, there were done, I guess, six-year-old findings to justify that fee. I actually find it troubling because we had never approved any findings that would have justified a higher fee. So by state law, we were only supposed to charge $500, which, that is troublesome to me, that we, and it's taken us this long to bring something to council, to, to follow state law. So today, I can't support it. I don't think that we should be approving findings that are, I wasn't even here when these findings took place, and we, it seems like we're not following state law, which is, again, like I said, troublesome. I know that there is the issue that we have maybe more permits coming in than some of our other local jurisdictions. I'd just like to remind, you know, my colleagues that this body is very supportive of creating jobs, of creating incentives so that we have business come into our community. Solar is another business within our community. It creates jobs. It also provides residents other options to lower their energy cost. And I know that there are a number of residents that would benefit from having the option of solar, and so what we're doing today, if we approve, is that we are going to continue to allow the, the, the charging or the permitting fee a lot higher than what the state has recommended, and pass on those costs to the residents. I'd like to actually see us figure out how we create incentives to encourage more people to go to do solar, because again, it creates green jobs, it helps our environment, and it helps people's pocketbooks, not only residents, but also business, the business community. I've been working with businesses in the Tower District to try to help them see if there's other options for energy sources to be able to lower their, their energy costs. And so today, I won't be able to support it, again, for the reasons that were already shared. I think that we need to come back with a current study, and I would just make the motion that we comply with state law. If we don't have these findings approved today, we would only be allowed to charge up to $500. That's, I believe that that's how the law reads. So I think that we should be doing that until we have a current study. I've been pushing DARM and the public, the building department to do this. I don't know, how long, how long would it take, Mike, to do, to review a study? I thought that you guys were kind of undergoing that.
Yes, Councilmember Soria, the city staff is currently internally reviewing our, our fee structure for all building and safety fees, so that will probably kick in the red, of course, for the rest of this year. But if, if the request is to simply do a specific analysis to residents or so, that's something we could probably look into.
How long would it take to do?
Well, to the research and get everything that the council's asking for, we could probably come back with a draft of the council, probably within 30 days.
So that's, I think that's pretty reasonable. I think that we keep our fee as allowable by state, which is $500, until we have a study that is current. I just wouldn't feel comfortable approving a study that these findings were made, you know, some time ago to try to justify. I just think that we were not doing the right thing. I'm not sure what happened, why we didn't approve these findings at the time that the study was made. I don't know if you could speak to that, Bruce, but I just, I find it troubling that we're, we've been out of compliance for such a long time.
I'm going to have the attorney's way in. I don't know if we're out of compliance. I think the resolution was, again, in order to be in compliance. If you want to set a fee of $500, we'll set a fee of, we can set the fee at $500, we'll come back in 30 days. We'll do, we'll do a cost allocation. We've done cost allocations for public works in the other departments. We can tell you exactly what the hourly rate is, or what the rate will be, and then, like everything else, the council can determine whether or not they want to adopt the rate based on that study. It may be less than 500 bucks, but it may be higher. And if the council wants to adopt that fee at the time, it'll be at the prerogative of the council. And if it's anything higher than $500, then you'll make a conscious decision to have the general fund subsidize that expense.
Well, and I'd like to also see how we can work to streamline and maybe cut some of those costs, just like we do with other, to try to incentivize. I don't see this any different from any other business industry. This is a business, we're trying to incentivize business to happen in our community. These are green jobs, these are, this is a benefit that actually residents can benefit from by lowering their energy cost. And so I think that there's an opportunity for us to help incentivize by figuring out a fee that will be much better received by not only the industry, but also by our residents. That's what my recommendation would be, so.
And we can, we will certainly look at ways to optimize the resources that we have and also provide some incentives for those installers who actually come in, ask for plans to be reviewed, and then pull the permit, rather than just having us review the plans and go, "Well, never mind." But we'll, we'll look at that as an opportunity as well.
And then the other thing, they mentioned that there's no electronic option available.
That's coming with Ascela.
So that, that will happen, how long?
We're in the process of installing and shifting over that software. And so I'm being told the system will be up by January.
So in the next six months, there's no way that people can submit through email or through fax?
I will sit down with, with Mr. Horn, with ISD, and see if we can come up with a temporary patch.
Because I think that that's what the, also the state law requires us to allow these to come electronically, at least how I've read it, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know.
So what I'd like to do is make the motion where we cut the fee to 500 to be, meet that requirement from the state. Pending the analysis coming back, we will review the fees, perhaps reduce them further in comparative analysis to the other cities, but we'll leave it at 500.
Perfect.
You second that?
Second.
Okay, we have, in, in this order, Member Chavez, Member Baines, and then Member Brandau.
I, I won't, I won't beat up our DARM department any further, because I think that that happens a lot here in this building, and ultimately, they, they work at the direction of the council. But I am supportive of the further studying the master fee schedule. I do have a quick question for staff. Do we have a different rate structure for commercial and industrial solar projects, or is it the same, or is it the same flat fee for residential as well?
Yes, Member Chavez, this is Brian Leong with the Building and Safety Division. The SB 1222 only covers small rooftop solar permitting, so part of the Senate bill is not included in commercial, but it is the same calculation rate.
Well, because I like to have that included as well, the commercial and the industrial, and the reason for that is there, there's a lot of discussion in our city about, you know, not just with e-commerce, but with distribution warehouses. I met with a solar company last week, and they're undertaking a huge solar project. I really think that's going to be a big boost for the Central Valley, and we do need to figure out ways of supporting that. I think their capacity now, they mentioned that they can actually have a Tesla battery that will hold 1 kilowatt of capacity of energy storage there, and we know that energy rates are 40, 40% higher in the Central Valley than they are in the coastal regions. A big disadvantage for our economy here, and so I'd like to see a study on the commercial and on the industrial solar fee structure as well.
We can probably include that in that, because it would be a different rate because of the magnitude of commercial. It's a lot more complex system than it would be on a residential system, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just really quickly, I want to concur with, with my colleagues. I think it's a good idea to make sure that it's a well-crafted motion, Councilmember Brettafeldt. And thank you, thank you guys for raising the issue. I think we, it's smart to have the right analysis, but that horse is, we beat that horse to, to, beat that horse pretty good today. I do want to offer something, though, just, just to be clear. So I do a little solar business, and our department is not always derelict in, in getting its permits on time, so I want to say that, that I've had many such instances where our department is able to process, you know, residential solar permits in a couple of days, usually sometimes under the three-day period. So just wanted to offer that. You know, maybe it's not like that all the time. Clearly, somebody else has, have different experiences, but I do want to commend the work of the department in the times, at least that I've dealt with them, in a timely fashion. So I'm supportive of the motion, but certainly wanted to offer a word, a word of encouragement.
I also just want to add a few comments to what Councilman Baines just said. We've got the mayor, I believe, in the room, or he was in the room when you made your comments about how bad the planning department turns around permits and so forth, but he has a task force, he's aware of that situation. It's going to be, it's going to be addressed, it's already being addressed. So I hear your complaints. You didn't tell us anything new, but our new mayor is putting that in his crosshairs, so hopefully, we're going to bring some relief in that regard. I'm going to say, I am also looking forward to an overhaul of the master fee schedule and see what will be contained in that when we get to that complete study. And in general, I am always fine with reducing fees almost across the board. But solar, in particular, is one of the most subsidized rackets in this nation from top to bottom. It's so subsidized from top to bottom, and I don't know what else to say. Essentially, solar companies would love to provide this stuff for free because it, it works with the political agenda, and so I'm going to be a no vote on this one. Yeah, Oliver, do you want to talk about solar being a racket?
All right, the screen is clear.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I just want to make sure I get this straight. You're voting no, and we want to try to reduce fees?
I'm, I'm voting no.
I am going to, hey, so everybody, the listening audience, you know, take down this moment, because I'm going to, I'm going to get him on this one day.
We've actually, this isn't, this, this, yeah, well, let me ask you this. Why don't we reduce them to zero? And then we'll do this with the next fee that comes up. What about water connection fees? I mean, do you see a difference in reducing this fee versus water connection fees? I mean, what the heck's going on? Hypocrisy abounds up here all over the place. But I'm saying solar is heavily subsidized already.
What I, what I think is it's fair for us to, to do a study and have an appropriate comparative analysis. So that's fair. Now, if it comes out that the fee should be zero from the comparative analysis, then yeah, you get me there, but I think that we need to make sure that whatever fee we're charging is commensurate with, one, the market, and what it actually takes us to do it. But anyhow, Councilman Brandau, you just shocked me. I had almost, I cannot believe you said that, so I had to come back.
Well, I appreciate that you were on the ball today.
You know what, Steve brings up an interesting point. So take me through, rewind the tape on this debate to take me back to where did we start in terms of what the fee is? We're codifying a fee that's been in place for a number of years. What is that, that we're charging right now? Just, just, just give me a number, and then...
Based on the study, the cost allocation study that was conducted in 2011, we're charging $611.
$611 covers the cost of processing the permit through the department?
Yes.
So now the motion is to make that $500?
Yeah, pending the outcome of a study, and that staff will come back in 30 days with a, with a study to determine, based on our costs, what the appropriate fee will be. The council can then choose to adopt that fee, or the council can choose to just adopt whatever they feel is appropriate based on what other cities charge.
And so who in this room can tell me what other cities charge in 30 seconds or less to just go down the list? One of these gentlemen?
Well, we'll provide you, they can provide that, but we will provide you that information when we come back in 30 days.
Thank you, city manager. Yeah, if you could just rattle off maybe five or six?
Sure. So city of Fresno, right now, we're seeing 450 to $900 fees. City manager mentioned 611, I believe, is where they, they put it. Clovis is currently charging 250 to $350. Fresno County is doing it in 350 to $450, and the city of Sacramento is doing it in 350 to $400.
Thank you. Just want to ask the maker of the motion, can we match the three, the, what was it? It was 350 to 450? What municipality was that?
That was Sacramento, city of Sacramento.
City of Sacramento. Can we amend the motion to go from, give a range of 350 to 450?
I mean, I'd be happy, anything we can do to reduce fees. I don't know what, what would determine 350 versus 400 versus 450.
Well, we'll find out when city manager comes back and...
I make that motion.
Okay, so it will, thank you. Can we have someone read the motion, please?
Would you like me to say what the motion is? The motion is to reject the resolution as it is right now, to reduce the current fee of 611 to the range of 350 to 450, which matches some of the other municipalities, and that will be pending the study coming back by our staff within 30 days, and then this council can then make a more informed decision with the data that we have.
Thank you, Member Brettafeldt. Let's go to city attorney quickly, and then Member Capriolio.
Yeah, Council, the reason I understand there may be a range is that there's actually a floor fee plus so much per kilowatt above that. That's what would constitute the range. You don't just have a range. State law provides actually that the default is $500 plus $15 per, for every kilowatt above 15 kilowatts.
Say up to 450?
Right, so you would have a floor amount plus $15 per kilowatt above 15 kilowatts.
Can we vote? This is the most talkative council I've ever seen in my five years on every issue, so can we do this, please?
Vote electronically. Item carries five yes, or excuse me, six yes and one no. Thank you, staff. All right, moving now to the final item that's been pulled. This is item 1N. This is Finance Department, adopt the annual amendment.
Good morning, Council. Mike Lima, here to answer any questions you have on item 1N.
Member Brandau, item 1N is up.
Some clarification on what actually is happening in the memorandum of understanding with us and the county relating to sales and use taxes.
Basically, the memorandum that we have with the county calls for an adjustment of the amount that is shared between the county and the city. Every couple of years, we, the MOU calls for us, for both agencies, to adjust the rate of tax sharing on sales tax. That's what this item is. It's going to...
Okay, and then what is the rate? What's happening within the rate?
So the rate, the rate that people pay will not change at all, okay?
The rate of our share of the city of Fresno vis a vis the county of Fresno, then?
No, well, if you go to the store, you're not going to pay in a higher rate. It's just the amount that's, that, right now, there's a 1%.
Yeah, I get that, and my question is, who's benefiting from this rate change?
We are.
All right, thank you. All right, motion to approve.
Clear. Is there any opposition to the item? Item carries unanimously. Thank you, staff.
Who was the second on that?
It was Member Baines. All right, we've got a 9:30 a.m. workshop with the mayor, but let's go ahead and get some folks moving here. Is Elise, Alicia White here? Oh, I have two scheduled, I mean, I see them now, but I just have two scheduled communications. Is Ms. White here? Ms. White to talk about a safe haven for homeless people? Okay, we're going to skip past that. Mary Esther Correa, please come forward. I realize, Council, that the budget is scheduled for 9:30, but we also have constituents that we can get on the way in, one, two, three. Member Capriolio? Okay, you can go, because we, we can't lose quorum.
Why is everybody leaving?
If you could give us your name and address for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Give me another extra minute. 3407 East Iowa, I was born and raised here in California, Fresno. This is my second home, and I love my place, but I found out that we're almost done. We're doing a lot more than what we intended, but the homeless juryed and opened my back door, and they trashed my door, and it was done already. And it was done already, and that man was in there, scared me to death. Homeless, squatted in there, middle of the night. Today, this morning, I had some palm trees to remind me of my home. I had them there already, and they stole them last night. My, that's crazy, this is crazy. I found out that the court inspectors work on commission, and they're after me, after me. They want to fine me $12,000 when I had a tenant that moved in in August when I was here for six months with the water department. It got resolved, thanks goodness. And now, they want, the tenants were in there in August when I left, and then in November, they stopped paying the rent, and then they trashed the place. That's crazy. Okay, so now the court enforcement is charging me $12,000. And I fixed my place, I live here, I love my place, and now I found out that they want me to get a permit. And I said, but the contractor said I don't need a permit because it was a patch. I took off the swamp coolers and put in air conditioners because there was too many problems with the swamp coolers. And now the court enforcement that work on commission charging me $12,000, and they want me to get a permit for the patch on my roof. And there was two different, one of them was done last year. I just found the contractor's license number that did it. So I only had one that was leaking badly because we had a lot of rain this year. And now, they work on commission, now they want me to get a permit for both of them. That's crazy. I went to the permit department, and guess what? If a patch is 100 feet, less than 100 feet, I don't have to get a permit. I can't spend any more money. And why don't they know that? They don't care. All you have to do is go, I sent you guys a paper from the, I went finally up there, how much is it going to cost? And why do I have, the contractor said I don't need it because it's a patch. And anything under 100 square feet, you don't need a permit. And they want me to pay a permit, that's crazy. And, you know, they work on commission, and they're scamming me. $12,000 is a lot of money that I can't afford. I'm a retired senior citizen, disabled. $12,000, and you guys, not even you know how, they should know this. I went up there, how come they keep fining me? Get a permit, get a permit. I don't need a permit. I sent you guys a memo from the department of permits.
Thank you, Ms. Correa.
Thank you. I'm not going to pay no $12,000. I need to fix my door, and that's it. I'm going to have to get an attorney. I'm not going to do this. Besides, I don't have the money.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, thank you, Clint.
Alicia White?
I'm going to have to get an attorney.
Okay. Let's go ahead and begin our mayor's budget workshop. Mayor, are you still here? Hi. Let me go ahead and get those other council members to, Mrs. Correa, thank you. Let me run back and get those other council members, mayor. We can move forward. Member Brennfeld is momentarily detained, but if, all right, thank you.
You know, why don't you just debate earlier? I want to just jump up there and start engaging myself. It's like old times.
Be glad, be glad.
So I'm here this morning for the first time as your mayor to present a budget. And I can tell you from being on the other side of the budget, it's a lot, it's a pretty elaborate process, there's a lot of work involved, and a lot of people, a lot of directors and city employees who did a lot of work to get here. So eight years on the council, I clearly demonstrated my fiscal responsibility that will continue as the mayor. Legislation I wrote during the eight years has formed a fiscal foundation for the city that has benefited in many ways, including, two months ago, refinancing or getting our credit rating elevated to A+, saving the city $40 million. This is a budget for the coming fiscal year, but it's also a budget that charts a course towards fiscal prosperity. So let me elaborate a bit. If we continue what we're doing, we're never going to get past this. Revenues and operating costs are going to be a struggle. We're never going to have the money to hire the police officers, firefighters, parks, trails, capitals. We've got to make a change. So what this budget does, it sets a platform for the future, and it can't be done overnight. It's probably an eight to 10-year plan, but if it's executed properly, in my opinion, it's going to get us to a point that I'll get in later that'll totally change the course of the city. So I'm pleased today to present a budget of $1.1 billion and roughly $324 million on the general fund. And today's an overview only, you have your budget packets, and there'll be budget hearings in the next couple of weeks so we can go into details on any department, any line item. And this budget focuses on four key initiatives. Economic development, public safety, quality of life improvements, and prudent fiscal management. And the first initiative, economic development, is the engine that drives the success of the other three key initiatives. So my vision for Fresno is to transform our economy by creating citywide prosperity that will improve the quality of life for everyone in Fresno. And for decades, we've dealt with high unemployment, high crime, generational poverty. We need to make the change and stop that cycle. So achieving these goals will require a commitment of city resources and a collaboration of other government agencies and the private sector to be successful, including assessing the infrastructure needs and costs, and developing a long-term plan to fund the infrastructure in our industrial area. Two, focusing on specific industry groups, including e-commerce and data centers in strategic locations, including the industrial area near Highway 41 and Highway 99 Triangle. And developing a comprehensive marketing and branding of the industrial development effort, we need to continue building momentum. Remember, success breeds success. And a successful building of e-commerce centers in South Fresno Industrial Triangle will create thousands of new jobs. Is also, it will also significantly raise our economic tax base. Over the next 10 years, there will be major increases in property tax, sales tax, business tax revenue. Substantial increases in our economic tax base provide the funding needed to hire more police officers, firefighters, fight blight and homelessness, rebuild our roads and other infrastructure, and improve and build new parks. And we are nearing the halfway goal of 10,000 jobs, counting Ulta with up to 1,000 jobs, up to 2,500 jobs when we're successful with Amazon, and up to 1,500 jobs successful with a high-speed rail maintenance, heavy maintenance facility. That's almost 5,000 jobs. And this does not include creation of additional jobs in other industrial areas of Fresno that'll be identified later this year, nor does it include any growth in the many small businesses that are in Fresno. So it's not just adding 500 jobs or 1,000 jobs, it's five jobs and 10 jobs, it all adds up. And to get the impact on our budget, if we continue doing what we're doing, you're going to see a line of expenses and revenues. It's going to always be a struggle to have revenues exceed expenses. We're never going to get the gap we need to adequately fund our budget. So getting 10,000 new jobs using a multiplier effect actually means 20,000 new jobs due to the increased need in retail, service, and support jobs. And think of it this way, 20,000 jobs is 20,000 families in Fresno. That's probably 80,000 to 100,000 people. That's a fifth of our population are going to dramatically change their lives. That's what's at stake. That's the goal. That's what we have to achieve. I'm raising the bar high, but that's where I want to go. Of these 20,000 new jobs, it means an estimated roughly 1,050 of increased tax revenue per job. That's potentially $21 million more in the general fund in 2027. What this does, when you take, for example, the triangle at 41 and 99 by north and central, roughly 1,000 acres, you can build that out, the e-commerce centers, data centers, you're taking land that's worth X amount of dollars per acre, and it's going to go up exponentially, a hundredfold. There'll be incentives the first few years, it'll be part of the deal to get them there. But over time, the property tax base, sales tax, business license, et cetera, are going to dramatically improve. That's where we need to go. And that chart here shows you what happens when you have a multiplier, and that gap between revenues and expense and operating cost increase. So my simple formula for success is more jobs equal more revenue. More revenue equals better services. Better services equal better quality of life. This is the roadmap to building a better Fresno with a better quality of life for all of our citizens. And I do have quality of life improvements in this budget. Includes the implementation of the Rental Housing Improvement Act, established by establishing a proactive rental housing inspection program that will focus on improving the quality of rental housing available in Fresno. It's an expansion of weekend fitness, health and fitness programs at Fresno Unified and Central Unified campuses to include instructional and recreational swimming. $5 billion in funding for neighborhood parks renovation projects, $26 million in funding for street improvements projects, and there'll be additional monies for pottle repairs, alley cleaning, tree trimming, meeting island maintenance, and enhancements of the online utility billings. And I'm proposing significant increases to public safety, hiring 21 additional sworn officers. This will increase our sworn staffing to 825, the highest sworn staffing level since FY 2009, 2010. And during my time in the council, we got as low as 697. Expanding the shot spotter coverage from six to nine square miles, and this technology can triangulate gunfire incidents and pinpoint the exact location. We know it works, and I believe it saved lives on April 18th. And I'm also working with Fresno County, who've made an initial commitment to help out. It's roughly $50,000 per square mile, and the Fresno Unified School Board. So we're trying to expand this area of a technology we know that works. And as an added note, as we go forward as a city, we need to look more and more towards technology as a solution to help us on public safety. We're never, ever going to have enough money to have a police officer in every corner, but there's a lot of things happening. I'll get into it later in the year on using technology to improve our safety. We're also funding a new police substation in southeast Fresno, and it's done without any bond debt. This is a departure. In the past, we'd take a six or seven million dollar project, would run a bond, we have debt, and we have too much debt. From the proceeds of the refinancing I mentioned earlier, we're going to pay this entire substation off cash. There is no financing. Thank you, Council President. Includes 50 new patrol vehicles, 14 motorcycles, and additional equipment for the PD, and making the Office of Independent Review a full-time local position. And for the fire department, we'll have upgrades, including the third year of an eight-year program to completely replace all fire engines and other apparatus, and the second year of a complete replacement of fire personnel protective equipment. All of this is an ongoing strategy of prudent fiscal management that brought the city from the brink of bankruptcy and is poised for greater success. And key elements of my policy include the FY 2018 budget reflects over $1 million, I think it's actually closer to 13, 14, in savings for this year, and a total savings over 22 years of approximately $42 million. Continued contributions to the city's general fund reserve, which is on track to reach a level of 10% or $32 million by FY 2020. That's three years. And the significance of this, as I mentioned earlier, we were upgraded five points to A+. A large part of that was having a reserve in place. It's very important that we keep this. I know it's tempting to take the money and go someplace else, but absolutely, we have to continue this process. Had we had a $32 million reserve in 2009 when I came on, the impact to the organization of the city would have been much less. It was a struggle. We're going to identify innovative funding streams, including approximately $100,000 from existing digital sign revenues at key city locations on properties adjacent to the freeway. And our goal is to find at least $1 million in additional new funding streams. I believe you got an item on your agenda today on five bars, on, that's one of those things we're talking about, and there's more out there. In addition, we're going to plan to actively market city surplus properties and place all the escrow proceeds into a general fund reserve account. It's estimated that'll bring between $6 and $13 million. I've not included this potential revenue in this budget because we're speculating on it. We don't know for sure we're going to have it, when it's going to close. A good example is the Blosser property that's been in and out of escrow three or four times. The money's been spent 100 times, so you have to have a solid foundation to go forward. We're also going to have one-time savings and revenues into a funding stream. Mark, it showed that. The general fund debt is going to show significant reductions in its, over the next 10 to 15 years. This chart just illustrates, and we're low for 2018 because part of the proceeds from the refinance helped us out. But by FY 2024, roughly $3 million plus will be dropped on our general fund debt. And by 2030, we're going to drop $15 million. You go about two more years out, it drops about $20 million. So when you combine the potential $20 million plus increase to the general fund tax base in 10 years, and a $15 million drop in the debt service, you're yielding a net gain of $35 million plus. That's a game changer in Fresno. That's my long-term vision for Fresno. That's the path to prosperity. So I want to acknowledge all my department directors who put a lot of work in here to do this, and this was budget... do this, and this was budgets probably five or six or seven iterations. I want to especially thank our budget staff and James Sutner. Is Jane here? Give her a hand, everybody. I want to thank my staff, led by Tim Orman, for their efforts putting the budgets together. And of course, I want to thank city manager Bruce Rudd, who's on his last budget, maybe. And assistant city manager, the city manager in waiting, Will McQuan Schecter, and controller Mike Lima. I think Mike's here today. There he is, Mike. Thank you. And Bruce, do you want to add a few words? Thank you.
When we release this budget, budgets are always difficult, and this is probably, in a lot of ways, interesting, but like in the past, a challenging budget because when we are teetering on the verge of bankruptcy, it was pretty easy to just say no. In fact, most of the time, we were worrying about just how we continued to sustain some level of service during that time. Fortunately, with the support of a lot of you who are up here, a lot of hard decisions had to be made. There were also a lot of cans, proverbial cans, that had been kicked down the road that this council had finally, you know, addressed. As a result of our diligence and our commitment to staying in the course and taking the steps necessary to ensure that we didn't put this organization in the same financial straits that we found ourselves in in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we were able to do what a lot of people didn't think we were going to be able to do. I remember a time when we were listed with cities such as Detroit, San Bernardino, Stockton, Vallejo. Well, we're not. And in fact, in retrospect, coming out of that crisis has made us a better organization to today. We are probably, albeit I'm still not as comfortable with the reserve as I would prefer it to be, but that's just me. If you look at where we are at compared to other cities in California, and their looming pension obligation that is already impacting cities up and down the state, I think in about two to three years, and I've had other city managers and others actually compliment this council and this mayor for the effort and the work that's been put into bringing this organization to where it is today, there are going to be other cities who we will be watching and seeing services being slashed at an unprecedented level because their inability to cover their future obligations, which is primarily their pensions. This budget reflects in the strategy of not only adopting budgets within a one-year period, but looking at the implications of what those decisions would manifest themselves over a five-year period was probably the biggest change that this organization ever had undertaken. But again, it was one of those things that people who are being prudent and fiscally responsible do. This budget, as the mayor points out, allows us to continue the slow and methodical restoration of city services. But we all agree, not at a pace and not at the level that any of us would like to see. We also know that the only way for that to change and change the trajectory of this organization and our ability to serve this community is through changing the economic base of this community. We are primarily an ag-based economy, but that industry has changed significantly as a result of technology. What used to take fifteen or twenty people now is one individual on a piece of equipment that's probably being driven from a satellite and a GPS tracking system, in some cases not even being driven by anybody. And so the underlying challenges for this community have been, always will be until we do something about it, is the level of poverty and unemployment that has plagued this community and this region for way too long. So not only does this budget and the course laid out by the mayor help us address the levels of services that we can provide, but it also challenges us as a region to take the bold steps to change the paradigm and discussion amongst all of us about how do we deal with the underlying challenges that comes with a level of unemployment that in other parts of this country are unprecedented, and the social impacts and the challenges that that unemployment and that poverty creates for this region and this community. So as I share with the mayor, I applaud him for not only this budget, but also recognizing that until we change that underlying factor of unemployment and the associated challenges that brings, that we will not be able to move the needle. And I think all of us have been up here and have committed ourselves to this community because we want to move the needle. We want to give people hope. We want to give people the ability to provide for themselves and provide for their families. And as a result of that, that will generate the net new revenue that we will need in order to provide to those families in our residents. So thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor Brand, and thank you, city manager. We have a number of council members punched up, Member Bretafeld, followed by Member Chavez, Member Baines, and then Member Capriolio.
Mayor Brand. Yeah, I also want to echo the same comments, city manager, commend the mayor for this budget. I mean, obviously, we're going to go through it, but I appreciate all of the work and how you've outlined things from an economic point of view, public safety point of view, adding the twenty-one officers. I know we all face a challenge, obviously, in maintaining the officers building up. I mean, we have the positions, but they're, you know, obviously many vacant, and we have trouble filling those positions. That's something we're going to have to deal with for sure. But I want to commend you, your staff, city manager, new incoming city manager, for doing a phenomenal job. I think it's a tremendous budget, and I really admire the way you do it and the focus on the fiscal aspect of making sure we spend what we have. So thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to thank you for the work that you've been doing these last couple of months. I had an opportunity to attend the ICSC conference this past week, and I got to tell you that, I mean, people are noticing Fresno being on the map. There are major retailers that are looking at us right now with, matter of fact, I have two leads that I was able to speak with about two big distribution centers right here in Fresno for the Central Valley, all the way up to Merced, and, no, excuse me, Modesto and Bakersfield. And so I'll be chatting with you, but I really want to thank you for focusing on the economic development piece. Oftentimes, we have conversations about, as our city manager mentioned, poverty and unemployment, and we oftentimes formulate Band-Aids. But I think the economic development piece for this community is going to be huge. We've got a lot of folks that are out of work, that have been out of work. We're always the first to feel recessions and always the last to recover from it, and it's been a long journey. I know when you were up here, you would say you've spent hundreds of hours. I assume you say thousands of hours now since you're the mayor, but I did want to commend you and also remind my colleagues of the big project that's going to be a game changer for our city. The southern part will be that Fancher Creek project, and there was a tremendous amount of interest of retailers there. Matter of fact, they actually have some preliminary letters of interest submitted already, and we're hoping to go vertical on that project next year. A thousand three hundred new jobs for South Fresno, that's going to be a huge game changer for our area. I did want to just briefly highlight, I know you mentioned that we're going to eight hundred and twenty-five police officers. Are we planning on doing anything as far as, I know we've lost a couple officers to some of the neighboring jurisdictions. I think we were at budgeted for eight oh one previously. Where are we at now?
Well, actually, Councilman Brando and I, a couple of years ago, worked with the city manager and the chief in the POA on addressing this very issue, and it's a big issue nationally as far as recruiting police officers. And I think, in my opinion, we've not done enough. We need, I need to resurrect that effort to get back on getting more people involved in the recruiting process, selling Fresno. I mean, the city manager mentioned the pension. We're one of three cities in, I believe, the United States that are fully funded. In Dallas, they're on the brink of bankruptcy. Fort Worth and Houston are pulling police officers because guess what? They have solvent pension systems. So I think that we have some features we can sell to people. I need, I talked to Damon Kurtz the other day about exit interviews, and I think right now they're doing some informal ones. We need to have our HR people doing that, and they may be doing it, if I'm speaking incorrectly, exit interviews, finding a way to retain more people, more importantly, finding ways to get new people coming up. And I think Fresno has a lot to sell. What I'm doing here, I'm offering a very optimistic, very ambitious plan to improve this city. And as we improve this city and we tackle this underlying problem of poverty, the hope is down the road, the long term, that one day, more people become gainfully employed, they get a part of the American dream, and we reduce the number of people that join gangs and are criminals. We don't have to have as many police officers. We implement community-based policing to address these things at the grassroots level. So this is strategic thinking, and it's not going to be easy, but I need everybody up here to work. I can't do it by myself. It's got to be a collaborative effort.
Absolutely, and I think every one of us are there. And the reason I brought it up is that was one of the, so when you go to these conferences, you find out the perspective from the business industry's point of view, right? They ask about discretionary spending. They ask about rooftops. They ask about infrastructure. And so I talked a lot about, you know, our water and sewer upgrades and our BRT, but then the big issue that they also ask about was public safety. You know, what do your statistics look like, especially around those areas of retail? And so I think that's something that we could definitely work on as a council and with your folks, and making sure, and I know your office has been very helpful, your team has been very helpful in facilitating a lot of the new jobs, new businesses that will be opening in southeast, and be able to continue that trend as we go forward. Thank you.
Let me join in the comments of my colleagues. Mayor Brand, I think you rolled out a great budget thus far. I don't know how many it's going to make for me, probably eight or nine at this point, but appreciate the budget, appreciate your budget priorities, as does the rest of the council. But I wanted to hone in and really commend you for something specifically that has been a focus of mine for the last several years, and you know that it is moving the poverty needle through economic development and workforce development. And so what I wholeheartedly appreciate about your message to us, which means the message to Fresno, is your commitment to moving the poverty needle, putting people to work, and using the tools of the city to be conscious and strategic about that. So I want to tell you that I wholeheartedly support that effort. And I would say this, and if I can add anything to your thoughts on that, is we really need to have a close, working, strategic relationship with those programs that are doing workforce development. And we need to, on our end, on the city side, have policies that support those programs for our economic expansion to ensure that when, as we are attracting the industries like Councilmember Chavez was at ICSC, that when we do attract those industries, we know they're going to hire our folks, and we just need to make sure that we're embedding that in our policies. So Mayor Brand, good budget. I appreciate you leading with the importance of economic development for this community. I appreciate you wanting to raise all tides and using that as the way to fiscal stability for our community. And I can speak on behalf certainly of the residents of District Three that my residents appreciate that focus, and it's probably long overdue. So thank you.
Just a couple of notes. One thing that's a main concern is we get all these jobs, and we don't have people to fill the jobs. I've been meeting with organizations, EDC, Workforce Investment Board, all the State Center. I went to the State Center in Clovis about two months ago, two days after, a week after I got back from Seattle visiting the plant of Amazon, the Amazon Fulfillment Center, and they said, yeah, they have a class of two hundred people in robotic assembly operations, which is the exact type of job and training they need. The good thing about a lot of these jobs in e-commerce, they're not highly technical, GED, six months' experience. So we, I call it the job supply chain. We need to get fitting people into these jobs. The good part is we have typically a twelve, eighteen-month ramp-up by the time we've closed the deal and they build the facility and they open the doors. So we've got to work closely with Fresno County, our partner, the nonprofits, and the people that train the employees. I think in the past, it's been people working in different silos, not really coordinating where things are going. I want to make this more precise, that it's a community-wide effort employing, and again, the main thing is to employ people that are not participating in our, they're on unemployment, they're on public assistance, or they're underemployed. Those people become employed, that's a game changer for the city of Fresno.
Well, Mayor Brand, I'll tell you that you're echoing all my sentiments, and you know, you probably know like a few people do that I invest a tremendous amount of my life to that very effort, to moving people into the workforce and gainful employment. So very happy to hear that you've placed that as such a high priority in this city, and I wholeheartedly support the effort, and you can consider me a partner in helping you, you know, realize those visions of, you know, rising, having all tides rise.
Mayor, I wanted to first acknowledge you as a council member and my council colleagues, as well as the city manager and Mayor Swearengen, for getting us through those past tough eight years to where we are today. And in listening to you at the press conference and here, you're amazing because your formula is so simple yet brilliant. And if you do the economic development, which is jobs equals revenue equals services equals better quality of life, that is the path to prosperity for Fresno. And I wholeheartedly stand behind you as the representative for the fourth district. And on that quality of life improvements, that directly affects our citizens, and the citizens are the taxpayers, and the taxpayers need the benefit, and they will see tangible benefits from this formula that you presented to us today. In my district, we were doing some infrastructure paving, and people were coming out and talking to me as well as our street staff, saying, we haven't had anything here for fifty-seven years. No improvements, really. Fix some sidewalks, and that's it. Now, with your formula and the path that you're leading us down of prosperity, we're going to be able to satisfy those tangible benefits for the taxpayers. So I'm wholeheartedly with you, and I think we're the only city with a viable pension plan in the state of California. North to south, Fresno, we're the best. Again, so I support you. I think this is a brilliant plan. Again, it's so simple, yet it's brilliant. So Mayor Brand strikes again.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor, for the presentation, and so I'm looking forward to having a fruitful debate over the course of the next few weeks. You know, thank you for really highlighting your priorities and the plan that you have to create a better community, a better city. Just have a couple just kind of general questions, because we know that recently the Trump administration issued their federal budget, and so if we're all paying attention, there's a lot of federal programs that have been slashed to probably fifty percent, and some have been eliminated. As a city that has been plagued with poverty for many decades, we count on a lot of federal funding. And so I wanted to just ask you whether the cuts that have been proposed are reflected in the budget that you're presenting today, or will this council have to, and over the course of the next few weeks, kind of look at what are some of those things that are budgeted, that we were expecting federal funding? Like a lot of it, I know it's parks, we get a lot of federal grants, you know, the CDBG, even some infrastructure money that we've used. And so I wanted to see maybe some of your comments and reflection on that.
Well, the process has been very fluid because it's a constant change, and I know, and I have Bruce elaborate, we did factor in the cut in CDBG funds, there are some items out there. Just let me say generically, as we go forward, you launch a long-term plan, the temptation is everybody, I meet ten different people, they all have ten priorities, and every one of them is right, but we have to take it in bits and pieces to get to the end. And the end is that we're finally in a position as a city, after unlike ever having this luxury going back fifty, sixty years, of having the revenues and the prosperity that we can actually fund all the different things from police to parks to senior meals, to culture, to concerts, all those things that make a city a city. But Bruce, you want to respond?
As the mayor said, budgets are always fluid.
As the mayor said, budgets are always fluid. It's a guess or a projection based on a point in time. As far as federal funding is concerned, for HUD funding, we do have and have been provided information as to what our levels of CDBG and those dollars are going to be next year. We do not anticipate, based on the continuing resolution and actions recently taken by Congress, a reduction in those funding sources. We have seen, in the president's proposed budget, reductions in primarily in transportation funding. Parks is not so much because we don't really receive anything in federal funds for our park system.
But we do use the CDBG dollars for parks.
We do use CDBG for senior meals, and we use it for infrastructure. So, the good news is that from a CDBG standpoint, we don't anticipate any reductions this upcoming year, the following year. That's a whole different conversation. As far as transportation dollars, we'll just have to wait and see. Again, it's a combination of dollars used for public works of improvement, such as streets, but also public transportation. But I guess I've been through enough budgets and enough iterations with the federal government and the state that I don't get too worried until someone actually signs a budget, because before that, there's a lot of give and take between the various parties and representatives. But when that does occur, and we do have something, then, like everything else, we'll make adjustments accordingly.
Perfect. Thank you. And I think one other question that I had. So, I'm excited that there is monies, obviously, for parks. I've been, as many of the other council members, a big advocate for increased investments in our parks. And I saw that you have a figure of about $5 million, which I think, you know, seems like a big chunk of money. Is this just kind of what we've funded over the last few years, or is it one-time additional?
I think it's, Bruce, on the parks, or Wilma, on the $5 million, because I'm just at the level of the generic top and the details on the $5 million in the parks.
So, it's a combination of some projects that were carried over, it's some additional tier-one projects that were not finished, for example. There's some CDBG that's going into some projects. So, it's a combination of some general fund dollars from last year and some CDBG, and then a few grants that we received.
Perfect. And I just ask that just because I'm still extremely interested in seeing, you know, additional investments to our parks. They're very important in how we elevate the quality of life, especially in the older neighborhoods. I, you know, I've been a big advocate for trying to improve Quigley Park. You know, I look forward to having more of a debate, and I know that I've shared some of the interest in investing, like in master planning Quigley because of where it's at and how we can definitely improve that area. But excited to have the next few weeks debate with my colleagues, the priorities that have been outlined, and how we can maximize every dollar to truly improve quality of life across the board, and really help, in particular, those neighborhoods that have been lagging and the investments haven't been there because of the recession, or just because of priorities that have been different in the previous years. So, again, thank you for presenting this today.
Mayor, really quickly, we just figured out your first slogan for this year's budget, and I'm going to bring in Member Baines. "It's a brand-new day because Mayor Brand is branding Fresno."
Yeah, I like it.
Bam. Thank me later.
I don't know how to follow that, so I'll just say, "Well done, Mayor. Looking forward to the adoption of this budget." I think that staying the course and putting money in reserve to continue and to reach our goal is something that I really can support and get behind, because I remember being here with you in 2010 and 2011, and those dark days, and it's great to see a budget like this. So, thank you, and thank you to your staff for coming up with that and for your commitment to fiscal prudence to get the city back on the road to recovery. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I say one final thing for everybody here. Believe in Fresno, believe in yourself. That's one of our biggest problems, or our own worst enemy. I believe we can change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, do we have a Teresa Avila here? Teresa Avila, are you in council chambers right now? Okay, I have a yellow card from you, but if you're not here... Okay, let's move on to the 10 o'clock item. This is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory, Public Works.
Good morning. Andrew Benelli with Public Works. This is an annexation into Community Facilities District Number 11 for Final Track Map 6031. It's at East Dakota and North Fowler, Council District Four. This has been before you before. There's been a change in the amount of lots that are planned, which resulted in a reduction in the annual assessment. And after a hearing, we'd recommend your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it up to Member Capriolio.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. The screen is, oh, we have to go to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, return it to council. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the item passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And now, we move to the 10:10 item. This is a joint meeting with the Fresno Joint Powers Financing Authority and the City of Fresno Cultural Arts Properties.
Good morning, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller. Before you today are items that, if approved, will result in the city owning the former Fresno B Building and dissolving the City of Fresno Cultural Arts Properties Corporation, or COFCAP. About two months ago, you approved items that transferred the former B Building's deed from the FBB Investment Trust to the Joint Powers Financing Authority, or JPFA. Today's proposed actions will transfer the former B Building's deed from the JPFA to the city as a repayment for a $12.7 million loan made by the city to fund the purchase. The actions will also dissolve the COFCAP, as there is no practical need for the entity once the deed has been transferred. As the former B Building is not used as collateral for any JPFA or city bond, the building could be sold or leased at the discretion of the city. Staff recommends approval of both the transfer of the former B Building's deed from the JPFA to the city and the dissolution of the COFCAP. I'm available to answer any questions you may have on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, returning it to council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Do you have remarks? Okay. City Attorney?
Just to be clear, you can have one motion and vote that would include COFCAP board to JPFA and the council voting altogether.
That would be my motion.
Okay, and that includes item, both items, one and two?
That's correct.
Right. Okay. So, we have a motion, a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the item? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, staff. Oh, Member Soria's gone. Thank you. Okay. Let me get caught up here. We heard, okay, yes. Let's move to item three, item 3A. This is actions pertaining to drilling and development, and this is Department of Public Utilities.
Little book of Department of Public Utilities, Water Division. This item is to award a contract to Zim Industries for the drilling and construction of five production wells. Most of these wells are located in the central part of the city, and this is for the five, a contract for five wells. Staff recommends award this contract, and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll return it to council.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Okay, seeing none, that item passes six to zero. Thank you, staff. Now, we move to item 3B. Nope, 3B was... Yes, I'm going to go ahead and hold item 3B until 1:30 because we have members of the community who wish to be present, who were not able to be here now. So, I've timed that for 1:30 for when we return from lunch sharply. Okay, so that's item 3B. Item 3C, approve the wireless marketing agreement, ISD.
Morning, council. Brian Horn, Chief Information Officer, Information Services Department. Today before you is an item to approve a wireless agreement with Five Bars to actively market wireless services, infrastructure for the City of Fresno. So, a little bit of background about this particular item. In October 2016, the City of Fresno issued a request for qualifications seeking qualified respondents for a gigabit wireless and/or wired fiber system. The city received 13 respondents and proposals, and we interviewed each and every one of them. The RFQ was written in such a way that the first, that we could have varied responses and multiple awards. Five Bars was the first qualified respondent, and we, that had a unique solution, therefore we thought prudent to bring them forward. I want to let you know that the RFQ is still in process. This is just the first steps. And a high-level summary of the Five Bars proposal is that they specialize in wireless technology. They're going to market our assets and lease them to carriers. The assets to be leased will be light poles and maybe some buildings. The assets that we are in question will be mutually agreed upon. They're doing this in other cities. They're currently doing it in Sacramento and Lathrop, and they've got some conversations with other cities to do the same thing. They will also assist city ordinance, with city ordinances, policies with telecommunications, coordinate encroachment and permitting with carriers, allow the city to maintain local control of the assets, and there's a projected $2.6 million revenue over five years. The departments that are currently going to be involved in this endeavor would be Public Works, DARM, and the Information Services Department. That's very high-level overview of this item. City staff and Five Bars are here to answer your questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll return to council.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Hold on, Cap. Can I hold you back on that a little bit? Because I better, I'm going to change it up a little bit.
All right, Member Brandow.
Okay. All right, Brian, please. And are you folks from Five Bars? Perfect, because I'm going to ask you a question in a second. So, we took, you took a meeting with me yesterday. Did you meet with my colleagues as well?
Yes, I did.
You met with most of my colleagues as well. Or, it was a couple of days ago. I don't think it was yesterday. And it looks like a great opportunity for the City of Fresno. The state of California is going to eventually move into this arena and tell us what to do, but we're beating them to the punch, and we're going to, we're going to create a part of our own future here. So, inside of our conversation, I thought it was such a great opportunity that I considered, we talked about changing the contract to continue indefinitely if we're given the option, right?
Yes.
And so, you thought that's a decent idea? You're fine with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. And then, now, if I could get our partners, Five Bars, to come up to the microphone, I want to make sure I hear it from you before I make this motion. Are you guys okay with changing the contract?
We are.
Terms? Okay, okay. Thank you. That's all I needed. I just want to make sure. Yeah, it was a quick question, but, you know, it was a quick question. I'd hate to move forward and then find out you don't. So, tell me your thoughts on this contract.
Well, we are absolutely thrilled, and thank you to staff so much, and thank you to all the council for your consideration in moving this forward. So, Five Bars were a wireless infrastructure company. We do wireless master planning and marketing of assets. And as you may or may not know, there is a bill that's moving forward, AB 649, that's putting pressure to take control away from local cities and municipalities. So, you're very smart to get ahead of this. Our proposal is to allow you to maintain control, maintain aesthetics, and again, generate revenue for your city through marketing to all the four major carriers, as well as some of the ancillary carriers like cable operators, et cetera, to co-locate small cells on your city-owned assets and properties. And what you probably know is that the wireless sort of revolution, if you will, and the data tonnage that's going on in the wireless community is growing exponentially, and the carriers have a mandate to densify their networks with technology called Small Cell, which is literally what it's called, smaller cells that will be located closer to the user population. So, there will be hundreds and thousands of these deployed in the next several years, close to a million in the next seven years, is the carrier projection. So, you want to get ahead of this, and this will help drive economic development and help also to lessen the digital divide by bringing better coverage and capacity to your community.
Perfect. Thank you. We like all of that. And so, in my discussion, in my meeting with our staff, and John Ellis was there also, and John, I just saw you come in, or I would have mentioned you a second ago. But I thought it could be valuable to actually extend the terms of this contract beyond what was originally put in the terms. So, I'm going to make a motion to accept the entire contract with this change on the bottom of page one. When it comes to the term of the contract, I want it to read this way. "This agreement shall be effective on the date it is executed by all parties and shall be in effect for the initial term of 10 years and shall automatically renew in five-year periods unless a party gives written notice to terminate at least six months prior to the commencement of a five-year period." That is my motion. And Brian, you've got a...
Yes, there's additional language on page 14 in the licensing agreement also, which also extends the continued for a period of 10 years and shall automatically renew in five-year periods unless party gives written notice to terminate. This language also is needed to make sure that the contract is binding, so that we do have a complete contract that doesn't expire.
Fantastic. So, that's a repeat of the same language in a different section of the contract. Perfect.
In section four on page 14.
All right. Thank you. That's my motion.
City Manager, could you address that for a moment?
No, we changed the terms of the contract, the length of the contract. No, just needed to go in two spots.
Member Brandow, can you explain why the change?
Absolutely, because, in my opinion, this is a great piece for the City of Fresno. And we, initially, staff had chosen terms of the contract that would have a definite point in time where it would no longer be in existence. At that time, rules by the state of California, we would probably revert to rules by the state of California would hinder the amount of money we could charge per pole and so on and so forth. And I feel like the idea, the concept was so great, why don't, and we get to grand, if we act today, we will be grandfathered in. The state of California can't impinge upon what we want to do. And the contract's so good, I want to extend it, make it indefinite, unless one of the two parties wants to opt out.
And so, in discussion with staff, there are specific trigger points and performance indicators, and based on those performance indicators, I think the motion as being proposed is appropriate, because again, if they're not meeting our expectations and basically holding up their end of the deal, we have the option to put them on notice that they're not performing in conjunction with the agreement and initiate the termination. It'll also give them six months to make adjustments if necessary, and we can move forward.
I'll second your motion, Steve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Member Brettafeld.
Yeah, the only question I have, it's a 10-year contract, and the only potential downside, is there a possibility that something with the technology changes? We want to opt out of a contract? Can we, at that point, if something changes with technology and we say this doesn't work for the City of Fresno, as opposed to they're not performing?
Yes, we always have the option to renegotiate and amend the contract at any time.
But what about if we determine that it doesn't meet our interests six years from now? Can we terminate at that, you know, again, something happens with technology? That's all I'm saying.
Right, yes.
Yes, we can. Okay, great.
All right, this is good. All right, this is good. We're ahead a little bit. The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? All right, passes unanimously, 6-0. Thank you. All right, moving now to item 3D, actions pertaining to concession agreement related to Airways Golf Course in District Four, Airport's Department.
Council President, council, good morning still. Crazy morning.
It has been.
I've got one person on the way really fast, the proposed operator or current operator of the golf course, so hopefully by the time I finish...
In the news, we call this "fill."
Yeah.
You have to fill until the other person gets on set, so...
I'm filling right now.
Now's your opportunity to fill.
Yeah, what do you want to talk about? No, I'm kidding.
You just have to think about it.
No, yeah, so...
Are we getting Southwest Airlines?
No, not yet.
I'm working on that. Actually get to meet with them in about two weeks.
That's fantastic. We could call unscheduled communication. Is there anyone here who wants to address any item that is not contained on today's agenda? If so, please come forward. All right, seeing no one, we'll close. Unscheduled communication, I tried to help you.
I'll do my best.
Go to weather, go to weather.
I'm ready, I'm ready. No, but thank you for the opportunity. Just a quick background, we had a concession agreement in place for the Airways Golf Course, and it was about a 30-year agreement, expired last fall. That operator did not want to continue on, gave us a 30-day notice, and for the benefit of a couple of members, Chavez and Brettafield, you were on the council, but last September, we came to council to bring in an interim operator, a temporary operator for will, and it's the same operator that we're proposing to put under a long-term agreement to operate Airways. And the agreement at Airways Golf Course is a bit different than the arrangement you typically see at other courses, Riverside or other courses up and down the valley, in that it's a 100% self-sustaining agreement, meaning the operator is responsible for everything out there at the golf course, the maintenance, the capital, running it, the whole bit. The only thing they don't have any control over is green fees, which is done through council, and that's about it. And that's an FAA-driven requirement, because it happens to be on airport property. So, specific to this item and this agreement, the operator will be responsible for all work. I can tell you this, that Airways Golf Course is self-sustainable. We have... There's a revenue stream that comes out of Airways, and the approved green fees by council are lower than Riverside. They're very competitive. But that revenue stream enables the operator to maintain and operate the course, and it enables the operator to execute a long-term capital improvement program for the course, meaning the course for the foreseeable future will be viable. In other words, there's enough funds standalone that's generated at that course to accommodate whatever the capital needs are necessary. And I will tell you, as part of the RFP process, we called in the United States Golf Association, who did an assessment on the course. We also did an assessment on the facilities, the clubhouse, the cart building, and other facilities. So, we had to identify what the needs are to keep that course viable. We have a 10-year plan in place, a flow of funds analysis done to show that, yes, indeed, we can take care of everything we need to do to make sure that course is viable today and viable into the future. So, this agreement will enable this operator to move forward and commit himself to long-term agreements with cart leases and things like this, which will help the bottom line of the course. So, I've probably filled as much as I can at this point in time, which is what I like to do.
You did very well. TV news style. Good job.
Yes, is turn it back over to council for any questions.
Okay.
And I do have some additional information I got via email from our operator in case he doesn't make it in here in the next, like, two minutes. So, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public here who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll return it to council.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we'll start with District Four. No remarks? Okay. We have a motion to approve and a second. Now, Member Brando is punched up.
All right. I'm glad to be punched up, but I don't know. I kind of needed our contract partner to be here. We have no idea if they're en route.
It could be any minute, but if I can add a little bit specific to what I think he's going to talk about, and he could walk in any minute, but one of the things that we hear occasionally is that, you know, there are areas of that course that are just... They're just brown, right? And it's easy to say that they're brown, because, you know, there's water restrictions and so forth. But the reality is, for open green space, and we don't have the water restrictions that we do at home. So, but, there is a program that we have put in place to replace sprinkler heads, which has already begun. But let me just read something really quickly, and I got this email just this morning, just ahead of time, I'm glad I did. But we reached out to the operator, says, "What's your plan? What's going on? What's really happening out there? We got the hot weather coming, and if you don't stay on top of this, you can get behind really fast." And what he said is this, if I could just read real quickly. They have a program in place of spraying a certain material to eradicate noxious weeds and grasses. That tends to brown it up. And in addition, they do have a number of sprinkler heads that just aren't functioning properly. So, their action plan for the irrigation head replacement is already underway, and they are proceeding with that. They don't see an issue with getting that course or areas of the course greened back up and staying on top of it. And I will say this, this operator, they operate Sunnyside, they operate Copper River. They understand what it takes to get a course back up to standards. They also, just real quickly, and then I'll turn it back over for follow-up questions, just for some background on this operator, they operate courses up and down the valley and outside of the valley. I'll just name a few of them real quickly. Valley Springs, Hollister, Apple Valley, Stockton, Madera, Salinas, Victorville, Coors Gold. So, just to give you a snapshot, so they... They're local, but they operate courses up and down the valley. So, I mean, I believe they really know what they're doing, and they have a program in place to really improve that course and even market it more and make it more attractive than it already is.
Perfect. All right, and you kind of beat me to the punch on some of my questions, which I think was probably planned and okay. But just so council knows, I play golf. Most of you know that, and...
Well, you swing the club.
Yeah, and I play at Airways. And so, I'm real familiar with that course, and I've seen it really go downhill in the last month or six weeks. I mean, almost dramatic, and my dad and brother also play it, and I've been talking with Bruce about golf courses in general, and then a couple of weeks ago said, "You know, I think there's a problem going on at Airways." And then, last week, I almost sent an emergency text, "Bruce, we're going to lose that golf course if we don't start watering in advance of 100-degree temperatures." And so, then, what I found out is that Bruce was already engaged with Airways and with Kevin and the airport in determining the best approach for Airways, and the result of that was already in the pipeline, which was this contract. So, I had a couple of questions for the partner, but Kevin, I guess you're just going to have to field those and then pass them on, okay? Because I've got some concerns. So, one of the things that I met with Kevin, and one of the things that Kevin provided to me is two reports that were worked up about Airways Golf Course. One was about the course, one was about the facilities. And so, I had him print it up for me, and I've read it in the last couple of days, tried to get a grip on what are the improvements that we need to have happen out at Airways to make it really a competitive, viable golf course. And I still have concerns that the work that needs to be done can be done quickly. And I wanted to hear from the operator, but without him being here, Bruce, I have a thought, and I don't... It's just off the top of my head was, so...
I think he's...
That's the guy?
No, he's my staff.
Oh, two minutes.
Two minutes? Yeah, he's right... He's coming, but keep going.
Okay. I mean, is there any way to almost... I mean, that course is in a bad way currently, and the word on the street is it's bad. And what that means is, it's just like, in my mind, it's like a restaurant, and the word gets out that the food's not fresh or something like that, the damage is done. You can go bring in a new chef, but you've already got a lot of damage going on there to the reputation, which that's where we're at, in my opinion, on this course. So, I'm all for the new contract, but before that damage continues, that, you know, Airways is too dry to play anymore. What happened out there? It screwed up. Then, that becomes an economic liability to the city of Fresno, to the airport for sure, and to the city of Fresno. So, Bruce, is there any way that we can augment the initial phase of the work and get the sprinklers? So, there's a number of sprinklers that need to go in quickly.
If I... Bruce, before you respond, if I can respond, I had a conversation with the proposed operator about resource availability. Do you have the ability to get in there quickly and do what you need to do to stay on top? One, bring it back to life, so to speak, and stay on top of it. And he assured me that he does. This is what he really does. He maintains courses, and if you've ever, of course, been out to Copper River, Riverside, you can see what kind of condition those courses are. So, he knows exactly what to do. He has the resources to do them, and he's already begin... Even ahead of executing this contract, he's already committed to starting that ball rolling right away, which happened about a week or two weeks ago, just jumping on this stuff. So, I'm confident that he's got the resources and the commitment to make that happen without having any additional infusion of manpower, of dollars, or anything else.
Well, I don't... Yeah, I'd like... I'd almost would have liked to seen the math, like, how many sprinklers need to be replaced, how many people he have, how many they can do per day, and that type of thing. And I'm willing to move forward with it, but I would love to see us engage immediately, even if that meant if we could augment any source of help.
Well, for right now, the contractor has made a commitment to the airport that he can initiate the repairs in a timely manner in order to get the course back to a state of recovery and proper maintenance. We will report, we'll give you a follow-up report, what the timeline is, in which we believe those repairs will be implemented and completed, and when we believe the course will be back to the point in which play could be... It's appropriate, the course is appropriate. I too am interested in seeing, and I had Kevin provide a cash flow analysis to make sure that the amount of fees that are coming from a percentage of the green fees are going back into a capex fund, as well as the APs fee are sufficient to support not just the course. But as you read the report, there is a very long list of deferred capital improvements, both to the course as well as the clubhouse. It does pencil out based on those estimates, but estimates are exactly that. But we can report back within the next week to do a trade note to all the council as to what the status of that work is and when it will be completed.
All right. How about this? Is there any way that we can put some signage up on the course, saying that the city of Fresno is in the process of fixing the course?
How about under new management?
So, that the people that play out there...
Under new management.
Under new... Yeah, this guy's only had it for about 10 months or something like that?
Less than that, but...
Less than that, yeah. Under new management, that we're going to actively be engaging so that we can stop the bleeding?
Yeah, like, you know, capital program in place, you know, green fees being put to good use, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then, in the two reports you gave me, one was about the course, and I read a lot of the recommendations, and it says on hole number eight that the bunker on the left is poorly placed and does not come into play, and I can guarantee you, it does come into play. I've been in that bunker many times, so...
I do have the operator here, so I think he can really answer these questions, because he's familiar with the course.
All right.
Can I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
And thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is Mr. Jeff Christensen. He's the owner of the Sierra Golf Management.
Correct.
Did I say that right?
Yep.
Here to answer any questions you have, or maybe give you a synopsis of his vision for the course.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Apologize for getting here. We don't come downtown very often. So, really briefly, I'll make it very quick. We took over the golf course on October 1st on our interim contract. If you review the USGA report that they did a year ago in January of 2016, this is a property that's been deferred for many, many decades. It has a long ways to go. It's an at-risk property, but I grew up playing the golf course as a kid. I think there's a lot to it. I think it could be a wonderful golf course, but it's sick. Irrigation problems like crazy, tons of deferred maintenance, cackuya intrusion, Bermuda intrusion in the greens, as the councilman noted a moment ago as I was walking inside. There's pages devoted to bunker issues on the golf course stated by USGA. We also have a water issue on the golf course, and it's expensive water, but we're mitigating that by putting in a well this year. Matter of fact, we're fast-tracking to get that done, and we'll have a well drilled most likely before the end of this irrigation season. This golf course, just so you know, the cost of this water in this little golf course is about three and a half times more than an average golf course here in the valley. It's just really expensive water. So, most likely, that's why the golf course got into the condition it has been, because the previous operator wasn't willing to spend the kind of money it needs to do that. So, what we did this winter, we put down pre-emergence to kill all the noxious grasses. This is a Bermuda golf course. There's not much Bermuda on this golf course right now. We want to grow and propagate this Bermuda. So, we are killing all the noxious weeds, all the noxious grasses, all the cackuya grasses, so we can have a canopy of only Bermuda grass in the years to come. We just dropped off 120 heads last week. We've already replaced 14 valves just in this month alone. We've had some operating issues that we've solved with the pump. It's going to be a wonderful golf course. We're really proven operators. We run golf courses all over the state, and we have quite a few golf courses here in the valley. Sunnyside, Copper River, I own Pheasant Run in Chauchilla, Madera Municipal in Madera, Salinas Golf Course in Salinas, two golf courses at municipalities down south. So, we're no stranger to public golf, and I think there's nobody better. I think you'd be really proud of what we're going to do. It's going to take a lot of money. We want skin in the game. I just ordered $300,000 worth of golf carts, going to be delivered on June 16th. You'll be very proud of this facility.
Hey, Mr. Christensen, thank you for that update. And so, a couple of points that I'll share with you, and then we can move on. I think there's support on council. We like your vision. We like Kevin's vision, is joined with yours to restore that golf course, and it starts with our city manager. So, we appreciate that. One of my concerns is, because I play Airways, and so do my dad and brother, so I'm pretty familiar, and we've seen it dive in the last six weeks, I mean, with the heat coming on. So, one of the things that I'm concerned about is, how do we convey that to the public? So, I'm now asking if we could do, put up some signage that at least our public needs to know that good things are coming to Airways, right? Maybe start with an "under new management" sign, and then identify some of the things that are going to be fixed right away, so that people understand that you put in a pre-emergent for a reason, rather than that the fairways are just dying. It's real important. I use the illustration, it's once a restaurant gets a bad name, you know, the word gets out on the street, you might change the chef, but it's too late.
You're right.
And so, we need to engage immediately. For the players that play out there, they know that good things are coming, and they hear that, and they go, "Oh, okay, I'm going to cut them some slack. I see that some good things are going to happen." They don't just give up on the golf course. That would be terrible economically for everybody.
I agree with that.
Okay, so, that's one thing. And then, my real fundamental question is, do you have the manpower to get this work done quickly, the first part done quickly, putting in the sprinklers, the correct sprinklers to get the fairways green again? Or, I mean, is this one of those things that's going to linger six, eight, 10 months to get sprinkler heads in?
No, it's a great question, and it's a two-part question, but the answer is yes. Do we have the manpower? We'll engage the manpower to get it done. The golf course is a fairly small footprint, 90-something acres, plus it's been condensed over the years. So, it's really unlike some of my other typical facilities where I might need 13 to 16 guys. This is usually a seven-to maybe eight-person golf course. But with the irrigation projects that we have planned and targeted, we'll need a larger crew. So, because we have capital improvement money sitting there targeted for this conjoined putting in a water source, a well, and then fixing the control... a well, and then fixing the control system, the heads, the valves, that'll all be done this summer, the majority, the important issues. Now, lateral fairways, flyover areas that the other companies created over the years, those are the areas from the tee to the fairways that are dead. We have to put heads in those areas, and that's what we will be doing. That'll take us most of the summer. It's easier to do these things during the summer than during the winter, because you can pressurize your system. So the answer is yes. The well will be done, the major irrigation valves, heads, controllers, those will be done in this year, in this irrigation cycle.
Okay.
Every bit of them.
Okay.
Now, but I always promise when I come to the golf courses, I don't believe in Rome being built in a day scenario. This is a multi-year project for the Bermuda renaissance that has to happen here. This will take us a couple of years to get Bermuda back into those fairways. We're doing the same project at Sunnyside, to be honest with you, under canopies. So it takes a long time to get the other noxious weeds out, get your Bermuda to spread. That'll be a couple-year project. But we'll do some light overseeding in the fall, and things like that that will help propagate it. I don't know, I think you played there maybe a week or so, or so, when we were probably right at the bottom of this transition. It's the hue, the greens are already back. I mean, we propagate golf courses really well. And I can assure you that we have plenty of great oversight from the city. We've been really happy with the way we negotiated. We're hands-on company. This is gonna be a golf course that I think is one of the most important golf courses here in Fresno. This is where people start, play, finish. It's a great little track.
Totally.
And it's been abused for too many decades.
Right.
You would be very pleased with what you see.
Well, I like the sound of that. And then, so one final thing on the buildings, the component that's got to do with the buildings. Is there any low-hanging fruit there that can be, we can use capital improvement dollars? Because you have seven, you have some $700,000 to spend, right?
Right.
Is there any low-hanging fruit that can make some immediate adjustments, and people can see, okay, the city of Fresno is getting serious about Airways?
Sometimes the low-hanging fruit's really easy to grab, doesn't pay off in spades as quickly. It's a great question. We wanna focus on the golf course first. Conditions will come first. But we've already done a lot of things internally that most golfers don't know. We've already fixed the HVAC system upstairs, totally redid the grill inside, put the beer machine back in play now. We've done a lot of internals. As you noticed, the inside's been painted. We'll put new carpet down. We have a lot of big plans that are going with us. Some we'll take out of capital, some we'll just spend on our own. The snack bar is a snack bar, but it's functional, and it's good. There is a report on these buildings. There are some significant deferred issues down the road that we'll deal with, but nothing really major.
Okay.
So I don't see really anything there that scares us.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming in. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm gonna be very supportive, but I had to raise my concerns.
They're all great questions.
Yeah, all right.
Steve, maybe we can have you as a greener at the golf course during the key tee times.
Does that include a free round?
A free round, but you need to help us keep the carpet clean.
All right.
We have a motion, and do we have a second as well? All right, we have a motion. Second, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition? All right, seeing none, the item passes unanimously. Now, city attorney, we wanna get into closed session immediately. So we're not going to detour to take any breaks. We wanna move into closed session and do the, explain what we're going to do, the outside counsel items. We think we can knock those out in the next few minutes. City Attorney?
Yes, counsel, we have two litigation cases with outside counsel that we can release. I think we can finish those in 10 minutes.
Okay.
The cases are the Arnold versus city of Fresno case, and the Centeno versus city of Fresno case. And then also, we'll be going in this afternoon on all of the labor-listed units and positions.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel President, are we gonna deal with labor after 1:30 or in the afternoon?
How long do you estimate, city manager, that will take?
Given this morning? I have no idea.
We're kinda on one today. We really are.
Well, the reason is, our retirement administrator is here. I know Councilmember Brando had a question about, you know, pensions and changes in state law, and whether or not that's applicable here in this case. So if that's something that we're gonna deal with in the afternoon, I think he needs to know what time he should be back.
Okay, we've got, the new wrinkles proclamation is coming back this afternoon. And also, I've notified the interested members of the community who want to be back for the news rack vending regulation, so.
Two o'clock?
And the two o'clock is big, too. So we're starting to have a logjam at two. Could we do closed session, this item, after we get through the logjam later in the afternoon? Would that be possible, to go back in there?
Yes, that's possible.
Okay, why don't we plan? Yes.
[inaudible]
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine, then. We'll go into closed session right now, lock up these things that the city attorney wants to do. We go to lunch, we come back at 1:30 to do the news rack item, then followed by new wrinkles, followed by the two o'clock item. Let's go.
Counsel Pres-
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, counsel. The time is 1:35. And we begin with, we begin our second half with item 3B. This is a bill for introduction, adding Article 7 to Chapter 13 of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to news racks citywide and in special districts, Public Works.
Good afternoon, counsel president. If I can, if you give me a moment to get a PowerPoint going. Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. Thank you for your time. We're here today to ask you to consider an ordinance that addresses news racks within the right-of-way downtown. This ordinance primarily deals with the right-of-way and the downtown triangle, not the other parts of the city. Recommendation is for approval, because it will protect the public interest, and establish regulations that balance the right to distribute information through news racks, with the right of persons to reasonably have access and use of public property. And one of the primary goals of the policy is to prevent news racks from blocking access for disabled people, or people within wheelchairs, or mobility chairs. And this would create a special news rack area within the downtown triangle that would require a special design placement and other standards. The standards would require that only approved news racks could be placed within this downtown triangle, and it would establish a sense of order out of chaos, and provide a friendly environment for those who are in this area. This is kind of a photo of some of the existing news racks within the public right-of-way, primarily in the downtown. This is the standard that's being proposed. And I should point out that this would be the standard just for racks within the right-of-way, wouldn't address any racks on private property in any part of the city, that'd still be open to use any rack that they desire on private property. This shows what's proposed. What's pictured here has six bins in the rack. We would also consider three bins or nine bins, but they'd be similar to this, just stacked taller or shorter, depending on what you want. And we have at least some bins in the downtown area now that would meet this requirement. And this, I know the council's aware of the downtown triangle, but in case anyone in the audience is not, the downtown triangle includes highway, or is surrounded by Highway 99, Highway 180, and Highway 41. There's, again, no restriction outside of the downtown triangle, other than a requirement if the rack is to be bolted to the sidewalk, that a street permit is required. And that isn't our current code already, but this just reinforces that requirement. We have had a lot of them bolted down with no streetwork permit. And the new policy would improve public safety, address visual blight, ensure clear line of sight, that's for vehicles and pedestrians, address liability and risk, standardize placement and location, develop uniform appearance, and securely affix to ensure stability. Again, any news racks that are anchored to the sidewalk citywide would require a streetwork permit. Nothing would be required if they were placing them in the right-of-way without anchors. We have a lot that are placed in the right-of-way, just sitting there. They're not expensive racks, and so they're not always bolted down. And just within the special news rack area, the requirement would be to comply with the standard plan that shows the three, six, or nine boxes grouped together. Enforcement would, could be an infraction. Also, this addresses abandonment of boxes. We have a lot of boxes all over town that are not used. And as it is, staff doesn't know whether to pick them up, leave them there. Eventually, they deteriorate, and then we pick them up when they're in pieces. And for anyone who places a rack, they would be required to indemnify the city. Now, there's no paperwork required to do that. It's just something that's in the code. That is, if there's ever an accident related to one of their racks, they have a responsibility. And really, the schedule would be, if it's approved this afternoon, is we would be back June 8th for a second reading of either this ordinance or an ordinance that might be modified by the council. And then compliance would occur 60 days past that date, so 60 days from June 8th. With that, staff would like to open this up to any questions.
Thank you. We're gonna go out to the public, and then we'll come back to the council at that time, if they need you, then we'll go ahead and call you up. I have a handful of cards from folks who've turned them in. If you haven't turned one in after we're done calling folks on the cards, then you'll be welcome to speak. Our first speaker this afternoon is Michael Evans, followed by Pam Whalen, followed by Jeff Bianchi. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Evans. I'm at 619 West Fairmont in the city of Fresno. I'm also with the Community Alliance Newspaper, and we feel that this particular measure would present an onerous burden to us and to other local publications. It appears to be a solution in search of a real problem. And so we are, you know, print media already has enough things working against it, and we really need to be working aggressively, provide more information to the community. So we view this as overregulation, and there's gonna be costs involved that are not currently involved, and it's not for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Pam Whalen, followed by Jeff Bianchi. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, my name is Pam Whalen. I live at 4773 North Arthur, lamentably one of the county islands. But that's not my fault. And I am here to speak against this ordinance. We've been kind of dealing with this over several months, and it has, and it's unclear to me what of the original ordinance is still in there. The original one had, that we would have to have, I don't know, a million dollars of insurance in case somebody, you know, hurt their hand when they were reaching to get one of our newspapers. We had no, we were not able to find out that anybody had ever in the history of the world had an accident doing that. So it was unnecessary. We also had, in the original one, there was plenty of fees that we had to pay. You know, we had to register, we had to pay fees, and these fees were supposedly going to be able to fund newsstand police, that I'm not sure the city of Fresno needs a newsstand police force. We do feel this as a attack on our First Amendment rights. You know, as Michael has said, journalism is kind of an endangered species right now. We are a, almost a volunteer operation that has managed to provide information to the community for the last 20 years. And we would like to see the city be supportive of us, rather than looking at additional things that we need to do to stay in business. So we don't know, and we don't want to have, in terms of the design that they're talking about, we understood that we'd have to buy it out of state in Texas. We don't know what the cost would be for that. And so it's unclear today what additional costs they are going to be, that we're gonna be subject to. The other thing is, we did try to have a meeting earlier with the Public Works Department, and they told us that they didn't need to meet with us, because they already knew what they wanted to do.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Whalen. Our next speaker is Jeff Bianchi. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jeff Bianchi. I live at 2548 Santa Cruz, Sanger, California, representing the Fresno Bee Today. And I wanna let everybody know that we're opposing the news rack ordinance. I can't add much to what Mrs. Whalen and Mr. Evans added, but we've tried to always, you know, self-police ourself out in the field with the racks. Currently, in the special news rack area that's being proposed in downtown Fresno, we only have five news racks total. We got one in Chinatown at the Ho Ho Cafe. There was one at the Holiday Inn, which has been removed. We have one at the Kern Street Coffee, one at the Galleria, one at the corner of M Street to Larry, and one at the subway on Fresno Street. But we just don't feel this ordinance is necessary. We feel like we can self-police, like we have been doing, without the need for an ordinance, and taxpayers' money being spent on a news rack police, and this being expanded throughout the city, and the expense it's gonna cost Fresno Bee.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this item? Please come forward. Okay, at this time, we will, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the city council. We have Member Brettafeld punched up, but since this is affecting the area of the triangle, it's covered by District 3 and District 7. Oliver and I talked about it and agreed that I would speak first, which is kind of unorthodox for the city council president's position. But I'll go ahead and say a few words, and then Member Baines will do the same, and then you'll be up. Okay, I just had a couple of questions for staff, Mr. Barelli, or Mr. Mosher, or whoever.
Good afternoon, counsel. Scott Mosher, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mosher. In the staff report, and nor in the ordinance, did I find any information about the cost? If it's in there, I just missed it. Can you go over for us, how many of the- Can you go over for us, how many of these units are we buying? Is it the city that's going to be purchasing these? Will that money come from the general fund? Those kinds of things.
Right. In terms of the news racks, we've done some research on cost, and those, those may be estimated in the $2,000 type range for one of the multi-unit boxes. The ordinance itself and the action before you would not bind the city to purchasing those necessarily. We are in discussions with the P-Bid in terms of the Fulton area, as far as an idea of potentially of, of the Fulton project even purchasing one, and that being then managed by the P-Bid. But this does not bind the city to purchase any boxes. In terms of other costs, there were a question from one of the speakers about what's different from before. There is no insurance requirement, the, and there is no written agreement with, with the vendors on that. Simply, if something does occur, by nature of the ordinance, it's understood that the person installing that would be indemnifying the city. The city would look, look to them if there's an issue, but there's no contractual relationship on that. In terms of outside the downtown triangle, the only thing new is simply, something that really is, is almost the case today. If a vendor wants to anchor or bolt a news rack to a sidewalk, that a street work permit is required, and the ordinance simply spells that out.
Okay, so at this time, there's no proposed locations for these, these multi-newspaper boxes. We're not saying, okay, one's going to go in front of the Holiday Inn, one's going to go in front of the IHOP, one's going to go on Fulton Street, once those improvements are complete. This, this doesn't actually map out where they're going to be.
It, it does not map that out. And again, I want to clarify, this only deals with the public right-of-way. It does not regulate anything on private property.
Right.
So, no change in terms of, for example, by the IHOP. If, if someone wanted to install it within the sidewalk on Telleri, then yes, it would apply, but if it's just one foot behind the sidewalk, this is not applicable.
If, if this were to pass today, then, and then it, it comes back on the 8th, and we, we begin to, it becomes the law, and we start to enforce it, how, how will enforcement take place? Will we be using our police department?
That would not be by police department. We did note in the staff report, it's typically the staff and the units who are out in the field, so that would be divisions such as, for Public Works, Traffic Operations, we may be in the area, it may be Street Maintenance, who observes something installed, or Parking Services.
And, and so the Street Maintenance people would be out working on the street, and they would call the police?
They would not call the police, but rather, if it's, what we would do would be to notice, notice the owner, basically put a notice on it, and then we determine a timeframe that we would actually come back and then remove, basically impound the box.
Where does the infraction come into play, and who issues, can only the police issue an infraction?
No. Mr. Mosher, I think it might be helpful for the council to understand, the reason we're asking for a permit is that we, we then will know the location which these boxes are being installed. And in the event that there is a claim filed against the city, because the box at some time is removed, or somebody trips over the studs, or the bolts that were installed by the vendor, that, that claim could be issued against the vendor, not against the city. We have, if you could, we have, if I'm not mistaken, have had claims filed against the city for people tripping over these in our right-of-way, correct?
As City Manager states, that is correct, and my experience is that's been about one a year typically, and that involves City Attorney's Office, outside council, and the whole, the whole process of trying to deal with that claim.
Let me go through, I made a couple of notes as I read through this, and please bear with me and be patient as I, I go through. It's contained in, okay, it's in letter C on page nine, it says, "The director may allow a permutee to place a news rack in a location in various, variants of the standards otherwise required by this section, if the director finds that such variants will not be detrimental to public safety, and that due to the existing physical constraints at that location, imposition of the standards would make placement impossible, and would cause a hardship to the, the permutee and its patrons." So, the, the director, if the location is deemed to be safe, the director, and, and say the Community Alliance said to the director, "We, we want one here," the director, and it, under this ordinance, wouldn't normally go there, but the director can make, can waive that and allow the Bee to put the, the machine there, if the Bee, or the Alliance, or the Advocate, make a complaint of hardship. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's fairly consistent with a lot of things in our Fresno Municipal Code, where we, we can't foresee all of those situations on day one, and whether that's something related to zoning, and the Development Department, or various things within the public right-of-way, and street work permits. This does provide that, that exception that could be applied.
Page 13 of 17, section B. I'm really interested, because we went around and around for about an hour last week on the bus fare evaders, and how this organization was going to enforce people who don't pay to ride the bus. This one says, "Any person who violates any provision of this article shall be guilty of an infraction, and upon conviction thereof shall be punished." For putting out a news rack? Mr. Mosher, thank you. I'm going to go through, share a few of my notes, and then let other council members Just with all due respect to, to city staff who do a fantastic job for us every day, we want to permit and register news machines. This organization has had a very difficult time registering vacant and boarded-up homes, very difficult time. Marijuana is on our plate again, and I understand that this, this city is home to dozens of storefront marijuana retail operations. We have no idea who they are, or where they are, or how they're doing business. So, in terms of providing for public health and safety, I, I would put the boarded-up homes as the number one thing that, that we have to work on. I know there's been progress made. There are those on this, this platform who would say that the marijuana dispensaries need to be found, and, and cracked down upon, and, and folks brought to, brought to the law for, for breaking the law. We're nowhere near finding an answer to the problem of, of the proliferation of marijuana in the, in the city. We're nowhere near finding an answer to the proliferation of boarded-up homes. And if you remember, this body passed an inspection program, that it requires the city to register tens of thousands of apartment buildings. So, I think in my opinion, that the registration of boarded-up homes, and marijuana dispensaries, and slum condition apartments where people live in slum conditions, completely trumps something like this. One of our speakers said that this is a problem in need, or solution in need of a problem, and I'm, I'm hoping that, that the council agrees with that. It says in the staff report that voting for this will bring order out of chaos. I, I've, I've been known to try and turn a phrase as I write, but this is really a reach. We have chaos in this city, and I will share briefly some of the chaos that Member Brando and I saw about an hour ago at lunch. We decided to go to In-N-Out Burger on Blackstone, just north of Ashland, and on our way out there, I said to Steve, "Let's go, and I will take you to the corner of Blackstone and Dakota, on the northeast side, where there's a Shell station, and there's like a labor-ready place, and there's a standard sweets and spices." This, this corner of our city is, is in danger of spinning out of control of this city government. The last time I was out there, the, our supervisors in Central went with me, and we were able to contact some of the vagrants who control this, this part of, of this shopping center. We were able to contact a prostitute who is under the watchful eye of her human trafficker, just a hundred yards away or so. And the police department graciously said, you know, "We're going to try and keep an eye on this corner." These are the kinds of problems that I think this organization needs to be working on, how we can, on one corner of, of a street in our city is a microcosm of all the problems that we face, in terms of prostitution, homelessness, unemployment, drug dealing, single sales of malt liquor cans coming out of the store right there. I mean, all the problems that we face, that we're trying to fix from, from this dais, exist at that corner, and it's heartbreaking to see. And the reason why I bring this up is because at this corner, where the, the homeless people usually stand and hang out under this awning, there was a small child, three or four years old, sitting in, in the dirt planter, while this child's guardian was involved with God only knows what at this corner. And I, I only share this story to illustrate what is actually going on, on the streets of the city, and what, what we're facing as a community and as a city council. It's not newspaper racks, folks. I've received many, many phone calls in, in my six and a half years at this council. My staff takes dozens and dozens of phone calls a week, and a rogue news box has never been a phone call that I've received. And I, I appreciate staff's interest in protecting the health and safety of our community, because I think you do a good job of that. I just don't think that this is the, the correct issue for us. The Bee has five news racks downtown. Our newspapers with less circulation, The Advocate, the Community Alliance, join the Bee, The Business Journal, in an industry that is struggling. The Bee laid off a few dozen people a couple of weeks ago, and it's, it's, it's a form of media that's so important, yet is having a hard time keeping up with, with market demand for news these days. I don't believe that approving this will help them.
Council President, if I may interrupt you.
Certainly.
I had advised you earlier, I have a medical appointment.
Yes.
I'll be back as soon as I finish that, so.
Thank you, Member Capriola.
Thank you.
And when you come back, I'll probably still be talking. So, go right ahead. I think that this, this item gets totally in the weeds. Old or out-of-date material removed from any news rack by any person who owns, maintains or stocks a news rack shall be recycled or disposed of in a lawful manner. So, now, these city council members are going to tell newspaper people how to rotate their "The name and/or logo otherwise permitted pursuant to subsection A9 may be placed only on the front face of the box, inclusive of the window area, and shall be limited to the dimension of three inches vertically by 10 inches horizontally." This is really, really in the weeds, and this is an example of overregulation and, and a piece of, of bad public policy. I mean, if somebody's sticker is too big, do they get an infraction to be punished? This, this isn't something that, that this board needs to be working on at this point. I think that it's better that we work with Mayor Brand on economic development, on securing places like Ulta and Amazon, by finding a solution to homelessness in our community, by registering all those awful boarded-up homes. And I think that, I think that we need to, to wait on this item, and see if there's a need for it in the future. But at this time, as, as a council member, as a, as a former journalist who, who started out his career on, on the Press Telegram in Long Beach, and the Salt Lake City Tribune, I've, I've been a part of that industry, and I know that the people who write, who put pen to paper are searching for truth, and that they need to have access to, to their readership, and, and that is, that means free of government regulation, whether it's coming from the federal level, or, or coming from us here in, in these chambers. So, at this point, I cannot support this item, and I urge my colleagues to join me in a no vote. Thank you. So, I make a motion that, that we reject this item. Thank you. We have a second by Member Baines.
And, and I think Councilmember Olivier spelled out some, some of the issues very clearly, so I won't belabor the point. I think some of the challenges I have with this particular item, I think were stated clearly by one of our speakers, and I don't remember which one, but it's a, it's just a problem in search of a solution, or solution in search of a problem, whatever, whatever the correct phrase is. I'm not sure that this is needed, and I, I'm going to say, if, if we notice that there's a problem in the future, then I would be open to exploring that at this time, but it seems like our, our interested community is united, and feeling like this would be an unnecessary burden placed on their businesses, and I'll join them in that. Thanks.
Real quick, just what were the costs, Mr. Mosher, for the permits?
The permit costs would only be $20. Effectively, it's a no fee, and then that's just a $20 surcharge that's applied.
Okay, and then you said you were planning on staff kind of inspecting these racks?
Not intentionally, only, only if it so happens to occur. So, say, for example, we're downtown, there's a attractive, maybe we're talking about an attractive streetscape area, and we notice a very somewhat chaotic, or an array of boxes that maybe detract from the look of the area. That's something that we would be looking at, but there would, there would not be any staff intentionally circling, patrolling, looking for these. Really, it would be, the desire would be that, within the downtown triangle, or this special news rack area, that it would be the aesthetic quality of that type of rack, and that we wouldn't really have a lot of enforcement activity. That, that would be the ideal, that'd be the goal.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Member Brettafeld, member Soria.
Scott, I have a question for you as well. You mentioned that maybe the, the P-Bid there would be looking at helping, or what, what was the, the downtown P-Bid trying to do with it?
I think, just sharing from discussions with the P-Bid, if, if there's an interest in a demand to have a news rack in the area, I think the P-Bid has found that it'd be very beneficial, and enhance the area to have just a more attractive look in the area. And there's some, there's been some interest on their part in being willing to manage that, so that that would not fall upon the city.
Ad, this actually originated from downtown businesses, who, while we understand the challenges for the publishers of these newspapers, or ads, or whatever the case is, they are an issue for, for those businesses. Staff, listening to those concerns, tried to come up with something. I've been hearing a lot of comments today that were obviously presented to individual council members, that my staff isn't aware of, and, and if they are aware, that's a bigger problem, because there's information or concerns that were expressed to you that my staff isn't aware of, and so there was obviously a, a lack of communication, which is troubling to me, because we would not have brought this forward if we thought we had fully vetted this issue out. Apparently, that didn't happen. To me, that's a bigger problem. But we were reacting to a request by a constituency in downtown who lives with the issue on a daily basis, whether people want to admit it or not. These, these units, with the exception of the Bee, I will, you know, I've worked with the Bee. They do maintain, they do self-police their units. But what we're talking about, these other units, in which nobody wants to take responsibility or ownership in the, to the impact that they're creating. I have had experience with them, as the former and now current Transportation Director, to where they were creating problems for, because they all seem to be bolted, or chained, or whatever, to bus stops, and the problems they created for my crew to keep those bus stops clean. But council, if, at the end of the day, you don't think this is a big issue, we are reacting to a constituency who thinks it is, probably will still think it is, but again, we are reacting to- But again, we are reacting to desire from the downtown businesses to do something because they too have expressed their frustration with trying to get the vendors or the owners of these units to at least maintain them or police them. And again, with the exception of the Fresno Bee, we don't see a whole lot of compliance or accountability when it comes to some of these other units.
Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Mosher, do you have something to add?
No, only that that type of protection is in place as far as controlling placement aesthetics on private property from the owner. Say, for example, if it's a shopping center, it's a restaurant, and if they don't want that news rack at the particular location where it is, that's the property owner's ability to say no to that. But this is the public right-of-way, and as long as there... Today, as long as there is ADA compliance with the placement, that's... They can really place it anywhere within the public right-of-way, and we don't have the ability to say no to a certain look. We don't have the ability to say no to a certain placement.
So, question, because I wasn't finished.
Right.
Has the downtown partnership sat down with some of these newspapers to have that discussion? Because it seems like they're the ones that want this standard look and for aesthetic purposes, so maybe have they sat down with folks to try to figure out if the P-bid can pay for a standard, you know, news rack where they would be then incentivized to place their newspapers? Has that discussion taken place?
I have not personally participated in a discussion where the P-bid and the newspapers are in the same room. We've talked with the P-bid, and we've talked... We've reached out to the publications.
So maybe it'd be worth them, you know, getting together and having this discussion because if I'm hearing, if it's a lot of it aesthetics because, you know, we're opening the Fulton Street and so forth, and we're trying to clean it up, I think that it would be worthwhile, so that it's not on the dime of the city, that they sit down and try to come up with a solution so that they can still have the opportunity to distribute their newspapers in that area. That's what I would recommend. I do believe that, you know, it is within our purview to create standards and regulations. However, I think that at this time, I wouldn't feel comfortable to support it as is. I think that there still needs more conversation between folks, and I think that if we start with, you know, the P-bid in downtown, meeting with some of the, like the Fresno Bee and some of the other newspapers to figure out if there's a solution there, then I think I would be happy to revisit, but at this time, I wouldn't be able to support this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. At this time, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. A yes vote is to reject staff recommendation. A no vote is to support staff recommendation.
We had to mark Capriolio's absent. If you could vote one more time there.
All right, there we go. Item carries six yes with one absent unanimously. Thank you all for coming up. All right, let's move on to a lighter item. Member Baines?
It's time for the New Wrinkles. No, we'll do that, and then they can go and...
All right, are my folks from New Wrinkles here? All right, let's take the 2:00 item. Let me find out where they're at.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, to be fair to everyone, yeah.
The 2:00 item, number one. This is hearing to consider plan amendment application and turn it over to the Development and Resource Management Department. Thank you, staff.
Good afternoon, Council President Olivier. Councilmembers, we'll tack it. Development and Resource Management Department. Before you this afternoon is Plan Amendment Application A1614, Reason Application R1613, Vesting Tentative Track Map Number 6165 and an Associated Development Agreement. Staff is asking that this council act upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission made April 19th, which included removal of approximately 13 acres of the project which was previously proposed for RM2, Urban Neighborhood, Multifamily Apartment Zoning, in favor of single-family residential. Staff does have a couple of minor edits to make to its recommendations and report, and then we'll be available to field any questions. Now, council does have a presentation if the council desires, but the applicant group will also have some slides for you to view. The first of the edits is with respect to the Fresno Municipal Code findings attached to your report with respect to the vesting tentative map under findings A and D. Staff asks that the reference to the staff report to the commission dated February 16th of this year be changed to the staff report to the city council dated today. Second list of edits is with respect to Exhibit D1 of the Development Agreement. These are restrictions on uses permitted within the commercial portion of the property that's proposed. We're asking that the discount cigarette and tobacco shops also include marijuana businesses. There's being prohibited uses on that commercial property. And then finally, Clerk's Office has just handed out a red-line reversion of the council draft resolution for the Plan Amendment on page 2, last sentence of the first paragraph. Staff is asking that this council adopt the red-line revision, which includes a reference to the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the environmental assessment, and that addendum was prepared with respect to the commissions... The Planning Commission's recommended changes to the project. Again, with that, staff is asking that you support the staff recommendation, and we're available to field any questions.
So, council, this is the project in District 5, and I just want to go over a couple of things just to give you some background on. This has been a project that's been long in the works. Just want to kind of summarize the community input that's occurred for this project. So it went through our District 5 Implementation Committee, went to the Planning Commission twice. There were two community meetings that occurred. One, I think, we had to postpone because there wasn't enough folks. I think the other one, we had about 180 people attend. I've had about six staff meetings with our office, numerous calls and emails. And so just to kind of summarize, this is really, truly a community-shaped project. I want to thank the project manager, Brian. I think he went from being one of the most hated men out there in Southeast to the okayest man out there in Southeast. But just to summarize, we replaced the multifamily parcel with a single-home residential. There will be a senior housing component on there, particularly with Alzheimer and dementia care, and there is a commercial piece that will probably, more than likely, not happen until another project occurs, adjacent property there with some restrictions, and I want to make sure that we enter those restrictions into the record. So the restrictions will be no liquor stores, payday check cash-in stores, adult-oriented business, auto body repair shops, car washes, tattoo and body modification parlors, pipe and smoke shops, marijuana businesses, vape shops, discount cigarette and tobacco shops, bars and nightclubs, gun firearm shops, gas station mini-marts, or video game arcades. I just want to make sure that that is correct. City Attorney, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so with that, I don't have any more questions on... I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
You have a motion in a second. Are you finished, Member Chavez?
Yes.
Okay. The screen is clear at this time. Let's go out to the public. I have a couple of cards, and let's start with Betty. Are you here? There. Betty Watowitz, am I saying that correctly?
...to the Colonial in West San Jose, not this one.
Okay, so these are for the... Okay, 6:15, San Jose. All right, that's the next item. All right, is there anyone here who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? This is the 2:00 PM, number one. Welcome. Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, council members. My name is Eileen Hurst, and I reside at 5775 East Pitt Avenue. I've lived there now for seven... Almost 17 years in September. Our son grew up, and he lives six houses away from us in a Granville home also. He now just had a new baby yesterday. He has three little girls. We had to move from our last home because the Orangewood Estates and the Turner Elementary, what they did was they allowed the city to put a senior living assisted apartment set up right close to it because they thought that we would be able to mentor the elders with the children, and we would take on such nice things with our environmental center that we had. But what happened is, nobody wanted to put their elders in there. I did. I put my mom in there. She was the only senior citizen that was in there. We found out that they didn't have enough people that would sign up for it in that area because there was a glut of the assisted living homes and a facility. Also, now, today, we have the large Armenian assisted living apartment. It's huge. It's like hundreds of people that are able to live there. It's just on King's Canyon and before Temperance, and we're right there on Fowler and Sunnyside Church in California. Well, what happened is, when we moved my mom into my last Orangewood Estate apartment set up, what happened then is, a lot of people that were in there, they were trafficking. There was drugs. There were drive-bys. I lived next door to a policeman that was a vice police officer for 12 years, and what happened is, his house was shot up, and it was because the apartments that were supposed to be considered assisted living for the seniors, it wasn't. It was a conglomeration of anything that could, you know, I guess, just pay them rent. And so what happened then is, we tried so hard with the sheriff and the police officers to try to build up our neighborhood, but it just... It kept going down lower and lower, and it was just horrible. One by one, all the homeowners moved out. If you go to that area now, it's really bad. And then they also started building, like, it's called the Camelot Lakes. It's right there. The same thing. So that whole area, the elementary school was broken into, vandalized. They found a dead baby. On the news, it said, in one of the trash cans on the apartment complex. So I'm so in fear of that, and we have three little girls, a four-year-old, a two-year-old, and a brand-new baby that's one day old. And I would love it just to keep it as Granville Homes, so please, please consider it. Because our... This is listed as Residential Multifamily Urban Neighborhood, which is RM2, and that's for the assisted living. That could be anything because when we were here in the two meetings...
Ma'am.
Yes.
I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Also, I have 460 signatures that I did present to Luis Chavez, and I'm hoping that he gave them to you. I also have an additional 150 extra...
Thank you.
...that I didn't copy, and we're all against it, please, for our children. I beg you. I beg you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have three minutes.
Council members, my name is Glenn Hurst, and I was a landlord for 25 years. During that time I was a landlord, I saw a lot of things, you know, with rentals. But like we're concerned about with Fresno right now, we're concerned about slum, you know, conditions and good conditions, and a lot of it is up to management. But management changes every few years, and very likely, this property, if it has apartments, it's going to change in a few years. And then it's going to be up to a lot of things that could happen, but it's a proximity of apartments, too. It's not just the tenants. It's the conditions that apartments create. You have people next to each other. You have people that can come into the apartments anytime without notice. It's an environment that is not completely controlled. So can I ask one question? How many acres are still designated for the possibility of apartments in this... On this 78 acres?
The public comment period doesn't allow us to do give and take and question and answer, but when we're... When the discussion comes back to the council, we'll attempt to answer your question, but this is your time, so please continue.
Okay, so what I read is there's five acres still left for apartments beside the assisted living, which can... No?
Zero.
Okay, Glenn. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward.
My name is Pamela Pacrowski. I live at 5749 East Christine Avenue, and my concern is the dual designation that those things... The builder can easily say, "Oh, sorry, it's not feasible to build a park. We're not going to build a park. We're going to build apartments instead." And we have waited... I've waited 13 years for a park with a playground in my neighborhood. My kids are growing up, and we don't have that. You know, North Fresno, Clovis, there's all kinds of parks out there. We don't have that in our neighborhood. I went to so many meetings, promises, promises, and there was even a plan, and we're going to have this playground, this whole sporting path and everything. Nothing ever happened. And then Granville said, "Oh, the city says there's no money. Sorry." And so I hear that this new development, there was supposed to be, what, six acres for park, and now it's supposed to be three? But that's also dual designation, so maybe no park? And that really concerns me because my kids need a park. I don't want to have to go to Clovis or North Fresno or somewhere else to take my kids to the park. I want it in my neighborhood, and I want to be able to enjoy that with my family. And I think that we want to see a family-friendly environment. I think that's the big concern about the people that are coming up opposed to the development, is a family-friendly environment. And there is concern about apartments just because we see, not too far from us, apartments that are rundown and are a blight, and we would love to see someone go in and bulldoze them and put something up that is, you know, going to be nicer. Plus, we don't see the need for the apartments because, okay, Fancher Creek is supposed to be doing a whole bunch of apartments. There is the Armenian Home, which is a huge renovation going on, and new things are being built. And so we're just really concerned about our neighborhood because the developer and the builder, they're going to move on, but we're going to be there. And I have lived in Sunnyside my whole life except for five years when I was overseas. I was born in that area, raised there, and I chose to live there because I love Sunnyside. It's a great area to live in. But I don't want to end up being the ghetto that people on the other side of town say that we are. And I'm saying that for a fact. I've seen it so many times on social media. Why did they build that over there in Sunnyside? That's the ghetto. I'm never going to go to that business. I've seen that, and they're saying that because they see the neighborhoods where apartments have come in and things have just gone downhill from there. And so that is why I think our neighborhood is so scared about this apartment. We want there to be some guarantee that if something goes in there, that it's going to be something that's maintained and something that's going to be... That can keep the integrity of the neighborhood. And, you know, I would love to see, if something has to be small, let it be condos that are owned by people that take pride in their property and care about the neighborhood and are part of the neighborhood, not apartments where it can be transient. People can live there one year, and then somewhere else, just like the people who own it, can change, too, so...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Beatrice Johnson, and my address is 5769 East Belgravia Avenue, Fresno, 93727. My councilperson is Louis Chavez. I bought a house in that area in 1999. I moved back... I grew up here in Fresno, and I moved back from San Jose, and I bought a house that was in shot of where my mom lived, on Fig and North Avenue or Martin Luther King and North, so that I can be able to help her. But when I bought the house, Granville said there was going to be a park in the area where the Holden Pond is. To this day, we still don't have a park there where the Holden Pond is. And I don't want to be in an area where it's overrun by people that we don't even have a school in that area. a school in that area. And the school, the new school there on Armstrong, it's overcrowded, and the principal reported to the developers that they don't have room for any more students. So where are you going to put the student? You're going to allow for this builder to come in? We had a petition signed with over 400 signatures. And it's funny that you're holding the meeting while the public is working. So we don't have, you know, the representation that we've had at the planning commission meetings. So I object to that, all those apartments and everything coming in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council? So please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we will return to city council. Member Chavez, it is in your district?
Yes.
And you already have, you've already made the motion, correct?
I did, but I did also want to clarify. Can I have Brian come up and speak? Because I think there's still some misconception about what this project is and isn't. So Brian, just kind of sum up the comments about the park, about the apartments and all that, just to make sure that our folks understand what we're approving here today.
Got it. Brian, you're going Citadel Development Group, 1589 West Fresno, 93711. To be clear, there are no apartments slated on the project anymore. Planning Commission made a recommendation to downzone parcel C. The property owners, through working with staff, agreed to that recommendation, so it was downzoned to single-family, which will be RS5. The five acres remaining on the corner are RM2, but in the development agreement, the vested use is assisted living, so it cannot be anything other than assisted living. The quality of the product matters to the development group, the ownership, because they're going to retain portions of the property. The area is certainly in need of better quality assisted living. There's a facility, I believe, that was just built not too long ago on Hayes and Ashland, paintbrush facility. I think that quality of product would work well there. I'm aware of the Armenian Home. I was involved on their board of directors for a bit. They're inundated, and they're expanding because they need more space. There is a need for it. I think that size of property works for it. The park is moved to the center of the development for the purposes of getting built. Our agreement with the home builder for tract 6165 requires that they build that park on the front end of development. The property owners, as well as the home builder, are going to finance the park, and that's already in a purchase and sales agreement with the home builder. Those credits will be, that park will be reimbursed through Park Impact and Quimby Credits as development occurs, which is identified in the development agreement as well. So the park is both the most critical to creating a complete neighborhood, and moving it to the center was really the only way to do that. We can't move a park to the center of a development and not build it. It'll be a disaster. So we did everything in our power to get it built. Yeah, there is, we agreed with the downzoning of Planning Commission, so the apartments may not have been...
Thank you for that, Brian. I just wanted to make sure we got clear. There are no apartments, zero apartments. We have a park in this project in there, and there are a number of restrictions on that piece, that commercial piece that we spoke about. So just wanted to make sure we got that clear on the record so that our folks understand. And if anybody, any of the constituents want to email me, I can email you pictures of the drawings that were sent. Be more than happy to do that as well. So with that, council president, it's been moved to second. Call for the vote.
First of all, thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for clearing up the, maybe misunderstandings of some of the residents in the community. There's going to be a park, and there are no apartments. So I think hopefully that, that clears up the issue, and I'm happy to support it. But, you know, I'm, you know, I'm going to be frank to some of the residents that I heard come up here and almost talk about people that live in apartments as if people that live in apartments are bad folks, you know? I used to live in an apartment. I know my colleagues up here have lived in apartments, and maybe some of you at one time in your life have lived in apartments. And I don't think that just because a person lives in an apartment does not mean that they don't have pride in their neighborhood. And I think that we should be very careful about categorizing people in that way. So this project will not have any apartments, much to your satisfaction, I hope. But in the future, I hope that some of us can think about, maybe when you weren't able to be a homeowner, and before you were a homeowner, the type of person you were when in an apartment. Now, listen, if you all lived in apartments, and you trashed them, and you didn't take care of them, shame on you. But I can tell you that I lived in an apartment, and I took care of every apartment I've lived in. And I've also been a homeowner. So, Councilmember, thank you for indulging me, but I wanted to make that point clear to our residents who, the listening public, may, don't think this Fresno City Council thinks that people that live in apartments are any different than people that live in homes. Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically on this item, please. Thank you, council. The item passes six to zero with Member Capriolio absent. Thank you all for coming today. We move now to the two o'clock, number two, item. Stay with me now. Two o'clock, item number two, hearing to consider rezone application, vesting tentative tract map number 6160, conditional use permit application, Development and Resource Management Department. Take it away.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. My name's Andrea Aguilar, and I'm with the Development and Resource Management Department. You're here to consider the rezone application, R16020, the conditional use permit, C16020, the tentative tract map 6160, and the related environmental assessment. There hasn't been, there has not been any changes to our staff report. Staff re, still recommend, sticks to recommendation as outlined in your staff report. If you have any questions, we are here to answer them. I do have a presentation if you wish to hear one.
Want to hear it? One council member wants to hear it. Sure.
So we have the rezone application, the conditional use permit, the tentative tract map number 6160, and the related environmental assessment. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of San Jose and Colonial Avenue. It's zoned RS5 and approximately 1.13 acres in size. The applicant is proposing to add the P D designation to the current zone district, and proposing a 13-lot, single-family planned development with an outlaw A for private The property to the east and to the north is planned for residential. Property to the south and west is planned for regional mixed use. On April 19th, the Planning Commission heard the item, recommended to the city council to adopt the environmental assessment, adopt the ordinance bill, but deny the conditional use permit and deny the tract map. The city staff recommends to adopt the finding of conformity, adopt the ordinance bill, approve the conditional use permit, and approve the tract map. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this agenda item? Please give us your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Jeff Roberts, speaking on behalf of the owner and applicant. And we will, we'd like to make our presentation. I'll be the primary speaker today, and we'll make it as short as I can because staff has provided some of their information already.
You have a presentation, is it going to go three minutes, or you need more time?
Probably a little more than that.
Why don't we go ahead? Will you, Member Brando, will you call Mr. Roberts up, where he can have no time constraints? Because, okay, can we...
Are these in order?
Yeah, I'll call him in order. Can you folks wait until it's on Member Brando's time? We'll do the yellow cards right now, and then have you present at that time.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and to be fair, Member Brando says anyone who needs more time can come. He'll call them up. So let's begin first with Ashley Fleanor. I have a yellow card for you. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ashley Fleanor, and I live at 62 East Fedora. I drive by this property every day on my way to work, and it's a big empty lot. And I don't know why it shouldn't be able to, you know, they shouldn't be able to build the houses, or what's been proposed. On the drawings, it looks good, so I don't understand why it's even up for debate. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Oh, wow, that was quick. Thank you. Betty Wadowitz. Please give us your name and address for our record, and then you'll have also three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Betty Wadowitz. I live at 578 West San Jose, here in Fresno, obviously, with my husband Nathan. We retired and moved here from northern Indiana about two and a half years ago to be by family and to enjoy sunshine and warmer weather. We chose our neighborhood, which backs up to the development in question here today, because it was central in the city, central to where our family members live. It was walkable to all necessities, which is important to us because at times, my husband, because of medical conditions, cannot drive. So we can walk to grocery, post office, shoe repair, dry cleaners, pharmacy. We also liked the idea that we bought into a PUD where there's shared space, so we don't have to maintain outdoor lawn area. And it was a safe neighborhood for us to take our daily walks. I took some pictures this morning from my backyard, which I think we passed out to you earlier. And the first picture is me, I'm standing on my patio looking west. And you can see with the proposed development, where I put all the squiggly lines, that's where there will be a wall of one of the two-story units, which will significantly block the light into my living room. My living room only has the sliding glass door windows, so when that's blocked, there will not be much light. The second two exhibits, number two and number three, go down north along the backside of our patio. Where on the other side, there are single-story development of carports and single-family home units. We were not at all concerned about single-family residents being on the other side of the property where we live, because it does not impact our light. And we've had absolutely no issue with it. We obviously want something to be built on the dusty, dirty plot of land, but we are very insistent on really wanting it to be single-family, have no objection to multifamily. Obviously, we live in multifamily. But with the idea of looking pretty much at a wall, and to also have our light impacted is quite a negative on our property. And therefore, we would ask that you consider rejecting it and sending it back to the Planning Commission so that we would have more opportunity to work with the builder. The other concern that we have, because we are walkers, is because the conditional use permit is going to narrow the amount of land from the roadway to the two-story building. It's a fairly sharp turn, and cars go around that very quickly. And I'm concerned there's not going to be a good visual line for the cars to see people. I expect a lot of cars in the streets because of not enough parking inside. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Wayman Kissler. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you will also have three minutes.
Wayman Kissler, 445 West San Jose Avenue in Fresno. Got a couple of things to say about this situation. I'm the neighborhood watch captain, and so I'm real familiar with the area and what goes on. And the project has never been really negotiated fairly with the developer. The developer has set certain parameters, and I believe the CUP was, the city council recommended against it. And I just wanted to make that clear. The big deal with me is it sets a bad precedent. We have two large areas that are vacant lots, or vacant properties. One of them is two acres, one of them is four. And we're afraid that if this two-story building is allowed to be built, that it's going to set a precedent, and it's already, it's already instigated a small exodus from the area. People are moving, a for-sale sign went up yesterday, because they feel like the neighborhood is being encroached on. The neighbors want a single-story-only development. We want something to be built there, but we want it to be reasonable, and not overpowering and overbearing. We believe that the idea of infill is a good thing, but the idea of overkill is not a good thing. And if something doesn't pencil out, then it shouldn't be built. The idea of planning is to consider the people, and I don't really think the people have been considered in much of the planning lately that I've been following. Because the fact that it doesn't, doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. Single-story owner-occupied homes, they keep saying that because the Fig Garden Financial Center buildings are to the southwest of that property, that it's a mixed-use development. It's not. It's a single-story owner-occupied neighborhood. And it's a wonderful neighborhood. I've been there for 25 years. I grew up in Fresno, went to Ruth Gibson, and Wawona, and Bullard High, Fresno State. And if the character of the neighborhood changes that much, I'll move, too. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Frank Geisler. Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
This is my handout time. My name is Frank Geisler. I live at 494 West San Jose. And I've got some handouts, if I could get those up to the members. They're grouped in threes. In other words, there's two small ones and one large one. I should have enough, I think there's 10 there. For all council members. I think Wayman is pretty much correct on the culture of the neighborhood. And I don't think we're down on apartments. I think we're down on the location of some apartments. And it's partly because of the fact that the mixed-use environment that's planned out in that plan that you're getting, the other seven, four, one lot is 4.5, I think, one lot's 1.5. The other designation for that section, the largest section, 4.5, is mixed-use. That mixed-use section is four blocks off of Shaw, and it's two blocks off of Palm, right smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It's single-story, large lot, old Fresno homes that were built in the 1950s, 50s and 60s. My home was built in 1961. It's not that we're against the apartment concept. I don't want you to think we're against apartment livers, excuse me. We don't mean to say that. We don't mean to say that. It's that we're looking at the location of some things. The culture of the neighborhood is a single-story, single-family, large-lot neighborhood that's old and established. And what happens to it is it gets broken up by a whole bunch of mixed-use apartment complexes. It changes the whole culture of the neighborhood. I gave you three outlines. The first one, number one, is a plot plan for all of the vacant property that's in the area along with the plan project. Part two is a representation of some of the homes that are in that neighborhood that are single-family on large lots, plus some very nice condominiums complexes that are built in that neighborhood that comply within the neighborhood structure. And the last exhibit is the plot plan for the proposed project. The first plot plan had 18 units on it. And after a meeting that we had with the developer and the planning commission, and I saw the plan at planning commission that had red dots, no garbage, no access, and all that kind of stuff, they scaled the project down to 13 units, still two-story. And still, the new, as you can see, the new construction design that's being built in all of the new developing communities, which is fine if that's all there is in the neighborhood. You know, I quote something from the new general plan as a quote, and it reads to the fact that promoting a city's healthy communities is an important quality of life, is essential in established neighborhoods, including safe, well-maintained streets with land use and presidential space, or, excuse me, pedestrian space. I'm a little nervous speaking in front of a group. I don't know what to say from a standpoint of how the sitting plans. I know that I'm getting close to timeout.
Yes, sir, your time is up.
Okay.
But yes.
I hope you get to just, will we have time to rebut the extended time that's going to be given to the other member?
Well, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Geisler, because the city attorney informed me that I made an error when I had the builder sit down and stopped his presentation. There's a thing called Rule 10. That's a, it states that a project or entitlement applicant shall have such time necessary for a fair and reasonable oral testimony or presentation in connection with a particular hearing item. And his time limit by law, by statute, is 10 minutes.
Okay.
So I'm going to allow him, and with my apologies, to make his presentation. He has up to 10 minutes. But, Mr., Member Brando has graciously offered. If you would like to come up and speak to your council member, you will be welcome to come back.
Thank you.
So I guess the short answer is yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Geisler. Our next speaker is going to be Joan Jacobs Levy. Did I get that right? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Joan Jacobs Levy, and I reside at 5310 North Roosevelt Avenue. And I have lived there for 44 years and have seen the neighborhood as it developed and as it went through changes that were in conformance with the neighborhood itself. This is a unique neighborhood. It's 60 years old. It has a certain character. It's Fig Village, and everybody knows what it's like. What I'm concerned about, and I think many of my neighbors and what you've heard, is that this type of project will set a precedent and will destroy the character of the neighborhood bit by bit. As was pointed out, there's vacant parcels all along San Jose that had previously been single-family homes. We're very concerned that we're chipping away and chipping away, and it'll make it more difficult the next time a developer comes before this council and wants to get a CUP or a variance or whatever. And you will hear my neighbors and friends talk about all the reasons they're opposed to it. It's too tall, it's too bulky, it's overcrowded, 13 units is too many for 1.1 acres. It's out of keeping with the character of the neighborhood. One of the things I'm concerned about is the blocking of the sunlight. And I read the Solar Rights Act, the California Solar Rights Act. And while it doesn't speak directly, it does basically say that shade from increased building heights as a result of construction of new buildings on adjacent parcels can affect the amount of sunlight reaching a solar energy system in the future. I bring this up because the parcel directly to the east, if it were to have solar panels put in, it would be blocked. There's been nothing that I know of in the environmental assessment that measures the angle of the sun when it reaches the west and how it would affect those panels. Also, it was brought up that there are no other rentals in the neighborhood, everything, whether it's condominium or homes, all privately owned, all very uniform. And, you know, while we don't have a homeowners association, that's kind of what the HOAs want. They want conformity, they want uniformity. They don't want anything that looks very different because it does destroy the character. I'm afraid that I'm reaching the end of my time. But I do want to just say the other thing I'm concerned about, and I have a personal vested interest in this, is the increased traffic going from Colonial to San Ramon out to Palm. May I just finish this slot?
Please.
Thank you. I live right on the corner of San Ramon and Roosevelt. And as I say, I lived there for 44 years. I raised my family there. My son, way back in the day when he was going to Ruth Gibson Elementary School, was struck by another vehicle while he was on his bicycle coming home from school because the traffic at that time, with people using San Ramon as a pass-through to Palm, you know, from Maroa to Palm to avoid traffic lights. The neighborhood has, the density is increasing. This complex and the ones that would be built would increase that traffic. And I'm very concerned about the safety of the kids in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Jody Fitzpatrick. Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jody Fitzpatrick. I reside at 5326 North Roosevelt, and I own 531, 331 North Roosevelt. I guess my, going to address more procedure and how this project has made its way through planning. The applicant and our own planning department, they continue to maintain that this project fits the general plan requirements. So why are we here? If this project fits all the requirements, why didn't it simply go through plan check and be built? Because the plan submitted doesn't meet the general plan or conform to the development code. So a little history, the parcel is zoned for residential, single-family, 12 units per acre. It's pretty generous for a developer, but Granville wanted 18 units, which required a rezone, which triggered a neighborhood meeting last April, which is why we're all here. Granville reduced the number of units to what it has by right to develop. Yet still, this project as it's designed can't be built without a number of other modifications being granted. Those modifications have been packaged as the conditional use permit and the PUD vesting map that you're going to vote on today, one of the, two of the four things. So to make it clear, this is not a situation where the neighborhood is protesting a legitimately conforming plan. It's protesting one that isn't. Modifications are considered by most planning departments to be used only when there is an irregularity, weird-shaped lot, multi-level, strange easement. This lot is perfectly rectangular and perfectly level. There is no compelling reason to grant a modification here. The long-range planners who created the general plan foresaw the difference between increased density and overcrowding. There are rules to ensure the successful integration of infill projects into existing neighborhoods. The applicant is asking for those rules to be waived for what looks like to be the sheer purpose of packing as much square footage into the parcel as possible. Notice I said square footage and not units. But perhaps the most important precedent-setting portion of today's vote concerns the PUD map. And in the applicant's own statement, operational statement, it said that the project will be, the project management, the applicant currently owns and manages several hundred units in the city of Fresno with its own staff. The applicant owner will rent and manage the property with experienced professional staff. A PUD that is owned and rented and managed by one entity is an apartment complex. As Councilmember Baines pointed out, citizens who reside in apartments are absolutely the same as citizens who own their own homes. However, if something walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it ought to be a duck. So if this PUD is approved, the property will have effectively been rezoned from single-family residential to multifamily. And that sets a precedent. It sets a precedent for the properties down the street. There's one in Escrow that's one and a half acres. So the planning commission has ruled twice that the items three and four, the conditional use permit and the vesting map, be denied. And that they set a bad precedent and the project is unsuitable for the neighborhood. We hope we will also return a no vote on those two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council on this item? Please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have three minutes.
Apartment 102 in Fresno. And most of the speakers who preceded me have covered most of the items that I was concerned about. I wanted to mention the adjacent financial buildings. This is a point that Granville has been bringing up. These financial buildings sit about 20 feet back from the street, and they have massive trees and bushes that make it look very residential, actually. And I apologize for being late. The traffic was terrible. That's why I passed my letter out. I also emailed the same letter to all of you. We just want one-story buildings there. Everybody's brought that up. Two-story buildings are going to impact the neighborhood detrimentally. There are apartments adjacent to this project, proposed project. They are gated, they're one-story, and the people in there are very quiet, cooperative. There is very little turnover. They're quite acceptable, I believe, to all the neighbors. And then in my letter, I did characterize the design guidelines for the infill parcels, and that was July 14, 2005. And that might have been changed since then. I'm unaware if they have. But it does say, "Infill shall reinforce the community character and shall respect the neighborhood pattern, including setbacks, orientation, and scale, i.e. height." That's our big complaint. And the traffic is bad there now. It's only going to be worse if there are more residents. So we're hoping that you will consider the needs of all of us who live there within that 1,000 feet. I have this planning department package. These are how many residents live within 1,000 feet. There are lots and lots of them. And there's also in this package a petition that was circulated that has 124 signatures. So thank you for your consideration. And here's my card, which I forgot to fill out.
No problem. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? Come forward. If we could have your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Norman, and I'm a realtor for Fresno Modern Real Estate. And I actually live at 5636 North La Paz. I actually live in a Granville community, and I'm very proud to say that I do. I'm very familiar with the area that we are talking about this afternoon, and not because I shop in Fig Garden, but lovely homes there. And we try to uphold the community and the respect for the homeowners in that community. Knowing Granville homes and what they have done for our community and other communities, I applaud the project. So being is that we have so many people from out of town, so many traveling nurses that want to come into the Fresno area. They look for PUDs. We do not have enough townhomes, enough condos in these established areas. I think this type of building will only add to the value of these homes. I've been a realtor for over 10 years. I'm also a property investor. I also represent three major banks, all the way to Chico, California, and all the way to Desert Hot Springs. I am very familiar when it comes to real estate. I do this, I thrive on it. Again, I think what we need to figure out and understand is that this project, again, will only add value to the community. Truly, it will. I think the project is going to also bring good business to the other vendors in the community. I think it's an excellent project, and I truly hope that it does go through today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this item? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I live at 5331. I live with the blonde lady. The, you know, you guys.
I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
Harvich Kurchen's the name. You guys, you know, listen to everybody, looking at this neighborhood, it's seniors. We all moved to the county for a reason. These are city lots, I get it. The developer's in his right to build what he wants on a city lot. But in that general plan, there is something about defaming a neighborhood. And as these people said, they moved to this neighborhood. I grew up in the Gibson neighborhood. I went to Gibson and Tenaya. And we, I moved back to that neighborhood because of the space, the ability of low traffic to walk to Fig Garden, okay? No one's against the apartments. There's condos, there are apartments there. There's another real estate guy sitting in the back over there who lives in those condos. And they bought there because they're single-level rentals or condos or apartments. You don't need to jam up in the air and defame. Fresno's got enough problems, guys. So why take what is the, just the apex of our community, Fig Garden Village, or some of the other things that's left of our historic, like Fresno High, and try to jam stuff that's going on in the outskirts? Copper River Development's a beautiful development, but that's its own entity. We're the county. I'm sorry. We're surrounding by the city, which is surrounded by a little pond of property that is annexed into the city. So the right thing, in my opinion, and that I plead with you guys, is to consider. Yes, they're in their rights. I build houses. I do that kind of stuff. I get it. Maximize profits, get density. I'm Armenian, for Christ's sake, okay? I understand it. But when you look at the way that the ship is built, come on. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council? Come forward, please. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's John Prandini. I live at 582 West San Jose. My property is just east of this proposed complex. And to give you an idea of my view, it's this. I have a 14-foot backyard, 10-foot setback proposed with a 27-foot-high building. Three-quarters of my backyard will have this wall to meet me. So my view is pretty much this, with a little small portion of view. I'll basically lose everything but it's straight above me from my sight. Talking about the property values, I paid $412,000 for my unit. I look forward to the development of this area with something that would fit. I loved, I liked the planning commission who said, you know, this may fit with the plan in conformity, but except for conformity of the neighborhood, it doesn't fit that. They asked Granville twice to go back, that they have creative individuals to create something that's more suitable for the neighborhood. You know, they've cut down the density, but they really haven't changed anything else. Actually, one of the owners in our unit is a builder who at the last community building actually said, "Out of your 13 units, the units that are closest to the east side, why don't you make them single-story instead of two-story to give more light and to..." don't you make them single-story instead of two-story to give more light and to address that possible solar panels in the future?" And they said, "No, we're done. We're not going to make any more changes or work with you." And they implied that no matter what, after some discussions, that no matter what, the planning commission said that they had enough political clout in the city that the city council would approve it regardless of the two no votes of the planning commission in regard to not fitting into the nature of the community. So I would like nothing better to have those creative people work with us and the community in the residential area to build something that fits and to actually raise our property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Please come forward at this time. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back up to council at this time, though. Right. In accordance with Rule 10, we're going to go ahead and give the folks from Granville their time to make their presentation as well. Thank you very much for being patient with me, because I should have called for you first. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Roberts. I'm speaking on behalf of A.F.R.E.I. Incorporated, an affiliate of Granville Homes. Our business address is 1396 West Hernan in the city of Fresno. And I will try and be as brief as I possibly can. Staff covered a lot of the information that we were going to touch on today, so I think we can move through fairly quickly. For the record, I want to state that we're in concurrence with the District 2 recommendation for approval. And we're in concurrence with the recommendation of staff here today for approval, except for one condition, that being number 5C found on page six of the staff report. Couple of things that are important to note is what we're not doing here today. We are not processing a plan amendment. We are in conformance with the general plan that was approved back in December of 2014. We are not rezoning the property to a different density. We're in conformance with the rezoning that was done in February 4, 2016, on this site. What we are doing is processing a map that allows us to sell units in the future on individual lots, and we're processing a conditional use permit for three specific purposes. Purpose one is to allow for some of the lots, four out of 13, they don't have public road access. So we have a private road that provides access to those sites. Two, some of our lots have less than the required 4,000 square feet, but we have, there is a trade-off for that, as there is with any conditional use permit. We have a 17,400-square-foot common area lot with parking, driveways, and open space. And three, the reduced setback on Colonial Avenue is required, or we have requested that to give us more room on the east side of the property. That means our units can be a little bit farther from the residential units to the east. Mr. President, this is what we would call a classic infill project. It's surrounded on four sides by development. The development nature of this site will be somewhat different than you find in the area. And I'd like to start our slideshow, if we could, and we'll run through this fairly quickly. This is, this is a graphic very similar to the one that the staff showed. The vicinity is north toward the top with Barstow Avenue, Shaw at the south, Palm on the left, or the west side, Maroa on the east, or the right side. Next. This is kind of an oblique shot, taping from the southeast, and what you can see is Fig Garden Village adjacent to the site and the Fig Garden Towers, and then the residential from the, that's adjacent to the site. Next. This is another rather oblique shot, air photo, if you will, taken almost due east of the site. The site is highlighted there. You can see the multifamily units on to the east of us, and then the Fig Garden facilities to the west in the south. Next. This is a blow-up of the site that shows, this actually shows the site as it was once developed, which had a single-family home, a pool, and numerous trees that were on the site. The site is now clear. Next. It's important to note that, as we're going through this, that there's been some discussion about what's the nature of the area? Is it a one-story, a two-story, a three-story? I can tell you, standing on our site, you can see one, two, three, and four-story buildings. And this show, this graphic shows within 500 feet of the site, the mixture of uses. You'll find one- and two-story homes, one- and two-story apartments, and three-story apartments, four-story office buildings. Next. While we're looking at the, at the nature of the height of buildings in the area, it's important to look at the ownership pattern. The blue represents the home ownership, excuse me, the rental properties in the area that are residential in nature. The buff color is the non-residential rental properties. The pink represents the ownership properties in the area, within 500 feet. This is an exhibit that shows, that was shown at the planning commission, of the elevation of the duplex units. There are two units here. Even though you can only see one door, there are actually two units here. Next. And then this is the unit that'll be facing San Jose Avenue. Next. This is a, just a graphic that shows the relative distance and height difference between the existing units to the east of us, which are on the right, and the proposed unit on the left. You can see the heights different, which is some, there's a few feet difference, but there's quite a bit of distance between the properties. So one of the important aspects of this project, as with any infill project, is, was there interaction with the neighborhood? And I'm here to tell you, there was a lot of interaction with the neighborhood that started a little bit over a year ago. You can see there's a listing of four meetings here. One had a lot of people. The others had a few people. One was actually here in City Hall, the most recent one. And what this graphic doesn't show is all the phone calls, emails, and that sort of thing that did occur. There was a lot of interaction, and I can expand on that if the council would like. The bottom line, in over a year, we have made significant changes to the project, and I'm going to run through some of these, but not everyone is in support of all these changes. We wish we could have had unanimous support. We want to thank everyone that tried to help us get there and evolve this project, but we didn't end up at full concurrence. Next slide. It was mentioned, this, and I think someone passed out a graphic, this shows the original project proposal with 18 units, 1,400, almost 1,500 square-foot units, limited open space. There was actually no onsite guest parking at this one, and the entrance was down on San Jose. Next. This shows a little bit different configuration. We increased some setbacks. We added a pedestrian gate on Colonial, and we identified two car garages for all the units. Next. Next revision was done in August of last year. We removed several of the units down to 16, removed the windows that are facing east. And I want to repeat that. There are no east-facing windows on these units, which is adjacent to look at our adjacent project to the east. We added some green space, and we added some onsite parking. Next. In November, we reduced the count again, down to 13. We added some additional parking, and then we have, we moved, the most important thing here is we moved the entrance over to Colonial. That was a request of the neighborhood, and one thing that they thought was important, to focus the traffic ingress and egress away from their project. Next. This is the last alternative that, or I should say, the site plan that is the one before you today. We were requested to take off the trash bins and add parking, and we did both those things. So you can see through these various site plans, the evolution of what took place. Okay. So if you can leave that there. So what's the remaining issues? According to the staff report, there are five remaining issues. I'll go through these very quickly. Number one is parking and traffic. This 13-unit project will generate about 117 trips per day. That translates into about 11 or 12 trips per peak hour, about 10% of what is required to trigger a traffic study. It's a very, very low traffic count. And our parking ratio is 2.38 spaces per unit, far exceeding the 1.5 requirement. Two, the two-story development. In checking back on the history of the area, two-story has been allowed in this area by code since 1960. The county code allowed 35 feet, two-and-a-half stories. When it was annexed in 1987, the city code allowed two-and-a-half stories, 35 feet. And we're about 10 feet below that. The density, obviously, the staff has covered this issue in their report. We are completely consistent with the plan. In terms of design, we could run through a lot of photographs here of the site, or the surrounding area, and look at the mixture of uses, which ranges from ranch to modern to colonial to early California. And what we've tried to do is to take our cues from the newest units that were built in the area, both single and multifamily, and we have stucco exteriors with tile roofs. Regarding the tree removal issue, we took out trees over a period of time. Some were taken out under the old code, some under the new. But the bottom line is, all the trees had to be removed. That was always on our site plan, and we did so under a, in the current code, it allows for a provision that says, in single-family developed lots, you're exempt from any tree removal permit or requirement. So that's, that's how we've taken care of that. Mr. President, members of the council, we request that you take four actions today. One, adopt the finding of conformity for the master EIR, as recommended by your commission. Two, adopt rezon application 16-20, as recommended by your commission. Three, approve CUP number C16062, with the exception of item 5C in the conditional use permit conditions, and approve vesting tentative track pack number 6160. And we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Do you have something you want to add? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Darius Semin, Granville Homes, 1396 West Hernan, project applicant. I take exception that we have not worked with the neighbors. This project has gone through nine major changes after multiple meetings with the neighbors. Are they 100% satisfied? No. I understand, nobody wants to see new buildings, new projects, taller buildings in their backyard. We are conforming with your code. We're conforming, we're not changing the plan. We're not rezoning the property. We're within the number of units allowed. If we don't build this project and conform to the setbacks, and city manager can confirm that, on Colonial and San Jose, we can build by right up to 12 units per acre, single-family units, with two stories and balconies overlooking the east property. So long as I'm not, we're not changing any of the standards. And in this case, we're changing the street setback on Colonial. And that's what's triggering a CUP to come in front of you and the planning commission. We could go out there and build by right, single-family individual homes with two stories and balcony overlooking, five feet away from the eastern property line, without a CUP. We believe this project will add value to the neighborhood. We've met with the neighbors numerous times, have made multiple, multiple concessions, and it's at the point where if we can't build this project, it's not buildable. We looked at the single-story adjacent to their, to the eastern property line. It's still a duplex, which means what? One half of the building is going to be single-story, the other half is going to be two-story. So the issue of, you know, reducing sunlight going into those backyards is not going to go away by having single stories. And all it does is shrinks the size of the unit, which lowers the value of that unit, which lowers the values in the neighborhoods. We've specifically designed a product. You can't see any of the garages from the street on Colonial. You can see one, one of the buildings on San Jose, you can see a two-car garage attached. All the units have two-car garage attached. We have onsite parking. We have onsite open space. Average size of, or minimum size of the building is over 1,400 square, unit is over 1,400 square feet, with the biggest building on San Jose at over 2,000 square feet, compared to the units to the east of us. That is a 16-unit project that went to the east, 16 units. Yes, they're a single story, but the overall height is about five-and-a-half feet lower than ours. It's not like we're building a tower next door to them. And half of those 16 units are rentals. This is just getting the information from tax records. I don't know what else we need to do. Your general plan recommends infill. We're not changing the zoning. We're not changing the density. And you guys need to decide, you ladies and gentlemen, need to decide. Do we conform with the general plan and work with the developer that has worked with the neighbors over five neighborhood meetings, one in this building, several one-on-one meetings? At some point, we've got to draw the line. We feel like we've compromised substantially. Yes, I get it. This is not a single-story project. But the single-story project wouldn't work on this site. At 10, or 9, or 11 units, the size of the units would be substantially smaller, or you have to eliminate all the garages, which means, but what? Now people are parking on the street. So we've carefully studied this. How do we design a project in infill? We moved these buildings away from the properties to the east, that we used to be five-foot setback. Now they're 10-foot setback. We met with council member Brando. He said you have to eliminate the second-story windows. We redesigned the building so that the second-story windows are eliminated, so they won't look into their backyard. I don't know what else we can do. Single-story buildings will be 500 square foot each. I'm pretty sure nobody's going to want a 500-square-foot building, a unit, to rent. And that in itself will devalue the properties. And can we do it for less than 13 units? No, we can't. At some point, the project has to, has to make sense. We've done, we've built a lot of infill projects in this community. We will do another outstanding project. We will continue to work with the neighbors at your request, council member Brando. You've asked us to, and we will continue to. We're going to create, we've created a 10-foot buffer so that our project overlooking the neighbors on the, on the east has a nice landscape buffer. Again, I take exception when people say, people in this crowd say that we're going to use our clout. We work hard. We've worked hard. We've met with the neighbors. And yes, as many people that are here that are opposing this project, there's as many, if not more, that love, they can't wait for this project to come out of the ground, so they can move into this neighborhood. Yeah, they, yeah, there are many folks, and they're not here today. And you'll find out. The issue with, with our, with the folks here, they don't want, they've told me in person and in, and in public meetings, they don't want to ginder project with a two-story balcony overlooking their backyards. The one that was just recently completed on Maroa. And this is not our project. So I respectfully request that you approve this project that complies with your general plan, the intent of your general plan, and after one year's worth of work with the, with the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, public comment has closed, and... That was, that was my mistake, and that was my mistake, and public hearing is closed. We couldn't, we were able to get everyone's comments made, and we were also...
I'm going to call the lady.
And we were also able to honor the rule that, that really requires the applicants to make their presentations. So as I've said before, member Brando has offered to have a couple of folks come up and speak to the council, and so we'll go ahead and go that way. There are a couple of council members punched up, so we'll close public comment and return it to council. This is in the second district, so of course, it's member Brando.
Ma'am, I don't remember your name in the purple. Come on up and, what was that? Joan?
My name is Joan, Joan Jacobs Levy. The, I just want to address one point, and that is the point of how many meetings there were with the neighbors. I received notification about the initial meeting, which was held at Bullard High. And by the way, it wasn't 60 people were there. It was probably more like 100, 120 people were there. That room was filled. After that, I never heard anything from Granville. I was not notified about any of the four other meetings. That, you know, the graphics showed 60 people at Bullard, seven people at the next one, six people at the next one, you know, diminishing. Well, we didn't know about those meetings. There may have been one or two people who were calling Granville who were notified, but Granville never made any outreach to the rest of us so that we could work on some ideas and work together. You know, I was around when Gunnar and Andros built the Fig Garden Financial Center. And, you know, at first, the neighbors were totally opposed to that. We went, I mean, history lesson. We went through an awful lot. There was, there was the, there was the Board of Supervisors, then there was LAFCO, then there was City Council, anyway, on and on and on. But the difference... But the difference between what Granville is doing and what Gunner and Andros did is ultimately, they worked with the neighborhood, they installed that beautiful buffer with the big trees where people walk, and they made it, they upgraded our neighborhood. And they did that because they worked in conformity with the council's directive, and these were the conditions, and it's beautiful. Granville, despite their saying how many concessions and how they work with the neighbors, they never worked with the neighbors. They worked with one or two people, and it's my understanding from those meetings that there were no concessions at them, that it was talking to a stone wall. That's all I want to say about that.
Did anybody else have something different that they wanted to? Jody, come on up. No, come on up.
Working with the neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah.
If in keeping with the spirit of working with the neighborhood, as Mr. Semien said that he has done and likes to do, if Granville would be willing to go through their presentation again, and for me to narrate what the neighbors feel about the presentation and the particular items that they have pointed out, would Granville be willing to do that?
You know, I don't, I doubt it, but I don't, you know, really, that's, I don't even think that's appropriate for you to narrate their presentation, telling us what other neighbors would think about it.
That's not appropriate?
No, I mean, we've heard from the neighbors.
Well, but we were not, because Granville went first, we were not allowed to address the misleading photos, the misleading diagrams, and the misleading information that's been in the presentation. So we would like the opportunity to say, for instance, you know, like the neighborhood meetings.
The, I can address this, and I'll go ahead and...
May I? You could have just, I mean, you could have already been started on that. Why don't you give us two or three things that were you disagreed with Granville?
Okay, the neighborhood meetings, and the Planning Commission was very, actually quite upset about this. Carrie Cottolano stopped the Planning Commission meeting and called out the Planning Department head because the very last meeting, that where 16 people were present, a notice was sent out. Granville, the Planning Commission denied the application. It was sent back to planning. Planning was directed to work with the neighbors. What happened was...
Can we come and re-budge this, too? I mean, we can go all the way in that. No, just hold on.
Yeah, well, this is my deal here. Okay, so, so what happened was that letters were sent to the neighbors of the adjacent property, not everybody else in the 1,000-square-foot radius, as required and as directed by the Planning Commission. So they were carefully selected, and as Joan Levy had stated before, there were many of us that didn't get letters to the other two or three meetings. So I went and crashed the meeting anyway, even though I wasn't invited to the fourth one. And it is as described, there was no movement, there was no, you know, conciliation, cooperation. Granville stated that they've changed this plan and changed this plan. Well, they've changed this plan because they've had to. They started with 18 units because they wanted 18 units with a rezon. They had the right to build 12 per acre. This is a one-point-some-acre lot. So the changes they have made basically were made because of planning. For instance, they had a dumpster in this project, which is kind of odd if it's a PUD, correct? Well, planning made them pretty much remove it, but that's considered concession to neighbors, and it's not. So there are as many misleading things in this presentation. The drawings that are supposedly to scale that show the bulk of the building, yes, the neighboring buildings next door are 20 feet higher, four feet lower, but their pitch is like this, and Granville's pitch is like this. So the bulk and the mass of the building is going to feel different. In fact, this development, if we could all, I think something that we could all relate to, this building has the bulk, heft, and height of the Tower Theater Building with its retail wings. And Granville shows you some nice pictures of the individual units, the two together, and they show them surrounded by trees and lawn. They don't show them five feet apart as they are actually going to be. The other issue that, in the conditional use permit, that is really deviating from what the general plan wants, is the four units that are in the back that have no street frontage. And that's one of the deviations that they're asking for. The reason that is happening is because the general plan wants street frontage because that's the most efficient use of land. If you can see their plan, it's 50% driveway. It's 50% driveway because you have to drive in and get back to those four units. So it's, the whole general plan was about efficiency of land use. It was about efficiency of development. You were supposed to get these things and get these things in and out. If they had done a development that met all the requirements for the general plan, 12 units per acre, we wouldn't be here, they'd be built and out of here. Instead, they wanted 18, then they went to 16, then they did a lot of things that planning wasn't agreeing with. So this is really, it's been a curious business decision because it's taken a lot of time, and it's cost a lot of money. There is definitely a way to make profit on this project. The units would probably need to be smaller. That's what's meant by density. When things get dense, it means there are more of them and they get smaller. So if, if an infill builder's overhead is such, or because basically they're a track builder, a track loft builder, the overhead is very high, they have huge staff, if they, you know, they've got to make 30, 40% per unit, maybe they're not the ones to be doing the infill building. Infill building takes a lot more time, it takes a lot more energy, it's a much lower profit margin. So if it doesn't fit your business plan, and we heard that time and time again as neighbors, when we request a change, when we request one story, "It doesn't fit our business plan", that was the standard response, "It doesn't fit our business plan." Well, tough. I mean, maybe you're not the one to be building on this particular lot then, because there are builders, the gentleman who's not here today, Dave Wassmiller, who built the development next door, if you could see it, very efficient use of land. There's one driveway that goes straight down, there's 16 units on an acre and a half. Beautiful project. They kept their trees, wound the sidewalk around the trees, which is costly, they did it to enhance the neighborhood and make that development part of the neighborhood. So there's this great example, this beautiful example of infill development right next door. And he made so much money on that, he went off and built another one. The same thing, same project, another part of town. So there's just a lot of misleading information, the way the development has been put through planning, the way it's insisted that it is conforming to the general plan. It's like I pointed out, it isn't, or we wouldn't be here. You know, so that's about it.
Thanks, Jody. So I want to call planning up. I don't know who wants to come up from planning. And Jennifer, get ready, because this is eventually coming to you. Okay. So inside of the folks that raised concerns, there were a couple of things that I wanted to get some clarity on, because this would bug me as well. Is there, is there a problem with a sharp turn cars' visual line moving around San Jose to Colonial, or vice versa?
The traffic department did review the project, and everything was okay. The visibility triangle was fine, there was no danger there. So they did review it.
And that's, and that's kind of, and we're using a new approach on those turns, is that right? In development in the past?
Yes, I believe the previous one was a 30-foot visibility triangle. It's being changed now. The change actually would bring the buildings closer to the corner. In this case, it's a 30-foot visibility triangle, which is pushing the building further back.
Okay. And then, then there's a lot of debate about the neighborhood being single-story versus buildings up to four stories. Granville's saying one thing, a lot of the neighbors are saying different. In your opinion, is it solely a single-story neighborhood, or is it, I mean, when planning's out there, how do you guys look at that neighborhood?
To be honest, we look at the code. The code does allow the RS5 zone district to go up to 35 feet. Granville is well within that height limit.
And then, also, the thing, the question about the CUP and why the CUP was changed. So back a year ago, when this thing first started happening, I kind of made it, I've been hearing from both sides, by the way, for a year. So I had a couple of requests, because I'd seen it on other developments in District 2 since I've been a council member. So I asked to remove the second-story windows, so nobody'd be up there, being able to get a bird's-eye view into a backyard. And then I also talked about moving the buildings a little bit further back. They were like at five foot from the fence line at one point. So they got moved back to 10 feet, but what that did is that shoved the project over towards Colonial and required a CUP. And I think that's right. Is that, is that what, is that part of why it went the CUP route?
So the conditional use permit is required when developing a planned development, and the planned development was triggered when that front setback was reduced to 10 feet instead of 13 feet.
Right. So the front setback from the front street got shortened so that the backyard setback on the east side could get lengthened, and I think that's what triggered the CUP part of it. Am I right? Because I remember talking about this about a year...
Correct. So a number of development standards are being requested to be different, so it can accommodate more standard-sized parcels for the, for the units on the property. So yes, it could develop 13 units, no changes in development standards on very narrow, long lots. They would be about 27 feet wide and go all the way back to the fence line. So it'd be a long, skinny house on each of those parcels. What the developer is proposing is a change in development standards. And as you recall, when we adopted the Development Code, there were two things that the City Council really wanted to see, which was, if you're going to change development standards, you can do that, but you need to bring it back to us to see if it still fits within what we're trying to accomplish as a council. The other was, if you're going to develop multifamily in RS5, you had to have a CUP. Both of these actions require public input, and I think what I heard last year was that the City Council really wanted there to be, when there was going to be something different aside from 27-by-130-foot lots, that we would bring that back to City Council so you could evaluate and determine if this was the kind of project that you wanted to see in a neighborhood. So the discretionary action of the council is varying those standards to allow for kind of more standard-sized lots, squarer lots than would have been accomplished by just building to code.
Okay. And then, Jennifer, so, I mean, your planning department's looked at this for a long time now, and you've heard a lot of the concerns directly. So as of today, your recommendations have not changed, that this project should go forward?
The project meets the standards set forth in Development Code, which allow for the design of additional changes to allow for and accommodate the density that is proposed for the site. It meets the Development Code, it meets the general plan. We're asking for the City Council to consider the changes, the variations in some of the setbacks and standards, and create a planned development overlay. So essentially, it's creating very specific rules and regulations that go permanently onto that property, and saying that you may not encroach into that backside yard, you may not add windows at a later time. So those are all things that protect that, the development itself, and future changes that could occur on that property.
All right, all right. And you're not, and then you're not concerned about traffic on, that this project's going to impinge upon traffic on Colonial and San Jose?
So the traffic engineering has reviewed the number of units. It does not trigger any kind of traffic study, it's below our threshold. It will have sidewalks, which will increase safety along that corner. Right now, there's no sidewalk along that corner. So we'll have sidewalks, curb and gutter along that turn, and so when you're walking on the sidewalk, you would be protected from the traffic.
And you don't have a problem with the one unit that faces San Jose with the driveway off of San Jose?
It was difficult for, because the 13 units is an odd number, they couldn't continue that same format, so their choice was to do, developer's choice was to do a single-family product rather than an attached single-family product, a standalone, which they felt was more in keeping with the remainder of the roadway.
All right. Thank you, thank you. So to my colleagues, you know, I'm just going to throw out a couple of thoughts, and many of you that have served with me for the four and a half years that I've been here will remember this. So, you know, we were, we have an, we do have infill in District 2. We have plots of land that got skipped over, you know, moved around, they're vacant, bare pieces of ground. We have to, you know, we have to do our share. Our general plan was heavy on focusing on infill, and you're going to run into difficulties, and we already have. I think the first one was in District 7 on a similar corner piece of infill. And so these infill things, to me, they're no fun, because they're always, they're always different than kind of what's been there before. And one of the reasons is, and I've been examining, I've met with both of these sides probably equal amount of time and bodies and everything else. So, you know, and to the folks, to the neighbors that came out, I wish I would have had you guys about two and a half, three, four years ago when we were talking about the general plan, because I needed a lot of your voices then, because I battled that general plan like crazy, but I didn't get too far, and it passed. And so densities are going up across the city, there's no way around it, it's the plan, it's the general plan. densities are going up everywhere on all, on all projects. Now, I've given notice to every developer that builds in Fresno that contacts me, I'm not for high density, I am not for the highest densities allowed by our standards. They have to make common sense to me, at least some. And I know that they're going to still increase in a little bit of density, but to me, they have to make sense. You can't flood a neighborhood. So I've been looking at that for two years. Two and a half years ago, I would have been your workhorse. But today, what happened is, council passed a general plan with the administration that favored infill, really favored infill, and now our developers in those, in that timeframe, have gone out and begin to face the fact that they have to face infill, they have to build infill. And that's what happened. And these guys have learned how to live within those rules, and then that's, then that becomes upsetting, but they're doing what they can do. I'm going to ask one more question. So Jennifer, I actually want to pull you back up, I should have asked you this a second ago. So realistically, and this is important for, in my mind, for council to understand, if this project doesn't get built that we're doing today, they could go back without the Planning Commission, without City Council vote, by right, build two-story buildings at the five-foot mark with balconies.
So I just wanted to verify, but our standard is a 10-foot rear yard setback, and for a map, if they were to map it into separate parcels, it would still have to go back to the Planning Commission.
But they could do balconies by right.
Sure.
So, you know, unprotected views of your backyards. So, I mean, at the end of the day, I think that they, that this project has been modified substantially from the beginning. Now whether it happened as a result of planning putting demands on them, the neighbors putting demands, I know I put a couple of demands out of that list, but unless we want to revote the general plan and wipe out infill, you know, as a priority, I guess we could start that conversation. But the game has been set, the rules have been set, and now developers are following those rules, and you're going to face this problem. So I'm going to recommend, I'm going to make a motion to take staff's recommendation today. And that's my motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Member Soria. Couple of council members punched up, Member Brederfeld.
Yeah, I have a number of questions from both sides, but let me start with Jody. Would you mind coming back up? First of all, thanks, thanks for the meeting yesterday. Appreciate all the input and feedback, and appreciate the passion on both sides, really. And I know you're very, feel very strongly in your position, and I understand the concerns that the residents have. But let me ask you a question. You said... question. You said when we talked, you're mainly, well, I guess you have a number of concerns, but one of your big concerns was the two-story abutted to the fence that has the existing neighborhood behind it. And if it went to one story, would that resolve it for you? I mean, those two stories that are just over the fence, if they went down to one story, would that resolve the issues for you, or there's just too many other issues?
That would be an improvement, and that was on the table in the meeting to which only the adjacent property owners were invited to. That was rejected by the applicant. You know, we still do have issues with the setbacks being so close, especially on the corner, the front setbacks. I believe the development code requires it to be 90% of the setback of the adjacent properties, which would be 18 feet. And this one's 10 feet. So that would definitely be improvement. Again, the thing is, they could do better than this. You know, if the plan went back to planning, they could do a better job than this. And the excuse that it doesn't fit their business plan and they can't make money on it, I don't feel is valid, especially when there's such a great example of an infill project right next door that somebody made a lot of money on.
Okay. So there are still a number of concerns. That really wouldn't resolve it for you. There's still many other concerns. And what about what Councilmember Brandau says, that if this did not go forward, they could actually make something that would be even less to your liking?
Well, that's the thing. Ms. Clark said that they could build a 35-foot-high structure there, but it would be single-story. So that also was a little bit misleading. So yes, the applicant can build up to 35 feet, but it would be single-story. So you wouldn't be dealing with any windows at all. Even though there are no windows on the back, there's still going to be windows on the sides of the building. So people are still going to look out at a diagonal to someone's private property.
Yeah, but what about they're building trees that obviously provide some protection?
Then we have kind of the sun issue. You know, you're going to have no light after 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock on those properties. Their ability to make their own power with solar system has been eliminated. They no longer have that option. So again, it's possible, there's a difference between density and overcrowding. Again, they can build, you know, by right, 12 units. It doesn't mean those units have to be as big as they are making them. So I said, density is about, that's why we have 300-square-foot apartments in Manhattan. When things get denser, the units are supposed to be smaller. So this really is a terrible example of an infill project, especially when we're starting out in infill projects. It's not meeting so many of the things that the general plan wants, especially that street frontage, matching the setbacks, compatibility with the neighborhood, the feel and scale and bulk of it. And so I say, I just feel Granville can do better. They're an amazing custom home builder. I don't know why this plan couldn't be modified in some way, and they can still make money on it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Simi, let me ask you some questions. I have talked to you as well. And one of the concerns that Jody had mentioned was, and I like what Councilmember Brandau did, where he removed the windows. Because if that hadn't been removed, it would have been much more difficult for me to support because obviously people are looking right over the fence. Trees, what kind of trees can be put there so there is no, you know, possibility that somebody's be looking over a fence?
So what we have planned, Councilmember Brederfeld, is evergreen trees to be planted in that 10-foot side yard all along the east property. Actually, we have close to 60 trees that are going on this project. Yes, we have removed a half a dozen.
All together?
All together. A dozen trees, and we're going to be planting on planting 60 new trees on the site. Solar keeps coming up. We're developers. You put solar on the south-facing, not on the west-facing. Just make sure we're clear on that. And why do we not put solar on the west-facing? Because you want to take advantage of the sunrise all the way to sunset. And south-facing is the best location to put solar, not on the west side. Because on the west side, what happens in the morning? You don't get any sun until about 1 or 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So, and by the way, the 35-foot-tall ordinance, there's no restriction on one story. Let me make sure we're very clear on that. Is that correct, Jennifer? Yes. So the 35-foot tall does not say you have to build one story. And can we put this, I want to show you something on this. Can you put this, what's on here on the screen, please?
No.
This one, actually, the one that shows that with the property next door? No, keep going back, go further. Just so that you can see on your screen, this design creates maximum open space on the east side. Yes, those are two-story buildings, but it creates maximum open space. So, and those buildings are at least 35 or 40, some of them are 60 or 70 feet apart. They're not five feet apart. Somebody said the smallest distance between the buildings are the ones on Colonial, and those are 10 feet apart. But we've carefully designed this to put all the open space and parking on the east side, abutting our neighbors. There you go. That's what I was looking for. Okay. So, and as you can take a look at the project on the east side, there is no open space. We have specifically designed this project to have open space and onsite parking. I'd like to point that out to you as well.
All right. And so the trees that you're going to be planting?
Yeah, actually, you can see some of the trees on this schematic. Those are going to be all along the east edge of the property to buffer, just as much as those, the neighbors on the east don't want to see these buildings, our tenants or our property owners at some point down the road don't want to see there. So we are planning on putting a buffer to buffer these two projects.
Okay. And just one thought. I saw the 26-feet, 4-inch building height for yours, 21-foot for the homes there. And I actually thought it was actually going to be much larger than five, but I see that it's five feet. And my colleague here mentioned something that kind of made me wonder when I represented the district before in Fort Washington, when they built the senior housing there, the neighbors complained it was going to be three-story, and they lowered it. Actually, the foundation was, they still had a three-story, but the foundation was lowered. Is there any feasibility of anything like that with this?
That's not feasible, but what we have done, instead of having 10-foot ceilings inside, we've shrunk those down to nine-foot ceilings. So that gives you a 26 and a half feet approximately building height instead of a 29 or 30. Knowing that the 35 is the limit on what we're going at, what the maximum allowable is. And we've reduced the roof pitch. So the buildings are less tall, and the roof pitch is lower, so that the overall building height is lower than, you know, than the maximum allowable.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that, I mean, I don't think there's going to be a perfect solution for anybody. I'm not sure that anybody on either side would be perfectly happy if they each got their way. It seems to me you've met with the neighbors, had four meetings. People dispute how many people showed up. It seems like every fact here has been disputed. But again, as somebody who rep-
By the way, the city is who sends out the invitations for the meetings. I mean, we have had private meetings with a few folks that have contacted us, but city has a rule, they send out invitations. And the fact that some folks didn't get it, I mean, we can't control that.
Okay. Well, again, I appreciate both sides, and I appreciate the passion for this. I don't think there's going to be a perfect solution to this. This reminds me a great deal from northeast Fresno, because we've battled the same things and have the same issues with people concerned about developments that have taken place. And in the past, when I served before, when we fought a lot of different developments on corners from gas stations to housing developments that people didn't feel comfortable with. But I think the developer has done a number of modifications. I mean, I'm looking at it. We can dispute it, but we started at 18, we're down to 13. We've got setbacks, we've got trees. So with that in mind, I'm going to support this today.
Member Baines.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, staff, thank you for the presentation. And definitely, I want to thank all of the residents that came and spoke. I thought that, for the most part, the comments were very thoughtful. And I certainly personally can appreciate that. I want to thank the applicant, Granville, for your presentation as well. You did answer a lot of questions I had in my head. And I got to thank Councilmember Brandau as well for really teasing this entire discussion all the way out. I think you gave it a very fair shake today. I think, I feel like both the residents and our applicant and staff have had an opportunity to explain this to us, because this is a complicated one. It's not necessarily that easy. So I wanted to get that out of the way because for folks, particularly our residents here, we don't always do that. We don't always tease out an issue to this length to get to the heart of it. And we did that on your behalf. So your council member should be commended for that, for really, in my mind, going the extra step to make sure that all of your voices were heard and, you know, you all had the opportunity to speak to us. With that in mind, I think that I have enough information to definitely make a decision. And here are a couple of key points for me. One, if I heard this correct, and Jennifer, I'm just going to ask you for you to nod. You don't need to get up. It's my understanding from hearing all of the dialogue that the applicant can build this, can build a two-story project without a CUP, right? So there are some things that they, and it sounds like the improvements, the feedback that they heard, and you can nod again, Jennifer. It sounds like the feedback that they heard through the multiple iterations of the meetings caused some changes that caused the CUP, that caused them to have to get a CUP. Is that true or no? The changes that were made, were these changes made in trying to address some of the concerns of the community? And I was just trying to have you nod, but I'm sorry about that.
No, no, no. I appreciate that. I want to frame it correctly. So from the beginning, based on the layout of the project, it would always have required some form of modifications of design standards requiring the conditional use permit.
Okay. But they can still build it. So let me make sure I'm clear. They could have built two stories all the way over there without a CUP.
Had they not had any changes to the single-family development standards?
Right. But those design standards were done to respond to criticisms of the project?
To accommodate a better layout of the project, so-
Because it seems like there's a bit, when I look at the first iteration, it seems like it's dramatically different from where we started.
It is. It's dramatically different.
And I'm wondering in the minds of, well, if I was a person living there, it seems like it's better than when it started. And this is what had to trigger the CUP? That's what triggered the CUP?
Having the changes in the development standards, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And so the reason I focus in on those two points is because I think that's where my decision lies. I think it sounds as though, you know, and there's a debate about infill, as you heard from my colleague and I, and I'm a fan of infill development, and it is tough. It's very difficult. We've struggled with this since I've been on the council for the last, you know, six and a half, seven years, whatever it is. And we've struggled with getting this right. We always have this issue. But it does sound as though the applicant tried to do its best to revise this project, you know, four times, I think, if I'm counting correctly, to get something that is not great but better, and respond to the needs of the community. And frankly, it sounds like they could have built without any input from the community if they wanted to, which should not be a small issue to the residents. We did a lot of things in the general plan and our development code to allow by-right development. We wanted to be easier. In some cases, that's good, some cases it's not. But in this case, I think what we did have is certainly not maybe a perfect solution in the minds of the residents, but I think we have a better one. And I don't think that you all would have been very happy, maybe, and I could be speaking out of school, but I don't think you all would have been very happy if they would have just built what they could have built without much input. So from that perspective, and let me take a moment, too. I also know Granville is a good developer. So I will say that they do do a good thoughtful residential product. It's sought after in the entire city, as we all know. They're good residential developers. So I also know that we're not dealing with a development company that does not have care and concern for the type of neighborhoods that they build. So I think that what we see was a developer that tried his best to accommodate the needs of the community, didn't quite make it all the way there, but, you know, at least in a perfect fashion. But I do think that you all probably have a better project now than what it started with. So with that, council member, I'm happy to support your, have you made a motion? I'm assuming you have. Okay.
Yes, there's a motion. There's a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Let's please vote electronically. Item carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We move now to closed session, if I'm correct. We do go to closed session. Do we have new wrinkles today? Councilmember Baines?
No.
Is that the agenda, folks? All right. City Attorney, can you announce closed session, please?
Yes, in closed session, we have the balance, which is labor, negotiation, all of the listed bargaining units, and unrepresented positions. I would not expect any announcement afterwards.
Thank you, City Attorney. Also, this council today will be adjourning in memory of Diana Harrington, an instructor at Fresno State, and Ming Tao, Mayor Brand's appointment to the youth commission, 4.3 GPA student and real asset to our community, who passed away tragically at an early age last weekend. Thank you, council.